Good morning, everyone, and welcome, members of the public. We welcome you to the special meeting of Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Today is Wednesday, February 12th, 2025. We take note that a quorum is present at the board. The Chief Executive Officer, County Council Executive Officer, and Sergeant at Arms are all here to assist. We will begin today's board meeting with the county's land acknowledgement.
The County of Los Angeles recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and care for by the Tongva, Tatavium, Surrano, Kish, and Schumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, Fernandino Tatavium Band of Mission Indians, Gabriolino Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, Gabriolino Tongva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gabriolino Band of Mission Indians Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. To learn more about the First Peoples of Los Angeles County, please visit the Los Angeles City/County Native American Indian Commission website at lanaic.lacounty.gov.
Executive Officer, please play the Code of Conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors is about to commence. A Code of Conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's board hearing, and the board encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the board must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the board's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the board. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with board members or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements toward the board, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and board members, and may not clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the board meeting. And finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify the Sergeant at Arms or other county staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Today, we will begin with budget matter departmental budget presentations. Before we begin, Executive Officer, please read the call-in information that was also provided on the agenda and explain the speaking rules.
For members of the public wishing to participate remotely, as indicated on the agenda, please call 877-692-8955 and use participant code number 4433663. Members of the public participating remotely and in the boardroom, you will have one minute to address the budget matter. Please state your name, and once your time has expired, we will immediately move to the next speaker. For members of the public joining us remotely, when the board moves to the budget matter, promptly press 1, then 0, to be moved from the listening queue to the speaking queue. Remember to turn down the volume on your device as soon as a moderator calls on you, or there will be an echo. To ensure we hear from both in-person and telephonic speakers, we will alternate between the two speaking queues. Members of the public who are in attendance, when you hear or see your name displayed on the screen, please come down to the front of the boardroom, and staff will assist you. Please do not approach the podium until directed to do so.
Thank you. We will take up item number one, Fiscal Year 2025-26 Departmental Budget Presentations. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1, then 0, to comment on this item. We will now hear from our Chief Executive Officer, Fesia Davenport.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is a presentation that I gave yesterday. We believe that it's important that we share the same information and provide the same comments for each day that we do the departmental budget presentations, so that we can establish a complete record for those who may be viewing, attending, or calling in, or who otherwise may be interested in the information that will be provided during today's hearings, presentations. Today marks the start of a new era in LA County's budget process. Following the passage of Measure G, which enacted a series of major governance changes to take effect in stages beginning in 2026, your board directed immediate implementation of several key provisions. These included a requirement that county departments present their budgets to the Board of Supervisors in open, public meetings prior to the adoption of the annual budget. Yesterday's process began that initiative. This is the first, or the second, of five meetings in which 38 department heads will publicly present their 25-26 budget requests. It is important to note that these budgets were prepared and, in many cases, submitted before the deadly and destructive Palisades and Eaton fires, which ravaged communities and created profound challenges for thousands of people, as well as for our regional economy as a whole. So I would like to emphasize that departmental budgets that will be presented to your board do not include funding requests focused on supporting our residents and strengthening our resilience in the recovery and rebuilding phases. However, the departments will discuss as appropriate immediate and long-term impacts. Those requests will be considered in future budget phases and can be considered on an emergent basis as necessary, and my office will work with departments who have identified urgent needs. I'd like to kick off things today with a very short presentation about what you can expect to see today and how today's departmental presentations fit into the overall picture of the county budget cycle and our fiscal outlook. I'll take the first slide, please. This slide talks about our budget cycle. As I mentioned ago, we have a multi-phase budget process here in Los Angeles County. This means that budgeting is effectively a year-round process built around three major budget phases: the CEO's recommended budget in April; the next budget phase depicted here is budget deliberations, which we also call the final changes budget; and then the final adopted budget, which is depicted here as the supplemental budget. Today's departmental budget presentations join this cycle and are depicted on this slide along with public hearings on the budget in May. Not shown on the slide are numerous other milestones that make up our budget year. These include updating our multi-year forecasts relating to our revenues, issuing budget instructions to departments, and analyzing their submissions, assessing the governor-state budget and May revise, and working with the auditor controller to determine our year-end fund balance. Next slide, please. As your board is aware, the Palisades and Eaton fires are the worst natural disasters to strike LA County in modern times. Beyond the human toll of these deadly, destructive, and unprecedented fires, some early forecasts place the overall economic impact on the region at more than $250 billion. As a vital player in the regional economy, the county expects to feel these impacts heavily, including through decreases in our locally generated revenues, such as property and sales taxes. We also know that our own costs as a county will be substantial, and we continue to step up to provide essential aid to impacted residents and invest in cleanup and rebuilding efforts to help our communities recover as quickly and safely as possible. We expect these will be multi-year costs reverberating well beyond the current budget year, which ends on June 30th, 2025. The wildfire recovery impacts will also compound some longstanding, emerging budgetary pressures the county was already facing before this disaster. Some of these challenges are shown on this slide, including the substantial costs of AB 218 legal settlements and judgments, the end of nearly $2 billion in American Rescue Plan Act funding, emerging potential budgetary impacts due to potential policy changes at the federal level, compliance with DLJ consent decrees, and potential budgetary impacts as labor negotiations get underway. Not listed here for brevity's sake but are also of concern are departmental structural deficits in departments such as DCFS, costs associated with the Alliance lawsuit, and new bed rates for homelessness providers, and funding for seismic retrofits of county facilities. Year-over-year increases in the DPSS program, we know as the General Leaf Program, among other pressures on the horizon. Finally, for more detailed information, please refer to the memo that I issued on Monday detailing budgetary pressures, including the impacts of those pressures on labor negotiations. And for the record, that memo is dated February 10th, 2025. It is entitled "The Fiscal Year 25-26 County Budgetary Outlook: Pressures, Economic and Labor Impacts." And I would ask, Madam Chair, that the executive office include the memo as part of the record so that people that are looking at the departmental budget presentations will also have the memo, which provides context for our presentations today.
Yeah, we will ask the executive officer to include that for the record. And Fesia, thank you for that report. I know that when you talk about the fire, we're front-loading money, and I think it's important for this board to understand what the cost, how long that's going to take for us to get reimbursed, because we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars that's going to be paid out. And I know we're going to have the Fire Chief present, and I think there's going to be an impact on his budget, so I appreciate you highlighting that.
Yes, you are absolutely correct that we will be front-loading those recovery efforts, and then we'll seek reimbursement from the federal government, which often comes several years later.
Correct. So today, we're going to hear from seven county departments, including Fire, Consumer and Business Affairs, Aging and Disabilities, Animal Care and Control, Medical Examiner, Arts and Culture, and Human Resources. I would like to thank your staff, Fesia, and all the departments for putting these presentations together. And with that, we are going to start with the first presentation by our Fire Chief, Anthony Maroni. Welcome. And I think I can speak on behalf of all the residents of Los Angeles County to you and your entire team, thank you for everything you've done over the last month surrounding the Palisades and the Eaton fire. With that, the floor is yours.
So thank you, Madam Chair and Honorable Board. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce the team that I have with me today. I have Deputy Fire Chief Julia Kim, our Administrative Deputy, and our Departmental Finance Manager, Adrian Lee. I appreciate the opportunity to present the Fire Department's 25-26 proposed budget request. As a dependent special district formed under California law, the Fire Department is primarily funded through a direct portion of the remitted 1% property tax for our 47 property tax cities, the Prop E special tax levied on real property and adopted by the voters in 1997 for our 47 property tax cities, and 13 contract city and six lifeguard city agreements. The Fire Department's 25-26 proposed budget request is $1.7 billion. The following are some of the major changes from the 24-25 final adopted budget: a net increase of $1.8 million in salary and employee benefits for 12 new positions. The department's proposed budget request includes an increase of $7.2 million for department-wide operations, consisting of $4.5 million for increases in rent, utilities, and services provided by other county departments, $1.3 million for facility and fleet maintenance, $1.4 million for EMS supplies, behavioral health care, IT improvements, and additional L.A. RICs subscription fees. Some of the other increases to the budget include $2.1 million to align the SNEB budget with the latest estimates, $6.6 million increase to the department's overtime budget, $1 million of opioid settlement funding for the district's response to opioid-related calls, $12.2 million to increase the judgment and damages budget. The department's proposed budget includes no Tier 1 or Tier 2 unmet needs, and only one Tier 3 unmet need, consisting of $2.1 million for 10 positions for the Epic LA Phase 3 and Phase 4 build-out. In developing the 25-26 proposed budget request, we considered the challenges and pressures that affect our budget, including a projected decrease in property tax revenue growth. Property tax revenue represents 69% of the district's primary revenues. An increase in workload and operational costs, driven by increased demand for service, which puts pressure on the district's budget. Simply put, an increase in 911 calls costs the district more money. Gaps in the healthcare system have pushed more and more individuals to access Fire Department paramedics, thus increasing call volume by 15% over the last five years. It should be noted that, under your board's leadership, our budget has increased 36% since fiscal year 1920. Climate change has created longer fire seasons and increased the risk of larger and more destructive fires. These increases have led to an increase in overtime utilization, workers' compensation liability, and operational costs. For example, there is a need for the department to purchase two new Sikorsky Firehawk helicopters at $35 million each, and three new Bell 412 EPX helicopters at $19 million each, totaling $127 million. These new helicopter purchases are to replace the department's existing fleet of aging helicopters. Also, ongoing payroll obligations, driven in part by workers' compensation costs, continue to challenge the department's budget. For example, the Fire Department has the second-greatest workers' compensation liability of the 38 county departments, even though we only have 5,000 employees. Another of the department's ongoing challenges is our aging facilities and equipment, which do require replacement. On average, the department's 261 facilities are over 50 years old and have limited capacity to meet increasing demands for fire, paramedic, and lifeguard services. In addition, many stations need seismic retrofitting to minimize potential for earthquake damage. The last major earthquake in Los Angeles was in 1994, over 30 years ago. The department's priority is to address our budget challenges and pressures, which have increased the ongoing structural deficit. Measure E funding will help address some of these budget challenges. Measure E is expected to generate $152 million, beginning in January of 2026, and we are preparing a Measure E expenditure plan for board approval by June 30th, 2025. We will continue to work with your board and the CEO on our cost-reduction and revenue-generating strategies to ensure the district can cover all long-term financial obligations and continue to be prepared for future disasters. Our current cost-reduction and revenue-generating strategies focus on the four following areas: workers' compensation, and injury and illness prevention and reduction strategies; accelerated hiring and promotion programs to expedite the filling of vacancies and the reduction of overtime costs; continued negotiations with the remaining 10 fire contract and six lifeguard beach cities for full reimbursement for services. Contract negotiations will be completed by the end of 2025 and can add up to $37.2 million annually to our budget, beginning in fiscal year 27-28. And lastly, the department plans to continue to raise fees, but only enough to cover department costs. The Fire Department will be working with our county partners to support the recovery and rebuild efforts of those affected by the recent wildfires. Our Community Risk Reduction Bureau will staff three One-Stops located in Altadena, Calabasas, and Malibu to ensure prompt and efficient response to building permits related to the recent fires. To ensure that we can properly support these efforts, we will be requesting a total of 27 new positions in our final changes budget request totaling $5.9 million ongoing. For our lifeguard general fund budget for 25-26, the county general fund will contribute approximately $45.7 million in net county costs for lifeguard operations. This is a $400,000 increase from fiscal year 24-25 final adopted budget. Our total lifeguard budget is approximately $72 million. The general fund's contribution is 64%, the district fund's 24%, and the remaining 12% is primarily funded through grants. For the lifeguard general fund, we do not have any Tier 1 or Tier 2 unmet needs. We have two Tier 3 unmet needs, consisting of $6 million for the Baywatch Ismus station replacement, and $160,000 to replace 80 rescue paddle boards. Lastly, but most importantly, I look forward to being able to continue to expand services for the residents and communities we serve with programs like the Advanced Provider Response Units, the Whole Blood Program, and increase in the number of paramedic units while operating within our budget without the use of net county costs, as our residents continue to count on the safety net that your board and NCC departments provide. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I just have some quick questions, then I'll turn it over to Supervisor Horabath. I know that you, in the last presentation last year, talked about the fact that there were some services being provided to cities that you weren't getting reimbursed for, such as lifeguard city agreements. Where are you on negotiating those?
We are continuing to meet with the City of Los Angeles regarding their contribution to lifeguard services that we provide at no cost at this time, and we do have a meeting coming up with the CEO and the Department of Beaches and Harbors to finalize the path forward.
And then, prior to this fire, I know medical calls seem to be a majority of what you're doing. And up in the Antelope Valley, you've got the ARPU that goes out, and it's been extremely successful, goes out with the doctor and does triage. What are the plans to fund and expand that?
So, beginning in 2026, we will be using Measure E funds to expand the APRUs to all five supervisory districts, because it has been such a benefit to the residents that we serve. Currently, we have three. We are working with the CEO on a one-year funding gap plan to make sure that we can continue, but as of today in 2025, we are staffing the APRU in the three supervisory districts. We will be adding it to Supervisory District 4 and 3 in the near future.
Great. And then last, I know that you brought up Epic LA, and I think the goal of Epic LA is to streamline and actually be more efficient and cost-effective. So I think it's front-loading costs, but long-term, it's offset by efficiencies. So are you working with regional planning to see how we can best collaborate on that?
Yes. County Fire is working closely with the other three permitting agencies to include regional planning, DPW, and Public Health, to streamline that electronic permitting and inspection county of Los Angeles land management system. However, I have been on numerous community meetings, and for the people who were affected by the Eaton and the Palisades fire, we're going to make sure that the One-Stops are staffed with people that they can talk to rather than an online platform.
Yeah, I think you'd agree, we've got to carve it out, because Epic LA is going to be long-term, but for the fires, immediate need. And then, I think this is going to, I think you're going to have to do an addendum on your budget, as it stands, to Plan E, I mean, Plan E, I'm retiring, Measure E, because you don't know what the financial impact's going to be, or loss of revenue as a result of the fires, correct?
That is correct.
And do you know when you'll be able to And do you know when you'll be able to quantify what that dollar amount lost will be as a result of structures being lost or homes?
Well, I'm reluctant to give a date, but I think it's going to take at least one or two years for us to realize the full impact of the devastation and the reduction in property tax revenue and that growth that we always count on, since our budget has increased every year for the last five years.
Right. And I appreciate that. I just know that you gave us a presentation and outlined things that you were going to do with the Measure E that were all, I would argue, I don't think any of us questioned it because everything was needed. And so I think it's important for us as a board to track the impact it's going to have because everything you asked for are issues that are our needs, that are quality of life and for fire protection. So I just wanted to kind of highlight that. So with that, Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To add, you touched on a few questions that I had. Chief, I want to thank you and your department for your extraordinary service already this year and for the ways that you serve our community every day. You mentioned requesting additional positions. It's my understanding the department has over 4,800 funded positions. So do you have a sense of what percentage of them are filled?
I don't have those numbers available to me. Of the 4,800 funded positions, we actually have 5,023 employees. But we are working hard to fill the firefighter ranks and then make promotions through the ranks so that we are fully filled for vacancies. However, in past years, our professional staff, we've allowed a lot of vacancies to accumulate for professional staff, and now we're trying to fill those positions because we certainly do need firefighters to be in the neighborhood fire stations, but we also need the support to fill behind them. Anything from fire dispatchers to mechanics to admin personnel to financial management division personnel to make sure that we're an efficient operation.
I know there's been, of this board, a continued investment in law enforcement recruitment, but if the fire department needs that same kind of focus in terms of recruitment efforts, you know, I welcome your feedback on that, so that way we can work and make sure you have those resources. Your budget, as I read it, indicated a decrease in expenditures, but it's my understanding that that's a result of one-time funding that you received last year. Is that correct? Because I don't want anybody to be misled.
That's correct. In our proposed budget, we removed that one-time funding. It will be added in later budget cycles.
Okay.
Back into the district's budget.
So there were no decreases to your funding?
Yeah, no decreases to our funding, no ma'am.
Okay. Just want to make sure about that. I know that we're going to do after-action, and there will be more concrete answers as we go through that process, but just to raise it here, there were questions around lost water pressure and some of our water systems. And I know that's, those are systems that you need to use. They are operated and really led by our Department of Public Works. So are you working in conjunction with the department in this budget to get some of that water infrastructure funded?
Yes. So Director Postrela and I have been in close communication, and he does seek our approval for the different water systems that he's going to be trying to supplement, both in the Eaton fire area and the Palisades fire area, Water District 29. Water is going to be a big deal for us since we are the users of that water during times of emergency, but Director Postrela and his staff have been in close communication with our Water and Access Unit to make sure that we're going to have everything we need for the next disaster.
That's great. I know this board unanimously approved adoption of the county's water plan, so, and all of those priorities were included in that water plan. So glad to hear that you are taking action on the plan that we've outlined and making sure that we're actually investing in those infrastructure improvements that we intend. I understand you're working on replacing your CAD system, and we've heard that the Sheriff's Department is also doing the same. So are you working together with them to potentially harness cost savings in this budget cycle while you're doing that?
We did have an initial meeting, planning meeting, for any efficiencies that we could realize by joining with the sheriffs for the CAD replacement. Unfortunately, our Cads are very different from one another. I would describe the sheriff's CAD as a horizontal CAD system, spread throughout 12-plus local sheriff stations. We have a centralized vertical CAD system out of one dispatch center where everything takes place out of one dispatch center, but we are getting together to see if there is any efficiency that can be realized by the two of us joining, even though we might have different CAD vendors and different types of Cads.
Okay. So it sounds like maybe when we have this conversation on the sheriff's department, looking at potentially a centralized system could maybe harness some cost efficiencies?
Yes.
Okay. We've showcased the work of the Community Brigade, which has been a success in Topanga. Is there a current funding stream that goes to the Brigade each year?
We don't have money specifically set aside for the Community Brigade. They're self-funded through the Los Angeles Emergency Preparedness Foundation. However, we have partnered with the Los Angeles Emergency Preparedness Foundation, and we're making sure that they have a funding stream that will allow them, through donations, to continue the good work that they do for that pilot program that we're currently involved in, the two-year pilot program that your board approved, and it's going very well so far. The Brigade has been used on three fires, but even when there's no fires, the Brigade is out there. They're doing education for residents on home hardening, defensible space, which is very, very important because I know that it made a difference. They also assisted ourselves and the LA County Sheriff's Department with evacuations and door knocks in front of the fire in the Palisades area. So we are working closely with them, and I know that LAEPF is getting more money that's going to be able to support that program.
That's, it's great to know how they're funded. I know there's interest in expanding that program, so if we want to expand it, we have to make sure the resources are there, and it sounds currently, it's not coming from the county's budget, so helpful to know that. And then finally, there's been a lot of discussion around the firefighting aircraft. I know a lot of us were very soothed when we would see those drops at a certain point in the fire coverage that we saw. I know that currently, we are leasing some of that aircraft as opposed to owning it outright, either as a county or in the region. Can you talk about why that's a better model for us? Because I know that the idea of leasing communicates to our residents that we are only temporarily investing in this equipment. It leaves them feeling like it's a vulnerability that we don't have it available to us 24/7/365. So can you talk about why we make that choice, whether we should be moving in a different direction based on this experience and what we're planning for the future?
Oh, absolutely. So just to give you a little background, the department operates at a fleet of 10 department-owned helicopters. We're currently down to nine department-owned helicopters because two of our Sikorsky Firehawks are reaching the end of their life when it comes to flight hours, almost 8,000 flight hours. The leased aircraft I think you're speaking about are the two CL-415 Superscoopers. We're in the 31st year of our lease, so it certainly isn't temporary. Unfortunately, those CL-415s are no longer manufactured, so there would be no way for the department to buy new Superscoopers. We'd have to buy used Superscoopers. We'd also have to create classification specifications for Superscooper pilot and Superscooper mechanic, and then we'd have to lease hangar space to store the Superscoopers in during the off-season. I want all of our residents and communities to know that we have the Superscoopers every year for as long as we need them. There really isn't going to be an opportunity where we have a need for the Superscoopers, but they're not here from Quebec yet. We've used them since the 1993 fires in Topanga. Every once in a while, people ask, "Why aren't you buying new Superscoopers?" It's simply because they're not manufactured anymore, and leasing them is the most cost-efficient way to get them here during our brush fire season. The additional aircraft that we have onboard at LA County Fire is the large CH-47 Chinook helicopter, which is part of a four helicopter program that's primarily funded through Southern California Edison. They pay for the daily rate for those four helicopters. It totals about $31 million. The department pays for the flight time for the CH-47. We have no plans to change or stop our lease of the CH-47 or the Superscoopers, and we're going to be replacing some of our older aircraft with newer aircraft. So I agree with you that we need to have the most up-to-date air operations fleet, but I have to say that it did not, it did not impact our response to the Palisades fire. And unfortunately, when the Eaton fire started, the winds were so strong, and it was during hours of darkness, that we couldn't use our planes or our helicopters. So for the first 14 hours of the Eaton fire, we were missing a component of aerial firefighting that couldn't fly because it was just too windy or it was an hour of darkness.
That's helpful, a very helpful explanation, and as we're thinking about our budget priorities, helpful to know why we have the current funding mechanism that we do and the arrangement that we have for the equipment that we have. I know Measure E contemplates some investments as well, and it sounds like that plan's coming by June, so.
It does, and I would be the first person to come before your board to ask for NCC money if I did not know and I did not believe that the department had the ability to purchase it itself, especially on the heels of the voter-approved Measure E. The voters have given us the ability to replace equipment, to add paramedics, and to add firefighters. So I applaud our residents for voting yes, but I will be the first to come to your board and ask you for NCC money, but we do not require it at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you so much, Chief Maroni, and to your staff, and to all the men and women who have been really just doing yeoman's work for the last, what, almost month, I want to say, and even before that. It seems to me that fire season is year-round now, that's a given, and the stresses are being seen around the state, but I've seen them even more pervasive now in LA County. And the fact that you have 4,800 staff that currently help us with respect to 10 million people, I think some of us have to have a reality check here in terms of what our expectations are and how we meet those. And one of the things that I kept hearing over the course of the fire and what had happened was that we didn't have enough firefighters. That was number one. It was something not to be able to have the resources in terms of fire hydrants and ability to have boots on the ground, but boots on the ground, I think, is a reality. And I know at one time, a couple of years ago, and I know that J-COD has a group of young reentry men and some women, that they are training and have trained to help us in forest firefighting. I don't know where we are with that, but I have always felt that that was something that we could really utilize and start building upon now, given what we just faced. And seeing the reviews on television and video cameras showing California Conservation Corps, young men and women helping with debris cleanup, but also with the fires, it just makes sense to us to have some kind of a workforce training program dedicated to this. And I know we have our new Office of Economic Opportunity that handles all of our workforce programs, but I'm wondering, has there been any thought on the part of your department to think about maybe enhancing that and having more of a direct tie and connection with your staff, your department?
Yes, Supervisor. We have given that a lot of thought, and we are working closely with J-COD and Judge Armstead at the LA Training Center. That was previously called Camps to Careers.
Yes.
We went to the graduation of the first cohort. I know that they're going to be starting a second cohort, and I am working with DHR and the CEO to try to get some career development intern positions so we could immediately bring those graduates into county fire service as wildland firefighters. But LA County Fire does commit trainers to the LATC program out of Camp Gonzalez in the Santa Monica Mountains, so we are actively working on that. I think the next and final step is to actually get the positions and stand up the crew so those graduates can immediately move to county employment before they seek federal or state employment.
Right.
Because the federal government has been hiring those graduates, and the state government has been hiring those graduates. And you're correct, CCC has 35 crews working on the watershed mission right now, today, at both the Palisades and the Eaton fire, and they're of great benefit for those young men and women to have those jobs, those important jobs.
So I guess what I'm asking is perhaps the CEO to think about this and Department of Economic Opportunity to think about how that program can be rounded up, rounded up so that we can have it year-round. It seems to me we're always going to be at a loss, and we're going to lose, we're going to lose our firefighters to other competitive agencies, and I hope there isn't any impediment with any of these youngsters that may have had something on their record. And I know that was a, that was a cause for concern a while back, but I think those fears should be allayed because we know that this is even a priority with the state government and our governor. So, did you want to say something?
Supervisors, as far as I know, the program with J-COD is operational. I don't know the scale, and so that probably is something we can raise, the board could raise with the department head when she presents on her budget.
Great. And Chief Maroni, I want to thank you for the presentation that you made to us was actually last, well, January the 7th, the day of the fire. Who could have predicted that? But you left after that meeting, but you gave a good presentation in terms of how monies could be utilized for Measure E. And I know I brought up the point regarding one of our aging firehouses out in the Basset-Avocado area where you have female firefighters that don't have adequate space for showering and their own bathroom. So I'm hopeful and really want to underscore how important not just my firehouse is, but I'm sure there are others that fit the same description. And if it's 50 years and older, it probably is, I would hope that that could be a priority because that, again, and I was told by your staff, one of the busiest firehouses because it's in an industrial area, so they really deal with hazardous materials and waste and chemicals, and sometimes people lose sight, it isn't just always about houses, but it's saving people's lives in these warehouses or factories and how impactful those hazards, hazardous material can be when they are ambient. And that, I've seen that happen before and would hope that that could be a priority, that you identify the hot spots, and I would urge you to do that. The other thing you mentioned you're working on, and I know this has been a big concern for the board, is the judgments and damages and things of that nature. Can you go into a little bit about what you currently, what are the expenses in that category, and what are we doing to mitigate that?
We're training, in order to try to mitigate our exposure, our risk exposure to judgments and damages, I really think it's employee education, and we have to have better processes so we don't violate rules, regulations, laws. So we are working hard on that. I do have, I do have an idea to try to expand our risk management division. I think it's important enough to be at the bureau level. I'm just trying to give a lot of thought to who should head up a risk management bureau because legal exposure is real in Los Angeles County, and it's real to our department, and we've had a couple of very high judgments against us, and I want to make sure that we protect the public's money by not doing anything that we could be found guilty of. So it's primarily through education and trying to reduce our risk exposure, but we have auto accidents, employee litigation, we have medical malpractice, we do have exposures on several different fronts, and I do want to elevate at the fire department level because right now, our risk management division is very small, and it's not adequately staffed, and I need to do a better job of making sure that I elevate risk management to the bureau level and that I adequately staff it because I really think employee education and putting in place policies and procedures will prevent those expensive judgments from being incurred by the department because that's public money, and I need to protect that public money, and I need it to buy equipment and fix our facilities and hire new firefighters.
I would just ask that perhaps when you talk about the bureau chiefs and folks, that this be a part, if it isn't already, a part of their evaluation, and that something that can be measured annually and shared with. can be measured annually and shared with us. Because I don't think that if we don't take a strong position on this, we're going to continue to see that continue to grow. And you're not the only department. We know the sheriffs, and we have probation and others. But I would just say, I know you're proactive, and I know you're very diligent, and you mean well, and I trust that this can be done. So thank you for your responses, and thank you, Madam Chair. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Supervisor Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chief, for your presentation, your staff, and of course, to all the men and women who've really been out there on the front lines for now, it seems like such a long time. But you've been on the world stage. The entire world has been watching our fires, reaching out to us, offering help, support, condolences. But certainly, your men and women have been front and center of that, and we're very, very proud, very proud of the work that they've been doing. Looking at your budget, one of the things I noticed was the 6 million increase in overtime. And not counting what we just went through, talk to us a little bit about overtime, why it's needed, what's the most common needs that you experience for instituting overtime? Do you have any plans to decrease this? It's just, it's an issue that I know we always look at, particularly during budget time, because, wondering, wondering what your thoughts are for your department on that.
Well, my overall thought is that I must, I must operate within our budget, and we do occasionally exceed our overtime budget, but we do not overspend. We do not have any frivolous expenses at the fire department. Overtime is necessary to fill behind people who utilize benefit time to take time off, people who go off on sick, people who are off on workers' compensation leave. You know, currently today, our department has 399 people off on workers' compensation, injury, and illness. That is very, very high. It should be down around 250 or less when we go back and look at previous years, when we didn't have such a challenge as we do with workers' compensation. So because we have constant staffing for those 176 fire stations that we operate, when someone takes the day off, we must fill behind their position. And per the MOU, that's filled behind with overtime, time and a half. The good news is, is that overtime is cheaper than hiring a full-time employee. Because when you hire a full-time employee, you have to train them, you have to equip them, and there's the chance that that new full-time employee is going to go off on injury leave. So people who work a lot of overtime actually keep costs down over the long run, but we are working on overtime reduction strategies, like trying to reduce the number of people who are off on workers' compensation leave. And we have done a lot of good work in trying to address our challenges, first with prevention, second is with streamlining through the third-party administrator, that workers' compensation process, to get people diagnosed, treated, rehabbed to limited duty, and then returned to full unrestricted duty. But we do have a challenge with workers' compensation, which means we do have a challenge with overtime because we have to fill behind. You can't go down one firefighter in one of those neighborhood fire stations. It must have the full complement of firefighters.
Right. So when we're looking at this, and yes, your, this is, your budget is a balanced budget, it has to be. But, so when you're looking at the 6.6 million increase, that is still within your budget, and you can...
Correct. And we've had a very aggressive hiring schedule for firefighters since you appointed me interim fire chief back in October 18th of 2021. We've graduated 10 recruit academies in what I think is a very short period of time. I want to not only keep up with retirements, but I also want to increase, like Supervisor Solis said, you'd need enough firefighters, it's boots on the ground when the emergency happens. So it's one of our goals here with my colleagues, that we fill all of those vacancies. I'd like all of our vacancies filled, and then we'll have a decrease in the amount of overtime if we could also address that.
And so on that point, as you know, you invited me to come visit the paramedic class that recently, and I was certainly very impressed with our future candidates, women, men. It was, it was a really inspiring class. And you talked a little bit about the need to hire them quickly, as you talked about, because we could lose them to others. So I wrote a letter to Director Lisa Garrett, asking HR to work with you to speed up hiring so that you could hire them right away, and maybe even using the Homelessness Emergency Authority. Has there been any progress from that angle of hiring quickly?
We have been able to utilize the emergency hiring process, especially in our fire prevention engineering assistant ranks and our fire captain ranks. I do not want to miss that unique opportunity. You and I saw 30 young men and women, split 50/50
Yeah.
that want to work for the L.A. County Fire Department. These are all going to be paramedics, 50% of them are women. These opportunities do not present themselves often, and I know that we're steeped in a process of civil service rules from the 1980s. But I want to break out of that process and capture this opportunity to hire those 30 young people
Right, which is why I think, you know, I immediately
I don't have an update on how it's going. I haven't asked because the last month has been so
Right.
taxing.
Can I ask a question regarding that? Because I appreciate that you brought that up, Supervisor Hahn. Who conducts your exams right now? Because I know it was taken away from you. Are you all doing it again?
No, no, we're not. So
Because that holds up the process.
So the L.A. County, I'm proud of our hiring process with DHR, I really am. We hire, through the DHR process, fire suppression aides, senior fire suppression aides, firefighters, engineers, captains, battalion chiefs, assistant chiefs, deputy chiefs, and chief deputies. I use Lisa Garrett and her team for all of our safety-sworn exams. The one part that we broke out of from DHR was the written for the firefighter trainee exam, and we use FCTC. And what Supervisor Hahn is talking about is the FCTC-funded paramedic class that we hosted for the first time at our department that gave us these 30 young men and women. And I want to seize that opportunity to hire them. So I'm certainly going to need your board's support because it is a departure from the way we traditionally do it.
Right.
And I know that we're steeped in tradition and process.
I would just be interested to drill down on that a little bit, just on that
Well, I'm certainly, I know what I'm going to be doing for the rest of the day, so
You've been distracted.
I'm going to be following up on these questions.
Yeah, good. Because it was really interesting, that class, and they came from all over, you know, they went around and introduced themselves, and they came from all over. They also came from cities that have their own fire departments, and they still had such, it was like they were in awe of L.A. County Fire Department. That is like their dream, their wish is to work for our department.
Yeah.
And you're right, I just hate to lose it, especially paramedics. Like, we need more paramedics as well, and I know you touched on adding more paramedics. I think all of our cities want their stations to be, you know, extra heavy with paramedics as well because, except for these wildfires, most of our calls are medical, and paramedics, the response time is life or death.
No, I mean, I know there was a lot of trepidation with going with FCTC and Caljack, but I have to say that it was FCTC and Caljack that put on that free
Yeah.
paramedic class. That has a value of $10,000 to $15,000, and those young men and women couldn't afford it. And they got it for free. And like you said, Supervisor, they came from up and down the state, but the one thing they all had in common was they wanted to be L.A. County firefighters.
Yes.
And it's up to me to make sure that we can let them live that dream.
Thank you for that. Just looking again at the, at the budget, I was talking about the overtime of 6.6, but then when I looked down, another 6 million unmet need is to replace the Baywatch Station on Catalina and replace 80 rescue paddle boards. Why is that important?
Well, the station, the lifeguard station at Isthmus is important, and that's owned by the Catalina Island Company. And we're going to start negotiating with the Catalina Island Company because I think that they have skin in the game, and they need to help us build that $6 million station because it houses not only our Baywatch Isthmus paramedic boat, but it's also the ground paramedics. Those paramedics come off the boat and get into the paramedic squad and provide paramedic services to a very rural area of Catalina Island. And I know that SD4 has about $4 million set aside, so we just need to come up with that extra $2 million in funding. Back to what Supervisor Solis says, we have to prioritize our facilities to make sure that they're equitable for all of our employees and that they feel comfortable when they're at work. So I'm going to partner with, I'm going to negotiate with the Catalina Island Company to have them help us build that new station. We need $6 million. We already have $4 million set aside.
Great. You know, a lot of people don't realize, there's a lot of life-saving rescues that go on Catalina. Obviously, it's an island, so to perform those kinds of services there or in the water is critical because the only other way is to airlift them off the island, back to the mainland. So it's very critical. So looking at your structural deficit, which is just always the story of our fire department, unfortunately, but Measure, Measure E, and again, thank you to our voters who, second time around, agreed that it was worth it. And we pitched it to the voters, as you said, by talking about quality of life issues, more paramedics, better equipment, shorter response times. Is, and we're not sure, but we think it might be 152 million per year that we don't start getting until next year. Is any of that, are you planning to use to offset the structural deficit?
Well, simply put, the structural deficit, all that means is that our ongoing expenditures are outpacing our ongoing revenue, and we don't include the one-time monies in that estimation. So that's one reason why we have a structural deficit. Measure E is going to help, but Measure E is really for equipment, facilities, and personnel. So that really isn't going to address that structural deficit. What is going to address the structural deficit is me getting workers' compensation under control. It will reduce our overtime utilization, and it'll reduce our structural deficit. So it has been an ongoing problem for us, but it really doesn't materialize because we do add the one-time monies in the later budget phases. So we really are never in a deficit. We're actually in growth at the fire department, mainly because property tax revenue has increased
Right.
and the special E tax has increased. But I do want to eliminate that structural deficit, but I think that's going to be done through workers' compensation strategies and overtime reduction strategies.
And then my last one is going to, is talking about replacing your, the aging equipment. So Cities of L.A. was in the news for a lot of rigs and engines that were left in the maintenance yard that weren't able to respond as we would have liked them to. What about our equipment and how many? I don't know if I need to know a number of equipment that you think is in need of repair or sitting in a maintenance yard, but I noticed that part of your budget quest was to hire more power equipment technicians to service our vehicles. Is this part of making sure that our equipment is not languishing in a maintenance yard somewhere?
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, anytime you operate a large fleet, there's going to be a number of vehicles that are out of service just due to routine or unscheduled maintenance. So we operate 1,600 vehicles at the fire department. 1,000 of them are emergency vehicles. The other 600 are non-emergency vehicles. Yes, we do have an aging fleet. We are looking for the six power equipment technicians to do the lower-level work, to release the heavy diesel mechanics, to do the heavy diesel work on our engines and our quints so we can get them back into service faster. But we have never run into a situation where we were out of apparatus. So that's the good news.
That is good news.
If a frontline fire engine breaks down, we have a reserve, a fleet of reserves, that fill in behind because we don't want to have problems with, you know, emergency response. So we haven't run into that problem yet, but we do need to set aside more money. We had been setting aside about $16 million annually for fleet replacement, and we're going to be giving more money, we're going to be adding more money to that, approximately $27 million more on top of the 16, using Measure E because the three things that we really want Measure E to help us with are facility upgrades, vehicle replacement, and hiring more firefighters and paramedics. Those are the three things we really want to use Measure E for.
And then, I was, I know I said the last thing was the last thing, but, you know, this board, several years ago, we were responding to some of the tragedies that your department has gone through, loss of life, tragic station incidences, and we really leaned in to peer support and making sure there was money in your budget, in our budget, to support the men and women in the fire department as they, you know, really encounter some, you know, really difficult tragedies within their ranks. Just want to make sure that you're still leaning in to that. I can only imagine those that have been on the front lines for, you know, the last month for these fires are probably going to really, you know, continue to need that peer support. So just want to make sure we don't ever, you don't ever, you know, reduce that piece of what I think this board really intends for your department to spend money on as it relates to your rank and file.
No, we have, and it is a new day, and the behavioral health and the wellness of our employees is number one. And I think countywide, we know that well-being, that safe and healthy employees perform better. And, you know, Supervisor Barker had her board motion following that Fire Station 81 tragedy, and we increased, per the board motion, the number of fire department peers that we have. We have more behavioral health clinicians now under contract for the fire department, and we are doing the 24 free visits for behavioral health that we budget for. So we did set aside 1.4 million additional for EMS supplies and behavioral health, in addition to IT and the L.A. RIC subscription. So we haven't forgotten about it, and we're going to keep a focus on that because it is very important.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And 1014 is also sharing in that cost, correct?
For the one behavioral health condition
Yes.
they actually pay for.
I think it's important to note that.
Yeah, yeah. One clinician is a 1014 clinician that they, that they cover the cost for.
Yeah. Thank you. Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you. I echo all of the comments from my colleagues, not just for your service in this most recent tragedy, but your, you know, 39 years of service that is manifested in what we see today in terms of your leadership. And I'm sure after your two-sunday-ago experience at the Grammys, you're probably thinking that you're at the pinnacle of your career and you can retire since you were in proximity to Beyonce, but I would suggest you've got a couple of years left in you, so just keep coming to work. We would appreciate that. Supervisor Barker touched on it, but I wanted to expand her question a bit in terms of the status of collecting real, actual costs across the board. We've had conversations over the last several years. There were multiple contract cities that you shared that we were basically subsidizing. And so where are you in renegotiating all of those agreements?
We've reached out to all 16, the six beach cities. We've had some tough conversations with, in addition with the remaining 10 fire contract cities. And I told your board today that it will be done by the end of 2025. So obviously, the beginning of January set us back one month, but we are in various states of negotiating. states of negotiation with each. I believe that one of Supervisor Solis's cities, Almonte, I'll be seeing them later this month, and they're going to be approving full compensation to the district. So we'll be down to nine. And we do have meetings with the CEO and beaches and harbors regarding the almost $17 million that it cost the fire district to provide lifeguard services to the city of Los Angeles. So we're getting towards the end. I'll make sure to keep the board updated as to our progress because it might come to the fact that some of those cities are going to want to start their own fire department. And I want the board to know that we're not going to lose or have to lay off any county firefighters or lifeguards due to a city not being with the district anymore. They can be absorbed through some of the vacancies, and we can even upstaff in certain areas to a more appropriate staffing level. So I don't want any of my members to be frightened or the board to think, oh, no, we're going to lose positions and we're going to have to lay people off. That is not the case. The department will be saving money, and we'll be chipping away at that structural deficit. So that $18 million structural deficit that we have every year, that will get chipped away as we get full reimbursement from these contract cities because we are taking district-city money and we're taking unincorporated area-city money to pay for these incorporated cities to be their fire department, and that's just not right. Because especially our unincorporated areas, they need more service, not less.
Indeed.
They need more service in the unincorporated areas. So various states, and I'll keep the board updated as to our progress.
Please do, and thank you for elevating that fact in terms of the needs of our constituents who live in unincorporated, that we are their front line and must be our priority. I appreciate that. Just, I'm curious, are they not manufacturing the super scoopers because there's newer technology? Why are they not manufacturing them anymore? That was interesting.
You know, Bombardier, they went down a business jet line. They were the manufacturers of the CL-415 and the CL-215. There was a company that was going to take over manufacturing and building new super scoopers, but it has not come to fruition.
So it's not about newer technology, it's just supply?
No, it's just those water-scooping aircraft filled one little niche in aerial firefighting. We're now relying more on retardant dropping, tankers, fixed-wing tankers like the DC-10 or the BA-146 or the C-130 that are replacing those CL-415s. And the CL-415s only work well when they're near a body of water because you need a fast turnaround time. Thankfully, we have the Pacific Ocean, and they worked well at the Palisades fire, but at the Eaton fire, we really didn't utilize them because there was no body of water close by, and they were busy on the Palisades where they could have fast turnaround times. If the opportunity presents itself for the district to purchase rather than lease, it would be cheaper in the very long term. But when you take into account the need to hire new classifications of employees that don't exist and buy hangar space, it makes it very expensive. So the lease is turnkey, 31 years we've been doing it. So it's not going anywhere. Yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious, when you said they weren't being manufactured, if there was a reason for that? That was just curiosity because Supervisor Solis had an idea of who could start making them. Last question for me, also Supervisor Solis, you know, elevated the issue that we live now in a year-round fire season. We've seen movement at the state legislature around making Cal Fire year-round versus their nine-month typical kind of employment. And it reminded me of, you know, issues, and also, as you referenced J-Cod, it reminded me of, you know, the longstanding issues with regard to the CDC inmate firefighters. And recalling, as we talked about, you know, finding people to hire as safety departments across this country are suffering, both fire and public safety, to find people who want to come into the profession, you know, there's always been this interesting kind of tug-of-war around CDC-trained inmates. And there was a statutory issue in that based on the nature of your conviction, you couldn't be a paramedic. And so as we talked about, people who've trained, have hours of firefighting experience under their belt, upon release, could then not come into this profession that they've grown to have a passion for and want to continue. Do you know if that's still the case?
I do believe that it is still the case, that certain types of felonies that can't be expunged don't allow you to become an EMT. And that's through state regulation up at the state LEMSA. So I do know that our wildland firefighters, our paid wildland firefighters at L.A. County are not required to be EMTs, that I believe. And we could employ previously justice-involved individuals who have felonies to be wildland firefighters with the County of Los Angeles. So that's that bridge that I was talking about, where we have LATC, they graduate their cohort, we need to have some career development intern positions with DHR to bring them into a county firefighting hand crew that is different than the neighborhood fire station crew who responds to your home at 3:00 in the morning for a heart attack. Two different jobs. And we could employ those previously justice-involved folks in wildland fire year-round, doing projects when it's raining. We do have a year-round fire season, but it's not fire season today because it's raining. So we have other jobs that they could do during that time, so it would be money well-spent. And it would give them, you know, a job with a well-paying career and benefits.
I appreciate that because I just wanted to know if that was, you know, still an issue.
I think it's a possibility that we can work through. We should not let that hinder the idea.
I agree. And, you know, to determine if there's an appetite, because a number of years ago, there wasn't an appetite, and frankly, labor opposed it, as I recall. If there's an appetite to even expand it, so it's great that they would be available and eligible at the county level for wildfire fighting, but, you know, even more broadly, it's an area that the state is investing in their training, their skills and their lives are being used to fight fires. And if that really is an opportunity, particularly when we are looking for people to enter the workforce, that would be very helpful. So I wanted to know if that was still the issue in terms of the paramedics. Thank you very much.
I'm going to look into that and get back to you.
I appreciate that.
Well, I'll get back to the entire board.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Horvath?
Thank you. First, just want to commend you on the varied ways you are funding the variety of services that your department comes up with. I think that it's a testament to how many other departments should be looking at, you know, having the opportunity to have different sources of funding, diversifying that funding for the different needs that you have. My last question has to do with ongoing operations. It's, I know we're talking about the impacts of wildfire, that wildfires that have happened in 2025, and yet we still are feeling impacts from previous fires. We're still doing work on recovery from Woolsey. There was the Franklin fire before the holidays. So I know that that will also impact this coming budget and how you're able to complete that work while taking on new work. So since I had you here, I know we're focused on our budget today, I wanted to see if you could commit to, within 14 days, providing us with a report back on the status of the rebuild from Woolsey Fire in collaboration with Public Works, Regional Planning, and Public Health, and I will ask them to do the same with you, including the structures rebuilt, permitting or under construction, whether no action has been taken, and initial steps we're taking on Franklin, any of the other fires. Given that after-action helps inform future action, I think understanding the status of where we are from those, what we are, where we may be slow in our response and where we need to refine our response. And I know if it takes many years for somebody to move back, they might not ever come back to their community, and we've been pretty focused with this conversation about how we move differently in order to ensure people have the opportunity to come back. So is that something that you could work with us on in the next couple of weeks, just to give us a status report on all of that?
Oh, absolutely. You know what? We can commit to a 14-day report back on Woolsey rebuilds. I was advised that we're about 60% complete, but let's drill down and get you where the status of the rebuild is, how many have been occupied, who's currently in construction, who's not going to rebuild because they just don't want to occupy that parcel anymore. We can do that within 14 days. And I'll do it with the other three permitting agencies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And then can I just follow up on something because Supervisor Solis touched on it, and you brought it up again in the line of questioning, that's workman's comp. And Supervisor Solis talked about other departments that are facing the same thing. Fesia, I think it's time for us maybe to discuss a holistic approach to the workman's comp issue in L.A. County. Because when you look at the report that we get, it is going up. And it's going up, and I feel it's unchecked.
Yes.
And I think it's time to really look, drill down, and see what we need to do as it relates to the impact it's having because you can't backfill. When I went out, prior to being chief, and talked with fire personnel up in the Antelope Valley, who were very frustrated about the fact that they were not able to see their family because they had to keep staying over because there was not enough staffing, I said to them, you need to also hold your fellow personnel responsible because for every time they're out, that falls on your back. And so I think that we need, and it resonated with them, and they got it. But I think it's important for us to look at this holistically because it's not unique to fire, it's not unique to sheriff. When you said that, Supervisor Solis, it was like an aha moment. It's like, yeah, probation's having the same problem. And we all talk about it, and then it's like, what do we do? I know that the DA has expressed interest if we give him a few cases to prosecute, and maybe that would resonate with individuals, but the DA is also interested in engaging with us on workman's comp fraud. And that includes any medical professionals that are helping aid and abet, those that are doing what I would call criminal activities.
Thank you, Supervisor. Some of this work has been underway. We have worked before with fire and DHR. I agree that we can always do more. I think that the presence of things like 4850 in our safety department sometimes incentivizes what you would see as higher numbers. But overall, we can pull the group back together, check in on where we are on the original work plan, see what needs to be adjusted, and then we'll also include the District Attorney's Office in our discussions going forward.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other questions from my colleagues, thank you again to your team. Thank you, Chief. All right, we are now going to hear from the Director of Consumer and Business Affairs, Rafael Carvajal. Director of Consumer and Business Affairs and staff will make a presentation. Welcome.
All right. How do you follow a hero? Thank you, Chief Maroni, for all the work you and your team have done. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. My name is Rafael Carvajal, and I have the privilege of leading the Department of Consumer and Business Affairs. Joining me today is Alfred Bray Rudy, our Admin Deputy, and our Department of Finance Manager Christina Nguyen. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today to present DCBA's recommended budget for fiscal year 2526. Today, I will walk through three key slides, which were provided to your teams in advance. These slides provide an overview of our budget priorities, our unmet needs, which are the gaps in funding that impact our ability to fully deliver on our mission, and budget challenges and pressures, which are the financial constraints and external factors shaping our fiscal outlook. On the left of the slides, you will see DCBA's budget total appropriation is $76 million with 186 budgeted staff. You will also see breakdown of our major responsibilities that we consider our pillars of service. While I don't want, while I don't have the time to go into detail on each pillar today, I do want to emphasize that two fundamental principles connect all of our programs and drive the work that we do. Economic justice, ensuring the access to resources, protections, and that our communities are treated fairly, and consumer protections, safeguarding our communities from unfair business practices and financial exploitation in many levels. Everything we do is rooted in these values, and our budget reflects our ongoing commitment to serving, protecting, and empowering our county residents. Next, we will walk through one of the cruelest exercises most of us department heads have to go through, which is prioritizing our programs for funding. Our first priority is centered around our housing and tenant protections work. All of our housing programming and programs and work were launched in the middle of COVID emergency. Some of the programming was planned, and as our CEO put it yesterday, were the right thing at the right time. So as we launched these programs, the demand for these services exponentially grew and continue to grow today. In that vein, the first three items are housing-related staffing requests to help us stabilize our infrastructure so that we can meet the demand. We are requesting eight revenue offset positions for our rent civilization program. This staff increase will allow us to stabilize the existing programs and attempt to normalize our processes. This includes reviewing of rental adjustments, reconsiderations of pass-throughs, rent registry inquiries, and enforcement activities. The need to do this was also highlighted in our joint report during a rental increase debates a few months ago. We also have a request for four positions to help build the management and infrastructure of our programming in our eviction prevention side of the house. Two positions will help with planning and managing the division that includes our Right to Counsel, Stay Housed L.A., Rent Habitability, Rent Escrow Program, and our other upcoming prevention strategies. Two positions are add-deletes to right-size the staffing for our Rent Habitability, Rent Escrow Program. Our second priority is centered around building our infrastructure and staffing for our new expanded community center operations. Our operations have expanded to include oversight of the South Wider Community Resource Center, East L.A. Civic Center, and now the Altadena Community Center, which we took over on January 1st of this year. Given the emergency and the survival of the center among the destruction, there is a heightened focus on ensuring that the center plays a key role for community-based recovery efforts in Altadena. So we are requesting two positions whose costs will be absorbed by the department through consolidation of some lower-level positions to help right-size the leadership and support for our community centers. Third is focus on stabilizing the infrastructure and staffing for our Office of Immigrant Affairs. As we see the impact of this new administration on our immigrant communities, our OIE services have become that much more critical to this community. We are already seeing the increased demand on these services. This request attempts to right-size a leadership position and support staff to support our language access programming operations. Finally, I will highlight the request to realign four positions within our Office of Labor Equity. These positions will right-size leadership and support staff in our forensic auditing team to help us more effectively evaluate violations and hold bad actors accountable. Next, I'd like to walk you through our unmet needs on the next slide. Our first priority for our unmet needs is funding for our eviction prevention legal services program and conduit for our new Right to Counsel program, Stay Housed L.A. The Stay Housed L.A. program faces a funding shortfall of $7.6 million for fiscal year 2526 as one-time dollars expire. The program has been seriously funded through one-time dollars and is currently ARP-funded through half of the fiscal year 2526. Additional funding will help carry the program through the balance of the fiscal year. Next, we have a request to fund our self-help legal access centers. Ongoing funding is needed to ensure the continued success of our county self-help legal centers. This funding will support the permanency of this critical access to justice program for county residents across various courthouses. Services include eviction prevention, assistance for domestic violence survivors, consumer debt and civil matters, family law resources, and connections to other valuable resources. Third is a request for bridge funding for Office of Cannabis Affairs. This funding will support existing staff and current programming as we launch mid-fiscal year 2526. And fourth, we are requesting funding for our Representative L.A. program. Again, in the advent of this new administration, our immigration legal services program and support services become that much more critical in supporting this community. The program was funded through one-time CFCI ARP dollars, and these funds are expected to be exhausted at the end of this fiscal year. Additional ongoing funding is essential to sustain critical services like removal defense, immigration relief, case management, and support for immigrants facing homelessness, disabilities, or violence. Five is a request for funding for an illicit Five is a request for funding for an illicit cannabis business enforcement pilot. Understand that with the fires and the emergencies and competing priorities, focus on illicit cannabis activity is not top of mind. But as we prepare to launch our licensing program, we have to acknowledge and address the impact of the illicit market not only, not only as a nuisance to the community, but these storefronts undercut the regulated market selling cheaper and untested products, which will impact the success of our regulated program. And finally, our last priority is to help build up our administrative infrastructure. We are requesting funding to support two staff, one leadership and one technical, to help meet our admin demands as our programs continue to grow. And finally, I'd like to provide an overview of our budget pressures that shape our fiscal outlook. Like many of our colleagues, the recent fires have resulted in enforcing costs, including a sharp rise in staff overtime due to increased workloads, like many of our departments. Additionally, we anticipate a heightened demand for existing programming and anticipate this demand to continue through the recovery. An example of this demand is, at any given time, about 12% to 17% of our staff are out in the field as designated DSWs. And like we discussed recently, the increase in price gouging cases that we're facing during this emergency. And then finally, unlike, not unlike many of our other departments, we're not special in this case, but we do face challenges with competing priorities and limited staff. So as DCBA grows in program and scope, our limited infrastructure and staffing gaps create mounting challenges. To ensure long-term sustainability, we must stabilize our operations because new programs need time and resources to build strong foundations amid rising demand, balance growth and capacity, expanding services and new initiatives strain our constrained resources. And like all our other departments, we need to manage our shifting priorities. Nevertheless, it has been the deep commitment of our staff and our partners that we have been able to be responsive to your board and our community. So in closing, I want to express my deep gratitude to this board and your respective teams, the CEO, staff, for their ongoing support of our mission. And I'd like to acknowledge our CBO partners and our department partners because without them, we wouldn't be able to do what we do every day. So thank you and welcome any questions.
I'll let you take a sip while I call on Supervisor Yolda Solis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Rafael and your team for, for your presentation. And if you could maybe take me back to when, I know I've been on the board now 10 years. And when did you take over the helm?
I've been fortunate enough to survive my fourth year this year.
Fourth year. But you were in this department, so to speak, for some time?
Yes, I was.
Right, how many?
I joined DCBA in 2018.
And that was at the time run by none other than Joe Nikita?
Mr. Nikita was a director at the time.
And I know at that time, when he was overseeing the department, we really pushed him to begin to think about providing more services, direct services, which you now have been able to at least begin filling in and really fleshing out and putting more staff in. And can you remind me how many staff were on board back then?
So when we joined, because we joined at the same time, we were at 67 staff.
So you've more than doubled.
We've more than doubled.
Right. And a lot of that has come through NCC funding and grants and things that we got. We were very thankful that we got federal funding to do some of our work. And I know now, much of that has now gone away. But I want to say that you've been really operating on a shoestring, as a matter of fact. That's how I, that's how I see it. And I know that the board has given you a lot of responsibility over the last couple of years. I know I have. And in fact, I think we can compete with any other local office that has a similar setting like the city of L.A. where you all provide a more robust menu of services. And oftentimes, don't get overlooked and don't get that credit. So I want to be able to say that for the record that you have actually helped us in our crisis here at the board in many ways, whether it was through COVID, also reaching out to small businesses who needed the mom and pops that needed that grant relief right away, without question, and just processing all of that. And also the rent relief that went in to help many of our families, struggling immigrant, migrant, and other low-income impoverished folks that we represent was really, really important for us. And I think that has helped me to convey to my constituents what OIA does, DCBA, and all the other worker type of assistance that you provide. I certainly want to see your budget continue to grow, but I know that that's going to be something that you're going to have to work on with our CEO and I hope the board in the future because the needs are going to continue to grow. And as we just are leaving the crisis with the fires, that's going to be ongoing for some time. And I know there's going to be a need to have more representation, not only for the people who've been impacted directly, but those in the future that are also looking to perhaps start up a new business in those areas or wanting to build there and seeing that there are still a lot of people that will prey on immigrant communities and others that may not be well-versed in our laws and protocols, and especially how to maneuver within the county system. Those are all things that I think are very important that your, your department plays a role in or your office does. So I hope that continues. But I want to, I want to look at the current situation. Current situation right now, as we know, there is a lot of extreme nervousness, anxiety, and also a need for, for us to continue, I think, the course. And I, and I say that without, without impugning anyone, but just to say that it's important that our communities, especially our immigrant communities, understand that we have set forth a process now for a couple of years. Think back, starting in 2017, when we actually created the Office of Immigrant Affairs that I created with the help of this board to help provide assistance, assurance, information, prevention services and all of that, coupled with legal assistance, working with our partners, knowing that you couldn't and didn't have the ability to staff up, but that we could contract out those services. And many of those contractors, CBOs, community-based groups are our friends. And they do a very, in many ways, a very good job. And it's grown. And I want to thank that community out there because I know they're feeling the pressure right now and knowing, or not knowing, where their future is going to lie. And so they look to us. They look to the Office of Immigrant Affairs. They look to Consumer and Business Affairs. And one of the things that I wanted to remind the board was, was that just, you know, last, last year, November, I asked the board to, and I put forward a motion to ask our CEO to help us identify $5.5 million to ensure that the Represent L.A. program continues. Here we are now, almost six months past that. And I don't know where the report is, Madam CEO, but can you give me an idea where we are with that funding now or the plan for that? Because I still believe that that is a priority, if not more, important because of what we see playing out today on our streets, in our workplaces, and the fact that it is, this whole series of events that have happened have really stirred emotions and, and fear. And people are losing their jobs. People are not sending their children to school. People are not sending or going themselves to meet medical appointments because they don't know what lies in front of that door. And I don't think I have to explain what that is. But Madam, Madam CEO?
Thank you Supervisor Solis. So on the report back, we have an extension until April of this year, April of 2025. But notwithstanding that extension, I think it's important to note that this program, from its very inception, which, which was established in a CEO's office, has been funded continually since, I think, 2016 or 2017. We know that it's a joint effort between the city, the city of Los Angeles, the county, and I believe philanthropy was involved at that time. So we have continued to fund it. The issue is the type of funding, whether it's one-time funding or ongoing funding. But what I would say is, I think at the end of the day, although it might make it a little more difficult for Rafael to administer because he has to submit a request every year, folks have not gone without service because the funding is one-time in nature. In addition, we know that the state is, has proposed, I don't know if, I believe it's been approved, that they have established their own fund, $25 million. Not a lot of that, I believe, is coming to L.A. County. We're going to work with our layer team to see if we can advocate for an additional share of that.
Can we make sure that we do that? Because we've already voted as a board, the majority, that this is a priority. So I would, I would just ask us to please do that.
Yeah. I believe that it's going mostly to nonprofits.
And then I would ask you, can you tell me what the statistics are regarding the Represent L.A. program? How many people have we served? And what would happen if we do not continue your funding for this fiscal year?
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. And just want to echo the CEO's comments. We work collectively with her team in trying to pursue all areas of potential funding for this program because it is a priority for us as it is for them. For, since its inception in 2022, the new iteration of Represent L.A., we've served over 5,000 individuals through full scope representation or limited scope representation. If this program was to go away, we heavily rely on 16 of our nonprofit partners to provide these services. And if the funding was to go away for this program, we would have to work with them to try to see if there's additional funding that they could find to continue to provide these services, in particular to the open cases that they already have. Currently, there's about 600 folks receiving full scope removal defense, legal services.
What does that mean? Explain that.
So they have an, actually a signed and designated attorney that's representing them through this long, drawn-out immigration process. A case could live anywhere from one to three years before there's some active resolution, which makes this programming a little bit more challenging for our partners as well. And about 500 people are currently receiving full scope affirmative representation. This means that somebody has a legal pathway into attaining legal status and they're in the process of finalizing that in partnership with their designated attorney.
That's important. That would end if they, if we were to lose this funding?
Potentially, if we could not find gap funding for it.
462 is what the number I have, but you have a better number than I do. Okay. And then what about employment authorization?
Well, as far as our partners, each partner is funded at different levels. It definitely will impact their, their own personal capacity. We've been engaging with their partners on a regular basis and some of the changes in federal funding has already impacted some of their programming, which results in novel reliance on our program too. So attorneys are being shifted from federally funded programs into our programs to continue to provide those services.
So one thing I want to just remind the audience and our board is that when we talk about Office of Immigrant Affairs or immigrants, we're not talking just about Spanish-speaking. We're talking about an array of people from across the world. And especially with the predicament that we're in, we're finding even people from Ukraine, Ethiopia, Haiti, the EU are also being impacted by this tenuous situation of removal of TPS or somehow not allowing people to work their way through asylum processes, one, and then there's many others. But this impacts a good portion of our L.A. County residents and their, and their families, their mixed families. So I would, I just want to underscore, I continue to support your efforts. I know many people in our community and our advocates out there have been wanting a lot more than just 5.5. They're asking for, I forget the number, staff, what it is they're asking for, five, 50 million, which I don't know where we're going to pull that rabbit out of. But I do think we can continue on with what the course that we're at now and then hopefully have a commitment by the CEO and the board to help offset and hopefully get more money from the state. I'm sure we can do that with our legislative contacts. But that's, Madam Chair, that, just a question you and I wanted to put forward and to underscore that I believe, and I don't have to speak for the board, but I certainly want to continue to support the efforts that you've undertaken and that you've outlined and that for a small 186 employees, you guys are pretty awesome, I would say. Could we do better? Yes. But I think you guys are helping us to lead the way in the state of California and probably in the country because most people don't even know that we have this operation going. So I thank you and thank you for your time and the overtime that you put in because you also work on weekends and you do a lot of work with our communities, even in the fire crisis that we're in. They've been out there helping a lot of our mom and pops that lost their businesses, that are now homeless, people that were renters and didn't have any guarantees at all. So we continue to put that pressure on, on, on your offices. So thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Supervisor Solis for highlighting a lot of issues I wanted to touch on. I'll start, however, with your role in DCBA on enforcing the price gouging policies that we've implemented recently with the fire emergencies. How do you see this work and other related consumer protection work that exists in your department ramping up with this budget presentation that you've given us?
Yeah, the fires have definitely had an impact, in particular that side of the house. Typically, the most authority that our department has is during an emergency. As of last night, we have over 1,000 price gouging complaints. About 94% of those are housing-related or animal boarding care-related. So there's definitely an impact. The motion that passed not too long ago, asking us to work with our partners at DHR to bring onboard DSWs is really going to be very helpful. Also, as we are staffing our disaster recovery centers, we're seeing over 80% of the questions that are being asked by those that seek our assistance are connected to housing and price gouging specifically. So we're helping to connect them with resources. Just like our partners from Stay Housed, they join us at a lot of these events, providing that information. They have been present at the disaster recovery centers. They take referrals from us on a regular basis and we continue to plan programming around supporting the fire victims around the pressures that they're receiving around the housing.
Yeah. So I think this is another example. It's, we're looking at creative ways to staff you up and support you. But long-term, you know, how are we helping to make sure that we're supporting your department structurally and, and setting you up to succeed? I know we touched on, Supervisor Solis touched on the role that your, your department plays with regard to our immigrant communities. Another role that you play is our self-help legal access centers, which have been funded with one-time funding, I'm told, since 2011. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So how many constituents are you serving with that program? And given that it's been ongoing since 2011, are we at a point where that too should be considered with a dedicated stream of funding as opposed to sort of one-time dollars?
Definitely that program has been very impactful and is one of our most effective programs that we operate out of DCBA. Calendar year 2024, we served 115,000 folks that passed through our self-help legal access centers. About 27% of those were housing-related issues. 25% of those were domestic violence-related issues. And the balance is anywhere from family-related consumer debt and guardianship. The beauty of the self-help legal access centers, that they're actually physically located within our courthouses, and that allows us to play, to, to provide triage services at the most neediest time that, that our constituents need legal, access to legal services. I like to compare it to going to the hospital. Many of us don't go to see our primary care or go to the clinic. And folks aren't walking into the courthouse until they actually really have to be there. So I see our slacks as essentially our frontline services for legal access to our community.
And then I know Supervisor Solis touched a lot on the Stay Housed L.A. program, Right to Counsel. I know you identified this program has a gap of funding of 7.6 million. But I think the total yearly cost of that program to serve all who qualify in the unincorporated areas alone is much higher. And so, and I would also say, if we don't fund it, we pay exponentially more on the other side, letting people fall into homelessness and everything that comes with that. So how, how are you looking at, you know, without one-time funding, ARP, and, and other funding sources as you've had, you know, how realistic is it based on your vantage point today that we're going to be able to cover that gap? And what more do you need from us?
Yeah. This program has definitely been one of the most successful programs this county's put together. put together. Since its inception, we've helped over 25,000 households attain full legal representation, limited legal representation, and tenant navigation services. We've hosted over 1,000 right, know your rights workshops with over 23,000 people attending. And over 90% of those that receive full legal representation and assistance have successful outcomes. They either are able to remain in their household or we're able to navigate them through into a soft landing, meaning that they either find another place to live and we help them transition there successfully, completely avoiding them being displaced. The, I, I trust that our, our CEO team will help us find that gap. They always do, like they do with most of our programs. But I think there's a silver lining to this effort is that with Measure A, there was some specific funding that was allocated specifically to support this type of programming. 11% of the revenue is dedicated to that. As a matter of fact, this board on December 3rd passed a motion asking us in partnership with the CEO's HI to look into the allocation and identify ongoing resources, working with our partners at LASSA. So conversations, I mean, La Casa. So our conversations with La Casa have ramped up. We've met there and presented at least twice, and we're excited to see where this takes us. There's also an opportunity through the La Casa Measure A partnership to invite our other municipalities to participate. Some of them will receive their own funding through Measure A. This is an opportunity, like many other cities have done, like the city of Long Beach, who've decided to contribute to the program because they see the value for it, to help support their own community through creating an economy of scale with this program that we've already developed. So we're hopeful that these conversations will get us to where we need to be to make sure that this program is permanently funded.
When I was thinking about the role that these budget hearings can play for us as a county, I real, I thought a lot about your department, to be honest. It's a smaller department, and yet if you think about, you know, immigration services, homelessness prevention through rent, rent or another sort of housing protections, being at the forefront of consumer protection, which contributes to the affordability crisis that people are facing. So many of the things that are on your plate are top of mind issues, headline, I mean, if not front of the newspaper kind of issues that people are talking about. And so, and yet you're, you're doing a lot with, you know, very small resources compared to some of our other departments. And, and I think a lot about if we are setting you up to succeed with enough resources based on all that is on your plate. You know, there's discussion, ongoing discussion around potentially consolidating some of the work around homelessness and whether that will help or whether leaving it sort of dispersed throughout the 14 different departments right now is the best approach. But I, I think, you know, your department really highlights, I think for me, how we need to have a different way we look at budgeting for, for our departments. Because if we're not investing, for example, in Stay Housed L.A., we're, you know, we are actively contributing to the homelessness crisis that we see because we, it's much more cost effective for us to be working with you and keep people in the housing that they're in than it is for us to be investing in another department, you know, waiting for them to fall to, to that responsibility. And, and I don't see it really as a competition of resources. It's really like where, where do we get the most outcome for, for the type of investment that we're making? And, and I really think that, you know, when we're thinking about self-help legal access centers, Stay Housed L.A., some of these preventative measures, this is, this, we have to put our money where our mouth is in terms of what we're saying our priorities are and the crises that we, that we want to tackle. And so I, I just want to take this opportunity to really highlight what is going on in your department. I appreciate that our CEO gets creative for us because there are lots of pots of money that, that do exist one time, and, and of course, we want to make best use of them. But when we see that homelessness is a crisis that's only getting worse, these aren't new issues that are, that are coming up. These are issues that have existed for a long time, that programs exist for a long time, and in many cases, more than 10 years. And we're funding them with one-time dollars, which may be a creative budget solution, but I think it also sends a message like we're willing to cut them potentially if we need to. And it also doesn't help some of our CBOs who rely on that funding to staff up in the ways that they want to if they had a dedicated stream of funding that we see from some of our other departments. So as we're thinking about how Measure A can help us and another, that other streams of funding that are more dedicated, I really hope that we're thinking about this work, whether it continues to exist in this department or another place. Because we really, this is a place where we can really be using our dollars to more impact, I think, as we think about the totality of, of what's on their plate. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Supervisor Horvath for that really perspective and positioning Rafael's department as being really critical to a lot of our issues. And everybody's already touched on it, but yeah, I associate myself with the comments of, of my colleagues who particularly, you know, drilled down on Stay Housed L.A., the right to counsel program, you know, those are so important as well as Represent L.A. Those are just so critical now more than ever. And just back to what, what you were saying, Lindsay, you know, that was kind of the whole interesting tension when we first went to the voters to support, you know, a tax increase to fund solutions to homelessness. And there was a lot of early tension and, and arguments, territorial, jurisdictional kinds of, you know, positions as it relates to, does this money go just to nonprofits out there who are doing the work? Or does some of that, you know, get to our county departments who are also doing the same work? And I know it's kind of a, I see your, your little light on there. I yield my time to the gentlewoman from the CEO's office.
I was, I was just going to share with the board in light of Supervisor Horvath's and, and Han's comments. It's, it's sometimes the question comes down to our self-imposed restrictions on funding. So for example, at some point later in the year, we will be coming to this board to talk about the CFCI Care First Community Investment Budget Funding. We know that they are anticipated to carry over about $231 million into fiscal year 25, 26. Now granted, that is one-time funding, but these types of comments, I think, raises a legitimate question about looking at our, our restrictions where some of the work that DCBA is doing, my team has already started to look at whether it would qualify for any of the, the Care First Community Investment category. So sometimes it's not that there isn't sufficient, that there isn't funding available. It is because we have restricted it ourselves.
Well, I think Supervisor Horvath kind of urged you to just continue to be creative because we, if we know one thing about, since we've been tackling the homelessness crisis, it's prevention. It's keeping people housed where they are is like the number one thing. And I know that's a priority. Your, your priorities that you've laid out, Stay Housed L.A. was clearly one of those priorities. So we know that the investment there pays dividends so much. So we just want to figure out how to, how to fund that. And, and really wanted to associate myself with Supervisor Solis's comments, particularly as it relates to our immigrant community. You're exactly right. I mean, the, the fear, the, so much so that I've heard from some of my friends who are on school boards throughout the county, and the percentage of students that did not show up to work last week was phenomenal. And guess how schools get funded, right? Daily attendance. And so it's got, it's going to have long-term consequences for the financial health of our school districts if parents are afraid to send their kids to school because of this. So, you know, really want to thank Immigrants R.L.A. advocates. They are really on the forefront of continuing to remind us how critical it is. I had lunch last week with Archbishop Gomez, who also is very concerned about the immigrant community as it relates to the archdiocese. And we in the county have an obligation. We have a commitment and we have a moral authority to really protect our immigrants. And we can do that through these programs, which can educate them about their rights, about what is available to them as we all navigate this, this situation. And, you know, just reading the memo that got leaked about a large-scale immigration raid in Los Angeles this week, I think everyone is, is very concerned. So Rafael, your department has, has been, which has been said by my colleagues, is so critical for so many areas. And I just want you to know you have my support. We want the CEO to listen to us as well on how this is very important to us. On a, maybe a less priority, but still important, I was with you over the holidays as we handed out MASA at the South Whittier Community Center. And just wondering if any of your budget constraints, you're foreseeing any concerns at the South Whittier Community Center?
No, no, thank you for that. And thank you for including us on the MASA giveaways. Actually, we don't, like, our CEO continuously encourages to be creative with our resources. Our ask right now around our centers is consolidating some existing positions to create the capacity to continue to provide those services. And much like we've done at the center, we've leveraged our existing programming to make it available to the community. We know that coming downtown is not easy for everybody, and not even our workers and myself sometimes don't want to come all the way to downtown, particularly on days that it's raining and we're facing traffic. We don't want our communities to face that. So taking all of our programming and making it available there is something that we're excited about doing and continuing doing.
Again, one more thing. A lot of people don't realize that you're in our community centers. Again, so, so much of what you do is so critical to the constituents we serve, and it's the things that, that really matter to them most. It's, it's, your department is quality of life for, for our resident, our 10 million residents. So thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick questions on the budget. You know, wage theft is very real in L.A. counties. And as we talk about those most vulnerable, particularly now, as we talk about your responsibility around worker protections, and as Supervisor Solis said, many of these CBOs who are providing services are our friends, and we need them now more than ever as people are afraid of their own government. And we understand that rightly so. And so does your requested budget for the Office of Labor Equity include the capacity for stipends or contracts to our CBO friends who can assist us in the intake of wage theft complaints? Because we know the reality of wage theft far exceeds the people who actually make it in to complain so we can start the process of helping them get their wages.
Appreciate that question Supervisor Mitchell. Indirectly, it does. So by strengthening our forensic auditing team, it allows us to more quickly audit businesses that have been accused of wage theft or labor trafficking, allows us to move faster through the process. And what we've been able to do is using the fines collected from bad actors. We've been able to fund our community partners to be an extension of ourselves. In particular, in our current environment, people don't want to come to the county. They don't want to talk to us. So we want to make sure that they have other avenues to connect with us, file complaints with us. We've actually funded partners to do outreach and provide legal services, in particular those that have been labor trafficked. I know yesterday there was some folks from Loyola Marymount sharing the, the fear of increased labor trafficking during these, the emergency recoveries, and it is real. And we anticipate to see some upticks there, but do fear that folks won't come forward to talk to us about that. So heavily partnering and relying on our partners to do that outreach and that connection for us is very critical for us.
So I appreciate that was, it's, as you said, indirect. If you have the resources to increase the fines and you have resources to pay these CBOs. So does this budget request meet the need to ensure that we are increasing the amount of fines and back wages that we're collecting?
Yes, absolutely.
Show me where. Is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it captured in the budget? No, it's not.
It's not captured.
It's not captured in the budget. Those are considered one-time dollars because they're not consistent. So those budget, those, that funding is captured through our, through our ongoing and through a special fund.
So to increase funding to try to increase your ability to capture wage theft, it's kind of self fulfilling.
Yes. Yeah. Our, our intent is not to put people out of business, but our intent is to go after bad actors.
I agree. We want to increase the number of bad actors we go after to increase captured wages.
Absolutely. So it's a deterrent at the same time as well.
So I, I was asking the question because I, we, we have the sense that we aren't capturing, we're not really meeting the need. And so I wanted to make sure that CBOs were engaged to help us, particularly in this time and climate, hear from people to make sure that it's being reported to allow you to investigate.
And appreciate that too because our, our partners in this space have been responsive to the emergency too, because they've seen issues and concerns around that. And they're, they're at the recovery centers with us, and they're walking hand in hand with us as we refer folks over to them that need their assistance.
Going back to your stated budget that you're looking to implement the cannabis licensing and the social equity program in 2026, you're asking for it looks like one additional position. Do you think that you'll be able to stand up the entire licensing program with just the one additional position?
Is that a trick question?
No.
Of course, additional resources and additional staffing always helps. I do feel confident that with the staffing that we have, we have the ability to pursue grants. We are working with the CEO on establishing the business development work and workforce development work around this industry as well, but, but definitely any additional resources are helpful.
I just ask because I know residents have been waiting a long time for the social equity program to launch, 2026. So I just wanted to know if it was realistic to think that with this one additional FTE that it really could be stood up? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so I have a question, just for point of clarification. On your budget, is, am I reading this right? The 50% of your budget is net county cost? Thereabouts?
Yes.
So, you know, that raises a concern as it relates to FISA, your opening talk to the board about some of the financial issues coming our way. And so I think it's important, and, and I appreciate that. And I think it's because we have asked you to do things and allocated net county cost, recognizing it's one time. And so my question is, are we looking to outside partners to help? Because some of these that have been built out, it's one of those ones you pay for it, it's hard to take it back because the service is needed. Are you looking to partner with the private sector? For example, when I look at the legal, self-help legal access centers, that's net county cost, and they provide a valuable service in our courts, even outside our courts at the centers. Are we looking for alternative funding sources to backfill if there are financial constraints?
Yeah, we're always actively looking for additional resources. We established a policy division specifically to help us work with our state partners and any, any, anybody else that's willing to support this, including philanthropy and other municipalities that typically fund this type of work.
And then following up on that, the department, you're requesting the 7.6 million, give or take, for Stay Housed L.A. and 5.1 for the self-help legal access services. I know in the past, I don't know if you asked, I know I asked, for data to show, you know, performance metrics. Do we have those?
We absolutely do. On the slacks, we report on a quarterly basis, the numbers and the data and the people that are served and the service connection and the percentages.
And the breakdown.
Where, where they go, and the same thing. Stay Housed is actually every six months, but I could definitely provide, provide that on demand as well.
Excellent. And then last but not least, I know, I think Supervisor Horvath touched on it about the, the impact the recent wildfires and other disasters have had as it relates to eviction cases. Do we have data on that as well?
So not hard data yet. Our partners at the court provide us unlawful detainer data on a quarterly basis. So they just provided us data ending December of '24. We will be getting the next batch in March, so we'll be able to see if there's been any influx there. But like I've shared at the disaster recovery centers, 90% of the questions are around housing. Our call center that takes our tenant protection hotline, our calls have increased at least 25% when we were starting to see a decrease in those calls. Questions regarding services around housing have continued to increase, both from the landlord's side and the tenant's side. So these are clear indicators to me, based on our experience, that we are going to see something. What that something is, we're not entirely sure until we see the full impact of it. But at minimum, there is some insecurity and fear from our tenants around the impact that this emergency is going to have on them. and fear from our tenants around the impact that this emergency is going to have on them.
Okay, my last question, and maybe it's to Fizia to you. When we know that there's money that's been allocated at the state level, and you said 25 million, but it doesn't look at the county, who should be up there advocating for that? I mean, I feel like the tail wagging the dog. I mean, I feel that we have a role, and yet we're saying we're going to start now, and I will guarantee you.
Yeah. So as far as I know, the funding was recently allocated and announced, and who should be up there is DCBA in partnership with Lair, with the Sacramento folks.
Because you and I both know that once the recipe is mixed, it's already in the oven, that money is probably. So I think it's important for us, and even to drive the discussion, as it relates to, especially since your budget is 50% net county cost, it's built on service needs that are one-time funding that gets rolled over. But it's, I don't think arbitrary, because you've got the metrics and the data to back up the ask. So I would hope that we would be driving that narrative up in Sacramento moving forward.
Sacramento?
Yes, we have a Sacramento trip scheduled. Yeah, yeah. But I'm just, I'm just thinking that when when you said we should get on that, it's like we should have been on that.
So that that particular bill was one of those quick reactions to the emergency that moved really quickly, really swiftly. We, they did reach out, and we did provide some input on that. But essentially, the funding is to provide additional funding to the existing infrastructure that the state already has in place, like the One California Program. So the additional funding is going to go to those providers who are nonprofits providing direct services. That money is divided a little bit different throughout the state, with certain pockets receiving more concentration of resources. But I absolutely hear you and welcome any opportunity to advocate.
So I guess my question would be, how many counties have a program similar to what you provide?
I would say no county has a program similar to.
So then we, so that, that's my point. I mean, I think that in a county of 10 million people, and you look at the population of the state, I would, I would argue that we have it because we're filling a void. That's all. I mean, I'm not criticizing you. I just think that we have a compelling story to tell.
And I think you're absolutely right. I think this board has been very creative in how we address programs and have implemented some very successful programs, such as representing LA in our stay house program that are models nationwide. And people could like consistently reach out to us to ask us to share lessons learned and how we arrived to where we are.
So yeah, because this is not a mandated program. This is discretionary. And I just think that, based on what Fizia said in the beginning, we've got a lot of mandated that are going to take up the discretionary. And I'm very cognizant of that, and it's going to, it's going to be about priorities. So with that, Supervisor Solis?
Thank you. I just want to go back to our CEO. CFCI funding, I think, as you said, we kind of lock ourselves out sometimes of potential. But if I remember correctly, the whole effort with CFCI was to target populations that are vulnerable, that have many of the similar characteristics of the population that's being served by this department, this office. So I would hope that we could make that case to them, and we should. And I'm happy. I think maybe other board members would feel the same way. But that certainly is, I would think, something that we could tap into.
So Supervisor, we are looking at that analysis, particularly in this season of austerity that we find ourselves in with our budget. And the Care First Community Investment, that board is advisory to your board. And so they present recommendations that goes through my office. We present it to the board in a board letter. And and some of the programs that we're talking about here would fall under the Direct Community Investments programs, I guess, intent, the legislative intent of CFCI. And so we are, we are looking at that. We're looking at all options on the table.
And I think all of us have representatives on that board. So I would think we could coalesce or, you know, say that this is a priority for for us. That's one option. And the other is, I think that there are some departments that also may have some overlap in what what the office does as well. So I think we need to figure out where there may be some overlap, if there is. If not, fine. And then I would strongly encourage Lair and us to put together our delegation for LA County so they understand exactly for presentation by them, understand exactly the kind of services they provide, and get them to help us either with a carve out or with a stream of funding to help the entire county. Because they're, they're literally, you all are helping the entire county here, not just one or two districts, but it's the county. So I would encourage that. Thank you.
We will do that. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions. Thank you, Rafael. Thank you to your team. We will now hear from the Director of Aging and Disabilities, Dr. Laura Trejo. Director of Aging and Disabilities and staff will make a presentation.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to present our fiscal year 2526 budget requests. As you know, my name is Laura Trejo, and I'm the Director of Aging and Disabilities. And with me today is Mike Sau, our Administrative Deputy, and Victoria Jump, our Assistant Director of our Area Agency on Aging. The Aging and Disabilities Department and its network of community partners is there to improve the lives and support the self-determination of older adults, adults living with disabilities, and overall communities. Through our programs and services, we help older, independent adults live with dignity and independence. We ensure their safety and well-being. And we offer vibrant community and senior centers that empower and connect our residents to services and to each other. Our services and programs range from education and recreational activities at our centers, to care coordination, transportation, senior meals, investigation of elder, independent adult abuse and neglect. We provide services to persons experiencing homelessness who are at high risk of abuse and neglect. And we also advocate for residents in skilled nursing facilities and assisted living facilities. AD has an allocated budget of 225 million and 596 budgeted positions. For fiscal year 2526, we are requesting eight new positions. Of these, five are being offset with existing vacant items. The positions are needed for our community centers, our Disability Services Branch, and to support our administrative infrastructure. Item two reflects a transfer of four vacant positions that are part of the transfer of the Altadena Community Center to DCBA. The third request is for generators to ensure that we're prepared for possible power outages at our community and senior centers to ensure the safety of the of the clients that we serve. And this will ensure that all of our centers have a generator available to them. We do not have a slide on unmet needs, but I wanted to address that. While currently we're not requesting anything, I wanted to share with the board that, given the diversity and complexity of our funding streams, we must acknowledge that increasing needs of those we serve are quickly outpacing our existing resources. And therefore, we have created a five-year strategic analysis of the needs and how they will fold out over coming years, given our funding streams. And we will come back at future years with requests to this board. I wanted to acknowledge that. In terms of the next slide, please. The next slide discusses challenges and pressures. To our department, we have three areas of concern. One is the potential revenue decreases due to the federal policy shifts that are occurring in Washington. As you know, our largest programs rely heavily on federal funds. For example, 68% of our senior programs are federally funded, and about 49% of our Adult Protective Services Program is federally funded. So we are tracking those realities at the federal level very closely to ensure that we are communicating with your board any concerns that we may have. We are also very concerned about increases in operational costs due to the economic shifts that are occurring. For example, our largest program in senior services is our Senior Nutrition Program. As food costs go up, costs of personnel go up, our ability to deliver meals becomes challenged and decreases. So we are being very intentional and thoughtful about the implications to our providers in terms of their ability to provide those services. The last item of concern relates to the recent fires. I wanted to start by sharing our heartfelt condolences to all of the fire victims and residents who have experienced such unprecedented loss. As you are aware, our Altadena Senior Center was destroyed due to the Easton Fire, and we are working with our county partners to address the rebuilding efforts. AD has been working at local assistance centers and shelters, and we are very grateful to our incredibly dedicated staff and partners, especially those in the independent living centers, who have helped to assure that our clients receive the services that they needed. Just to give you an example, our staff has conducted over 11,000 wellness calls to residents in Los Angeles to ensure their well-being because we wanted to make sure that our clients did not feel more isolated because of the of the situation that they were experiencing. We have been working diligently to provide accessible transportation to people who have special needs. And we have also been working, for example, our Long Term Care Ambitment, who provides advocacy in skilled nursing and assisted living facilities, was on the ground at the Pasadena Convention Center, supporting the evacuation of people from nursing homes and assisted living facilities. We're incredibly proud of the work that our team did that day, in those days. We've also been working very hard to coordinate with our city partners, our City Department of Aging, to make sure that nobody fell through the cracks in the needs of the clients in the community. I can tell you, I've literally talked, I think, three to four times a day with the Director of Aging at the City of Los Angeles over the last six weeks. And because we both wanted to make sure that we were taking care of the clients we are dedicated to serve, we've also been working very closely with law enforcement and the Red Cross. One of the things that I wanted to commend this board, this department existing has been a game changer in the response to this event. We have been able to literally stay on on focus in addressing barriers that were existing in order to serve clients. And we have been able to change how we do business. For example, we've worked very differently with the Red Cross. At first, it was like, no, you can't come into our evacuations shelters. We are there now. And that was because of the ability of our staff to really work through the levels and be able to reassure of the Red Cross of the of the work that we needed to do. So again, I want to commend your board for the vision of having a department that could focus and really drill down when it matters on behalf of residents. We've also been working very effectively with our county partners. A big thank you to the libraries. They've become a place where we could deliver more services to the community. Parks and others have all stepped up to support the loss of our senior center in Altadena. So I want to thank those directors for calling me really quickly and saying, Laura, how can we help? We also want to share our deep appreciation to the CEO and her staff. They have been incredibly supportive. Every time we've sent an email or make a phone call, they respond so quickly. So thank you for that. Also OEM, and all of our community partners, and especially our commissioners. Our commissioners have really been there for us when we needed them, giving us advice and support in the work that we needed to do. And one of the things I'm incredibly proud is that we have been developing a lot of new materials and informational materials for the community in all threshold languages and in Braille that we have been distributing across the entire region. So much so that even the City of Los Angeles requested that we please make all of our materials available for their use, and we have done that. And so in closing, I just want to thank everybody in Los Angeles for the support they provided older adults and adults living with disability as a result of the situation that we're currently living through. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve. And that concludes my presentation, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you, Director Trejo. And we are all very sympathetic to your recent loss. So please know that. These are really tough times, and this is when I think friendships and camaraderie really count. So we're there in support of you. So I do have some members in the queue. I have Supervisor Mitchell, who'd like to start, start us out.
I appreciate that, and thank you very much. I just want to elevate what you said and what's on that slide, that with the proposed federal cuts to the Older Americans Act, which funds about 40% of our Adult Protective Services Program, if you could paint a picture for us about what that means for older adults in LA County if those dollars go away. Because I'm assuming that you and your department and your budgeting are in no position to backfill those dollars. Is that a safe assumption?
Absolutely, ma'am.
So help me understand what services we as a county, the safety net level of government, will no longer be in a position to provide for our most vulnerable residents?
Adult Protective Services currently sees about 55,000 reports of suspected elder, independent adult abuse on a yearly basis. That's about 5,000 to 6,000 requests a month for us to go into the community and investigate the well-being of our most vulnerable citizens. If we were to decrease that by half, think about the potential tragic impact on the most vulnerable members of our community to be exposed to potential abuse, neglect, or anything else that could be happening in their lives. And so to me, that would be an incredibly tragic reality, that I don't know how we would be able to respond without the resources being made available to them.
And that would mean reduction in your staff?
Reduction in staff, reduction in our ability to conduct investigations, reduction in our ability to support those individuals when we actually are there and create care plans for them, where we connect them to existing services and supports in the community. All of that would disappear for about half of those clients that we currently serve.
I just, I saw it on the chart. You mentioned it.
Thank you.
I just needed you to be able to say that.
Thank you.
Specifically, for us to understand what is at risk if the Older Americans Act and those federal funds go away.
Yeah.
I'm curious, the Disabilities and Support Services Branch staffing, how does it compare to other, either LA City or other major metropolitan agencies with similar size and needs?
The the closest that I that I have nearby is the Disability Department at the City of LA, and it functions very differently. Their department is more support to a commission and does some level of policy involvement. So they're not really a direct services program. The way that we're structuring our branch is to do both. We are both supportive of the commission work and the policy direction of the of the of the county, but we are also delivering direct services. For example, our, our LA Found Program is in there. That's our bracelet to help people with cognitive impairment not get lost. We also have a special transportation program that I can tell you right now, during the fires, in partnership with Metro, we realigned the program to make sure that those in most need, that would have the hardest time accessing transportation, would be able to receive transportation services within 24 to 48 hours. And so those are the types of direct services that we're providing under the branch as we are trying to build. We're also, for example, about two years ago, we received a small grant for Los Angeles. It's about a $2 million grant to begin to develop infrastructure around our Aging and Disability Resource Connection, which is a no wrong door approach to older adults and persons with disability. That is in all of that section of the branch. So we are literally, one of the gifts of having Victoria Jump join our team was that she is a stellar grants developer, and we are already working, she is already actively working with our state partners to try to find state solutions and resources to bring to Los Angeles to build out our Aging and Disability Resource Collaborative, which I think will be a game changer for our residents.
That's helpful. I was going to ask you, you know, kind of like what lessons you did you learn, or what resources will you be looking for to serve the county's aging population during a crisis like we just experienced? But you talked about you don't have the unmet needs slide, but you're working on this five-year plan. So I'm hoping those concepts and ideas will be included.
And more so. One of the things that I'm actively doing is I'm actually talking to all of our partners, and also to our stakeholders, to our staff on the ground. I am developing a list of the things that need to be changed. I've already started working with our Commission on Aging at the state level, with the California Department of Aging, with the California Association of Area Agency on Aging, sort of all the state partners, because we need to start changing legislation. The fact that older adult professionals are not considered important enough to be like in a, in a evacuation center is something I have a hard time understanding. When you look at the vulnerability of our residents, and Los Angeles may be unique in that we have one of the largest concentrations of older people in the nation. So we have a responsibility to lead, because in disasters, the people that most definitely do worse are older people and people living with disabilities.
That's right.
And so I've already spoken to FEMA, the Administration on Community Living, anybody that will hear me right now is getting an earful about our experience on the ground. Special concerns about Special concerns about skilled nursing facilities and assisted living. We had never, in my 35 years, I have never seen the need to mobilize that many very frail people out of harm's way. And commendation to all the first responders. They did an incredible job. And all the nursing home staff and the assisted living teams, they did not abandon their clients. And, you know, we are incredibly grateful for their dedication and support. But again, we were not prepared for the volume and the special needs that those clients brought when they were leaving their facilities, because in the past, they would go to a hospital or to another facility that had the skills and the resources. We didn't. And I want to commend O E M, because, you know, we were direct talking to them, going, we need this, we need that. And they were moving so fast to address our concerns from the team on the ground. We were incredibly lucky. One of my premier volunteers in the Long-Term Care Ombudsman is Dr. Laura Mosqueda, one of the foremost geriatricians in the United States. She actually went onsite at Pasadena for the first three to four days the clients were there, to help us understand their needs. And she was directly letting me know what she wanted, and so that we can make it happen. We can't assume that those opportunities are going to be present. We have to build them in into a plan. So we are working very hard to make sure that these lessons are not going to be lost. And that, I can tell you, because we have this department, our voice is very loud.
And I appreciate that, because I believe it was, may have been Chief Maroni that reminded us that the last big earthquake was 1993. And so we know that the big one is coming. And so I wouldn't want us to not take full advantage of these on-the-ground lessons.
And, you know, I was here in L A County responding to that. And I remember how incredibly challenging it was to older adults and how we changed how we did work as a result of that. And so now, this is an opportunity for us to learn even more and to make sure that we put those safety nets in place.
And to recognize that it's not just SNFs, but, you know, with the grain tsunami, as my former Assembly colleague used to say, Cheryl Brown, the number of seniors who are living independently in their own homes.
Yes. About 27% of older adults in L A County live alone.
Right.
Which is a concern to me when we have massive relocation of people. That's why one of the things that we did when the event began was we began calling
Right.
all of our clients in all of our programs, because we wanted to make sure that we knew that they were safe.
Right.
And we started to, you know, really track finding and making sure that we were locating them and we were providing support. Also connection, you know, a lot of our consumers are homebound.
Yes.
And we wanted to make sure that they felt that somebody out here was thinking of them and cared enough to reach out and make sure that they were not left alone.
I appreciate that. And Madam Chair, I'll just say in closing that we are talking a lot about, you know, our state partners and our state advocacy. And we also have to be clear about our federal advocacy, because I don't know how the state or we make up that 40% cut for a population that vulnerable. So for our federal advocacy as well, the Older Americans Act, we have to put that front and center.
Yep.
Because we have just been put on notice about what will happen to very vulnerable people right here in L A County if that funding goes away. I'm not going to ask the C E O to go find it, because I don't think she can find that big a pot. So we've got to go defend
Yes, ma'am.
the federal dollars. And that needs to be a part of our federal advocacy as well. So I hope that's communicated to Layer and our federal lobbyists, that that's got to be a priority. I can't see how it cannot be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very good. Good point. Next, we'll go to Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Trejo. And again, our condolences. We adjourned our meeting yesterday in the memory of your mother.
Thank you.
So we're all sending you lots of, lots of love right now.
I feel it. Thank you.
So this, I mean, I think this department is really key on so many levels, being the Department of Aging and Disabilities. Your department is integral in providing food for older adults. What do you think, based on your budget and your issues, your concerns, are, what are you doing to be more strategic, maybe, about addressing the needs in our older adult and disabled community for food insecurity? And what can we do to support you in that?
Yes. Well, I can tell you, food insecurity is a major concern of any of us who work with vulnerable populations. One of the things that we do actively is we're trying to figure out, how do we leverage our partners in the community? Los Angeles County has not only the providers that work with us under the Older Americans Act-funded programs, but there's also an array of community-based nonprofits that actively feed a vulnerable population. So one of the things that we started to do this year is we actually created a regional coordinating group where we're bringing county resources, private nonprofits, private resources, everybody to the table to say, how do we together develop a strategic plan for ensuring the food security of the more vulnerable populations in Los Angeles County? The other thing is also, how do we together go after other resources? For example, from philanthropy, from government grants at the federal level or others, where in the past, that has been very difficult to do when you don't have the organization already built. So we're building the infrastructure. That's part of the role of the department, to make sure that we can be prepared. But I can tell you, right now, for example, during the response to the fires, knowing all of these folks and that they're players in our space and that they're identified to us, made making those calls and asking for assistance a lot easier. And that is one of the lessons that we learned also from the COVID pandemic, was the lack of organization that existed literally backed us into saying, we cannot do that again. And so we've been actively working to bring all of those partners together. We're very excited that they are at the table. And as they're at the table, we're identifying all these other resources that other people know about, that perhaps we didn't know because we don't work in those spaces. So we are actively involved in that space and also making sure that we're part of all the county initiatives, so that we support that work actively as well.
Thank you for that. You know, I remember when this department was being formed. I know originally it was going to just be Department of Aging. And then strategically, I wasn't, I wasn't always sure how it was going to work out to include disabilities in this department. Because I definitely think that's a population in L A County that really is vulnerable, has a lot of unique issues and needs. They have their own commission. But it does sometimes feel like we focus a little bit more in your department on the senior citizens and the aging part of it as opposed to the disability part of it. And even kind of looking at your request, it seems to be leaning mainly for older adults. Tell me how you balance it. Is it 50/50 in terms of resources, staff? Is it not that? And where would, where do you think we can do better in terms of our disability community?
You know, that is the part that we're building out, because it, you know, it is a fair evaluation that we're, it looks like we're a little lopsided, because we are. That is the part that has been growing in terms of the federal grants, the Older Americans Act, all of that, is to fund aging. That's part of the area agency and aging, a formal entity federally designated. We don't have an equivalent in disabilities. That's emerging for us. And so we are actively grant-seeking for the Disabilities Branch. We are actively program-developing for them. We're developing a strategic plan in collaboration with our commission, because we do understand that the needs are varied, and many of them. We want to prioritize which ones, in Los Angeles County, are the ones that we need to be working towards to ensure that we're meeting the needs of those most populations that most need our support. And so that's part of the work that we're doing.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because, you know, again, we're talking a lot about the kind of impacts of this new administration. But clearly, one of the first executive orders was to remove anything in terms of federal hiring contracts, kind of striking the word, you know, disabled as being a group that would be worthy of, you know, diversity and inclusion. And even, the president went so far as to sort of blame that for that plane crash, you know, that somehow the disability community had something to do with that. So I again feel like every time we hear something from Washington, D.C., we need to really put our guardrails up even stronger. Part of what I was hoping from your department and your commission was that, and not even so much, I don't know how much funding it's going to take. Like, I'm hoping that your department and you and your Disabilities Commission can advise Los Angeles County about our policies. Because I don't think we're perfect in our policies as it relates to even the law, you know, ADA. Who knows how long that's going to stand, though? But I know Ray and Carlos even made a comment about some of our county parks in terms of access and, you know, being sensitive to those with disabilities. So I'm thinking there, I'd like to see you play a stronger role in advising us about policies as it relates to our disability community, which I don't think necessarily has to do with getting more money, getting more grants. But I think that's a key role that you can and should play for us, because, you know, it's a, it's a population that's easy to overlook, to not be sensitive to, to not understand. And your department is positioned, in my opinion, perfectly well, again, leaning on your commission to advise us on where we can do better as it relates to that, to that population. I was at Rancho Los Amigos recently, visiting a friend who was there, and I'm always so impressed by that hospital. It's a county hospital, right? It's world-renowned in terms of rehabilitation, particularly for those who have major brain trauma, right? Everybody there, you know, was navigating, you know, in some sort of mobility-challenged way with wheelchairs or whatever. And I think they're all going to be released, and they're going to have skills that they learn in that center. But again, they're going to come into everyday life. And we can't solve all those problems on private property. But goodness, we in L A County, I think, probably are not getting an A+. As it relates to being sensitive to the population. So hopefully, again, I don't think it necessarily is a budget line item, but I would like to see you and your department play a bigger role with us and bring forward, you know, policy ideas or board letters or motions that could make us a better county in that regard.
I appreciate that. And I want you to know that I'm also working with the other department heads. For example, I'm working with parks, because we're trying to develop accessibility guidelines for parks for persons with disabilities. So one of the things that I actively do is I work with the different department heads to make sure that all of us are aligned in understanding the opportunities for the populations that we serve. For example, we just did a, you know, a $10.5 million grant on technology, bridging the digital divide for persons with disabilities and older adults. We targeted specifically in-home supportive services staff in partnership with Dr. Contreras, because we wanted to make sure that those highly isolated, vulnerable clients that she serves were served upfront, so that they would have an opportunity to access these resources. So our department, that is one of the features that I want you to know that I am taking very seriously, which is the opportunity to engage with the county family and to make them aware, to lift up the unique needs of the populations that we serve. And also, how do we influence? One of the ways that I'm influencing a lot of places is through our commissioners. I'm getting them on other people's advisory groups, and I'm volunteering. I said, I have great, fabulous people that can inform the process. And so I'm also making sure that they're aware of the incredible stakeholders that we work with, so that they can make use of them. And so they've been participating in different groups, because I make sure of it. Like, for example, they're right now advocating on behalf of the accessibility guidelines with parks. And so we also try to extend our reach through the work of our commissioners as well, because they're subject matter experts.
I agree. I'm, I always think our army of commissioners out there are still some of the most untapped wisdom and perspective and energy and passion for the particular department that they are commissioned for. I would like to use our commissions more. I'd like to them to see them advise our departments more and thus advise us more. I think that's the ultimate goal of commissions, is right, is really ultimately you should get back to the Board of Supervisors in terms of policy decisions and issues. So I appreciate that. I'm always telling my staff, use our commissioners. They're there for a reason. And they're all, they all come to the table with some pretty amazing perspectives. Wanted to touch on L A Found. You talked, you talked about it briefly. Where are we with L A Found? I understand, Meral had told me that there's maybe a new pilot program with the trackable bracelets that maybe is moving into a GPS model?
You know, that's one of the wonderful things, is the technology continues to evolve. And what we're trying to do is also assess the landscape of technology. I can tell you, as an advocate for these client populations, I'm not only looking at high-tech, but I'm also looking at low-tech. There are things we could be doing that support communities that wander in different ways that don't always require a GPS tracking bracelet, because not every family feels comfortable accessing those resources. So one of the things that Victoria and I are doing is we're also evaluating what is happening in our space, not only in the U.S., but across the world. We are looking at partners all over the globe that also have aging populations, that also have cognitively impaired populations. And we're researching. A lot of them are not using high-tech, but they're using community activation models. So one of the things that I'm challenging our staff to think about is how do we expand the work of L A Found beyond just the bracelet program to more of a macro intervention on behalf of the clients that we serve? So just know that it is something we're actively involved in looking at in terms of not only the technology availability and different technologies that may be more effective, but also what are macro and lower-tech solutions, maybe higher-touch, that we could work with the community around so that we can improve the quality of life of residents in Los Angeles County overall? And so, and again, all of them don't have a budget line. It may be, how do we work? Like, for example, one of the things where Victoria and I were in the hallway talking about is Dementia Friends. Dementia Friends is a, is a model that we brought to California through L A Found. And now we're going to, you know, try to, you know, really take it through the entire county to bring it up and allow people to be more aware of how cognitive impairments affect the community.
I agree. I still think L A Found is a good model.
Absolutely.
And I still feel like we haven't done as good a job as we can of marketing it. And I still, when I bring it up in speeches that I make around my district, I can't tell you how many people come afterwards and like, I've never heard of that. How, where do I sign up? Because they have a loved one who is prone to wandering, or a child with autism who is also prone to wandering. So I still feel like, for some reason, it's not penetrating this service, whatever form it ends up in. I do think the marketing of it has been, you know, less robust than, than I think it could be.
And I'll evaluate that. Victoria's taking notes. But one of the things that's interesting to consider, many of our services are services of opportunity. People don't think about us, don't want to think about it until they have a situation or an, you know, something happens, and then it becomes something that you become aware. I've done a lot of outreach in communities, and people don't even know a Department of Aging exists. And you go, but it's A, it's at the top of the list. Did you miss me? Because they're not thinking about it. It is when something happens that people go, oh, I need that. And so we are also looking at locations where people have an intent to access our information, because we know we will provide the broad marketing approach. It rarely gets us to the clients that need us. It's more like when they're in a doctor's office and doing follow-up, when they are coming to a community center to ask for services and support. Those are the times when people are more open to hearing of a unique program that may meet the needs of their family.
I agree, but we certainly want to reach these people before something happens, because it's not a good outcome, as we have learned, when a caregiver turns their back for one second and their loved one wanders out. And we know the very first example of Nancy Polikas, who was found two years later, you know.
And we're renewing our partnership with autism and with Alzheimer's as well.
That model, that we just want to get people after something's happened, because I think every caregiver- every caregiver out there that is caring understands that pressure of never being able to turn their back, of never being able to take a nap, of never being able, or to be at a playground with a child and just worried that if they are visiting with a mom, you know, their child is going to wander. So I just don't, I don't like that model, that it's only after something happens, because we know the outcome of that can very often be tragic. So, thank you for the work you're doing though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you very much. A lot has already been asked, so I'll be brief. First, I understand the Home Safe program is ending in May 2025, and we anticipated that even before the change in administration. So what has your department been doing to ensure that at-risk older adults don't fall into homelessness?
You know, that's, that's part of the work that we're doing with our homeless initiative, with our partners in the community. We've been realigning our own senior and APS resources to support high-risk older adults, working with housers to try to prevent, I think one of you said this earlier, we want to keep people where they are when they're still housed. So I've been, you know, doubling down my efforts to reach out to folks in the senior housing environment, in the, that are working with people with accessibility housing, to make sure that, what is it that we need to be doing different with them as partners, with the network that we currently have? But understanding Supervisor, that is going to be a significant budget reduction. It's one of the few programs that actually targets the client populations that are at the highest risk, that are older adults and people with disabilities, that is Home Safe. And, you know, we're trying to advocate at the state level to see if there are any opportunities for funding. I would request the board to also ask, you know, our team up there in Sacramento to advocate with us. The loss of these funds would become very, very detrimental to the community. We are looking to see the opportunities within Measure A. If those are resources that could be made available to older adult programs, that would be very helpful because it could offset some of the potential negative impact of the loss of these funds.
Are we going to have Measure A funding in by May of this year?
We may not, we're trying to figure out how to make it go all the way to 2026 with rollovers and unspent funds. So right now, our plan is, yeah, while the program officially would not receive additional funds after 2025, the sunset of the program is 2026.
And how many, how many older adults are we supporting in this program currently who would lose that benefit?
You know, it's over, it's over 200 clients that we're currently seeing that are in supportive housing types of environments that we're providing wraparound services for right now.
Okay, so maybe there, to your point, if there's a program within HI or some dedicated stream of funding to prioritize those 200 older adults who, I think it's safe to say, would otherwise become unhoused if we don't find another solution for them, that's, that's somebody that, you know, is easier for, as we've been saying, easier for us to keep in housing than to let fall into homelessness. If we already know they're at risk, and we've seen this coming, I hope that we're prioritizing finding another way. I understand we must advocate for that funding to come back, but, but we also know what will happen if it doesn't.
Correct.
And then my other question relates as, to the recent fires, of course, which highlighted our need to better prepare and support older adults and those living with disabilities in the event of an emergency. And so with regard, for purposes of emergency preparedness, how is the county investing in a comprehensive continuum of services in multiple languages with cultural competency to support our older adults and those living with disabilities for emergency situations?
Our programs are designed to do that in terms of older adult programs themselves. They are in the language of the client, they are addressing issues of accessibility, multilingual, all of that is already put in place. I think one of the things that we're looking at is how do we prepare the organizations to be prepared to respond? Because I think that that's one of the things that we're finding out, is that while folks understand to respond to an emergency, how do we prepare them so that they can be activated very quickly? We actually did a lot of the front-loading work during this emergency to ensure that our providers would have a moment to kind of figure out how they were going to respond because, again, they're smaller nonprofits, so it's a little bit hard. So one of the things we're thinking about, how do we work with them to develop a more strategic respond capability so that we don't have to kind of reinvent it every time something occurs? We could be ready by, by making a request for people to be shifted, you know, one of the things I'm evaluating right now is our contracts, our contract language, we're doing contract amendments as we speak because they don't anticipate that somebody may serve somebody in a different zip code or region. So, you know, we were able to negotiate that right now so that we could do it, but I want to embed it into future contracts so that we have boilerplate already going in, so we don't have to do all this, you know, work in the back to try to make sure that we are able to reimburse them. Because again, a small nonprofit is going to be very worried about the ability for them to be reimbursed. And so we knew we had the funding to pay them, but we didn't have was the authority embedded in their contracts at the time. We had to work with county council and others to help us make sure that we were doing things correctly. But I think that we could do it in advance, as a lesson learned, that we should have language that says in case of emergencies, you know, I had done that in previous agencies that I worked, so that you learn from an event, and so you embed it in the language. So right now, we're going to be evaluating our contracts, boilerplate with county council to make sure that we can embed some language that gives us authority to trigger that provider to provide services in the community, even if it's slightly outside of their geographic area so that they're not punished or penalized in any way.
Yeah, I heard a lot about some of our outside community-based organizations, and that's good, but I also think the existence of your department should be informing our other departments, sort of like we have seen with our Veterans Department. The existence of that department has allowed those who identify as veterans to better access some of our other departments because of that lens. And so I think it's also my hope that your department is helping older adults, those living with disabilities, to better understand and be able to access benefits and services that are available to them and to work with our respective departments and their own cultural competency. Because a lot of what you described might be how the community responds, but we also as a county have to respond differently for different populations that we serve. And so our Office of Emergency Management or some of our other services might need that engagement from your department to make sure that we're meeting that moment. So I would offer that that's, that should also be part of your charge.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Mitchell, do you have a follow-up?
I do, Madam Chair, thank you. And it really isn't for the director, it's for us and the CEO, that we've talked a lot the last couple of days, and through the fire emergencies about our advocacy at the various levels. And I know we've got our trips planned, and I also know that we were most successful in the last couple of years when we have gone to Sacramento with a prioritized list, and that we were all singing from the same hymnal, as my grandmother would say, about what we need. And so I just want to make sure that there, we keep, we're talking about it kind of varying different times and meetings that, and I know that our lead staff meet regularly with Laird, so I just want to make sure that there's a time for us all to make sure that we are clear about what the prioritized budgets are, budget ask is. I'm not in this extraordinary budget session, but in the upcoming budget session, to really reflect what we've talked about here. And so I don't know if that's happening at, I'm getting looks like, I don't know what those looks mean, like, those are happening, I wasn't there, or yes, Holly, you're right, I can't interpret the looks. Okay, thank you. So if we could figure out a time, I don't know how to best do that, but I, what I do know is, we are most successful as a county when we all are asking for the same finite thing to give our colleagues as little wiggle room as possible in terms of what they deliver for the county. Oh, I delivered on this list, but not this list. If there's one list, it's an issue of accountability.
Thank you Supervisor. So my office, and I personally have presented to the LA County delegation, and it was to, it was actually on the, like, the immediate aftermath, once we got some control of the fires, as to what the priorities were for immediate relief and recovery for victims of the fires. I think in addition to that, for the Sacramento trip, the Legislative Affairs Office will continue to work with budget. We compile a list, we work with your offices, we cull it down, we try to prioritize it to make sure, and then we provide it to all of the office to make sure that when we do go to Sacramento, we do have uniform fact sheets, talking points, and a list of priorities. So we'll continue to do that.
And so I just want to make sure the things that we are hearing about, particularly in this new process, that they are captured, you know, in a parking lot someplace, and so that they can be a part of the overall conversation.
So my team, both here in the boardroom, and we have folks listening to the call, they are taking down like the questions and the responses and areas of interest and concern.
Thank you, let me be clear, I was not talking about in terms of the emergency, I get that, we had to move fast, and, but it's for the budget itself and the things that we're hearing today and in other budget presentations that we need to have the agreement on. So thank you for that clarification, appreciate it.
Thank you, I will, you know, thank you again for coming and presenting your budget, and want to thank you for working with my office over the last, I think, I want to say almost two years, to get the Avocado Heights programming up and going with our seniors. I can't tell you how impactful that has turned out, and the fact that there's presence there, and even at our other parks, I think Bassett Park's another one. But people are hearing word of mouth that now there's, there's actual substance, and that means the difference between just having someone who drops in in a park or a community center, it means programming and all of that, and that takes money. And I had to put in some of my own discretionary chime saying ouch, but it's important for my, for my constituents, but I do think overall, there should be a plan, a strategic plan, that helps us fulfill those expectations, because it does us no good to have a title of a department and there's nothing there. And I don't mean it in a negative manner, I just mean that there's, the expectation is so high right now, and I would hope that that's something that you'll look at and really come back with some concrete things. And I, and I also want to say something that Supervisor Hunt said, is that you could help also facilitate instruction with our other departments. So I know you're doing that with, you're going to start to do that with Parks and Recs. A lot more conversation with them, and even with our Office of Immigrant Affairs. And I say that because we have a lot of seniors right now who are terrified as to what's happening, and the fact that they don't even want to continue to enroll in any kind of county services, and just the outreach by seniors in your, in your unit, folks that you work with, to give them that sense of, hey, here's, here's a handoff, here's where you can go, this is what the information is, in their language is going to be very critical moving forward, and even with the recovery of the fires. Because there were a lot of seniors that I saw just recently in my area that were impacted on a, on a secondary basis, but nonetheless, we did a couple of food giveaways, and over 2,000 people came, I want to say 4,000 people were fed, and I have to say at least 40% were seniors. So even though we may not be hearing it here, it is happening in our districts and our neighborhoods and our towns, and I would hope that you could also work closely with the LA Regional Food Bank, because when they have an event, a good portion are, you know, clients that we're serving through DPS, but seniors as well that aren't aware, and perhaps even a flyer from your office. I know we did that during COVID, but we need to reinvigorate that again. Any thoughts on that?
Appreciate it. We have a very robust partnership with the LA Food Bank, and very grateful for their partnership because we have food pantries at our community and senior centers where we distribute, you know, thousands of pounds of food.
Yes, I know, yes, yes.
We also, one of the things that we've done, we've also embedded food distribution with some of our community health promotion programs. One of the things that we thought was if you're coming to a class and we're telling you about good nutrition, let's help you access food resources. And we actually worked with the food bank because we started to have older people refuse the food distribution, we didn't understand what it was, so we went in and said, okay, why are they saying no? You know what it was? It was too heavy to carry it.
Right, yeah.
And so we went back to the food bank and I said, you know, I'm very frustrated that our seniors are walking away, and they said, we'll just design different packaging, Laura, we'll do it in two batches, you know, five, 10-pound boxes. It took away the problem. So we're very active partners with them, I've spoken at their events, they invite me as somebody that I work with, with them actively, to make sure that our providers are all partners of theirs, signing agreements and all of that, because we want to make sure that we're providing as many food resources in our community as possible and educating our clients. I also wanted to address the issue of our immigrant older adults and the concerns that we have. We are monitoring the effect on our clients very closely. We are working with our partners, most of our agencies are trusted sources for our communities, and we are working with them to ensure that they're keeping us informed about the impact on accessibility of services. Are they seeing shifts in people not coming? Are they seeing comments from consumers who are saying, I'm afraid? And we're being very intentional and thoughtful about that. So I want you to know that it is on our radar, very loud, and we're also trying to educate our partners about if they're working with older adults with persons with disabilities, to please be aware that populations that are vulnerable tend to begin to become more homebound and more isolated as people want to protect them. And that's also a concern that we have because we want to make sure people are accessing the services that they need. But we are very much, I've been talking to our colleagues at the state level, because I want to make sure that we are doing whatever we have to do to reach out to them, to make them aware that we're safe, that, you know, we don't ask for any documentation for an older adult to have a meal. And so we are sort of redoubling those efforts right now.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, I'm sorry I had to step out, but I have one question and one comment. The question, and it was asked already, I apologize, one of the lessons learned from the Woolsey Fire was we were supposed to have a registry stood up that would allow seniors to register, and it obviously fell through the cracks, and now we are asking again, are you involved with that? And if so, what is the timeline to get that done?
I believe that we're working in terms of trying to evaluate, because not everybody believes that a registry is the right solution. So we're trying to also be very intentional with the different groups and listening.
So when, when will you have something back to this board?
I believe that we're waiting for the motion to be heard. I believe we're in that process right now.
We did it, that's why I'm asking, and Fesia was going to work with you. So I'm asking you, I'm asking you to work with Fesia.
Will do.
We asked, when we talked about
For the special needs registry.
The fact that in the Woolsey Fire, there was a recommendation to create a registry for, and then you said, I asked you if you would have, work with the departments to look at it.
Yes, we, actually, we have, I believe that we've already had a meeting regarding mapping and pulling together the databases. Let me, let me
Okay, you two work together, but I would ask that we get something because the fact that it was recommended in the Woolsey and nothing was done, and now we've had this fire, and
Yes.
I just want to make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks, so I'm going to be focused on that.
Okay, and then just one clarification. The conversation that we had about the mapping, it was a few weeks ago when the fire chief was presenting, okay, yes.
Correct. And then my next question is, you know, we obviously lost a community senior center in Altadena.
Yes.
And we're going to be rebuilding it. And one of the concerns I've had from the community and the feedback I've got is that there were rules or regulations or interpretations that you had that actually allowed, that no longer allowed certain community groups to use the senior center.
I don't believe so, ma'am, I think that all of those were resolved.
Well, they were, because we're going to transfer it to another department in order to work around that. So I would ask you to work with us
Absolutely.
Because there are community groups who lost a community center, senior center, who are concerned now that it's not going to get rebuilt, and if it is rebuilt
Oh, no, no, no.
They're not going to be able, I know, I'm just putting it on the record
Thank you.
Because the, the sense in the community is that we're not going to rebuild it because we were pushing them out. There were sororities and, or sororities up there that have been long established that have used it since before I was elected, that we're told they could no longer use it.
And Supervisor, just so you know, my staff has been actively working with the different groups to try to find them alternative space for the short term so that they can have places to meet. They are actively involved doing that.
Yeah.
So we continue to work with Ms. Bankin, she's been identifying any needs of the community as making your office aware of so that we can follow up immediately.
That's good, I just want to make sure I put that on the record, but we are going to rebuild it, and that's more for the community to hear
Yes.
Because they do not, they have a concern about that, the rebuild effort, because that is like a staple in the community.
Yes, we're there with you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We are now going to hear from the Director of Animal Care and Control, Marcia Maeda. Director of Animal Care and Control and staff will make a presentation.
Thank you, Supervisors. Marcia Maeda, Director of Animal Care and Control. I'm here to present our 2526 budget. With me is Whitney Dong, our Administrative Deputy. The department's mission and main duties are presented on the left panel of our budget document. I will point out that our total appropriation is $66.3 million with a net county cost of $48.3 million. We have three budget priorities. The first is $4 million in gross appropriation for unavoidable higher operating costs. The rising operational costs are a significant challenge to our department. Since fiscal year 2019 to '20, our services and supplies expenses have increased by 38%. We now have a $4 million funding gap between our budget allocations and the actual S&amp;S expenses for the department. The reason for this is inflation has driven up the cost for animal food, vaccines, medical supplies, and essential services like laboratory testing and cleaning of the kennels. Additionally, higher interdepartmental services charges for urgent repairs, facility maintenance, and other county-provided services are stretching our budget. We make up the gap by not filling positions and deferring critical maintenance for our facilities, but this isn't sustainable. Our second priority is we are requesting $291,000 in gross appropriations for a rodent abatement program. Rodent control is a health and safety priority. Infestations pose a risk to staff and the public, violate OSHA standards, and cause facility damage. The required $291,000 will allow us to continue the abatement efforts to prevent rodent infestations in our animal care centers. Our third priority request is $600,000 in gross appropriations for IT projects. The majority of this is about $300,000 for our two-way radio modernization system for our radios for especially emergency responses. Our radios are very old and don't get the reception that we need in all these various areas that we serve. These investments are essential to providing efficiency, emergency communications, and service delivery. I have the next slide. Thank you. These provide further detail of our requests. I do want to point out our emergency response requirements and our efforts. During the Eaton, Hughes, and Palisades fires, DAC sheltered 473 animals, including 315 horses and livestock, which require specialized and costly care. While we submit reimbursement claims through the Office of Emergency Management, the process is slow and any approved funds return to the general fund, leaving us to cover emergency costs upfront until we're reimbursed at a later time. We've incurred about $150,000 in overtime costs and $50,000 in supplies cost in response to the Bridge, Franklin, and January fires, highlighting the critical need for readily available emergency funding. And we will be asking for that in the final That concludes our main asks, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair. In looking at your first chart, I'd see that you're requesting $4 million in services and supplies to meet higher operating costs. I absolutely get that. My question is, what share of these costs would directly serve unincorporated areas of the county versus contract cities?
About 62% of our services and supply costs are attributed to the contract cities, while the unincorporated areas account for the meaning 38%. This is a general estimate and does not include additional expenses such as facility repairs, external department charges from departments like ISD, County Council, DHR, or other miscellaneous costs. Currently, the contract cities contribute about 75% of the department's total revenue.
Hmm. Okay, so that gives me the, the costs. Say the last piece one more time. What percentage of the, the department's revenue comes from contract cities?
Right now, about 75%.
75%. Okay, that was going to be my next question. Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you very much. I'll follow up first on that, on that question. If we're getting more money in through the contracts, maybe there's, maybe there is some opportunity. I know, I think in this case it goes to the general fund first, but maybe given some of the requests and, and the costs that we're recouping, maybe there's a way that we can help with some of their budget requests from the money that they're getting in through the contracting. But my question is related to what I saw during the recent fires and the way that you all responded. I know that you showed up for extraordinary animals in my district, and you showed up in extraordinary ways. So I know that mean, has budget implications, you know, working overtime and, and how you're working in a different way at a time of emergency. So how, how is that impacting your budget currently? And, and then I have a follow-up for our CEO on that.
The overtime, well, we've requested about, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. The overtime cost so far has been $527,000. But we're expecting and projecting by the end of the year to be at 1.8 million.
For the fires alone?
For overtime.
I see. Given that there are some costs that are reimbursable under FEMA, I know this is a service that we provide, is this something that the overtime piece, I know we are tracking these costs, is this, is that piece something that we can build back?
Supervisor, we could definitely look at that. What I would say is, we annually work with the departments. We get an estimate of their overtime budget. Most of the time, they come within budget. Sometimes they don't. And then you have issues like this, like an emergency. In the emergency, in real time, no department, it would, it would not be prudent for a department to say, I'm not sure if I can remove like the large animals because I don't have an overtime budget.
That's right.
What happens is, is on the back end during the budget process, we will true up where the budget will land. So we're not going to allow the department to close in a deficit. They might have lower expenditures in other areas of their budget that could compensate for the higher expenditures in the overtime budget. So what we're doing is we're trying to track all of it. I understand, what I believe the request is here is to have a certain amount pre-identified. That's certainly something we can look at. And the challenge with doing that could be that in the next disaster, even that amount wouldn't be enough. There would be another request saying, can we look at, you know, so we can work with them, with the department, and see what is the best way to approach it. What we wouldn't do is necessarily, especially since they're a small department with a small budget, is, you know, direct them to wait till we get FEMA funding reimbursement because we know that that takes a lot of, a lot of time. So we could work with them.
That's great. I, I just, I know, setting aside a specific pot of money when you don't know what disaster they're going to respond, be responding to, might not be the, might not be the way. But as long as we're thinking about how we make sure that service continues to be provided, I know how essential it was to families in my district with this kind of emergency. And hopefully, given that we're getting additional support, this is something that we can be able to cover in another way. And we can add that to our list of priorities. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Solis.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcia, for presenting your budget. And thank you for assisting us at the Fairplex during the fire. Your staff was there, and I believe we were able to have the stables made available there. And there were several horses that came from the impacted area as well as other animals, but I'm pretty sure was mostly equestrian. And I was happy to see you on the ground with us out there that day. And for whatever reason, we didn't get to have to utilize the entire Fairplex because we were ready to take in people. But we had a few there. But to be able to have the housing for the animals, I think, was very good. I don't think we got enough credit, but I want to say that for the public. So thank you for that. Marcia, something that has, has been on my mind is, you know, when things come up, outbreaks, for example, I understand at the Baldwin Park Shelter this, this couple of weeks ago, there was an outbreak of the strep zoo. And my staff tells me that the cost of medication is very, is very high. About $500 for, I guess, a vial. And that only extends to three large dogs and maybe five small dogs. So how does your department deal with this, you know, this unexpected crisis? How are you able to pay for it? And what are, what are your plans moving forward should this come up again?
Thank you, Supervisor. Strep zoo is a problem that is seen in animal shelters everywhere. It's not uncommon bacteria. How we manage it is with routine disease surveillance by our veterinarians and registered veterinary technicians to keep an eye on all the animals. If we suspect an exposure or illness, we can do swab testing and send it off to see if it's positive for that. The by-far best treatment and most suitable and efficient treatment is the convenia drug that you mentioned, which is quite expensive. But it can really reduce any chances of it getting into a gross pandemic for the animals in the animal care centers. So we watch it very closely. It is expensive. We are limited on the amount we can purchase at any given time. And our Animal Care Foundation has stepped in several times to buy medications for the animals so they can get the treatment they need.
Is there a way to possibly, I guess, up the ante there and maybe get the foundation to do some more work and publicize what, what this is? Because I don't think the public is fully aware of what this virus does. And obviously, some people don't even know that their pets have it. And some, I know animals will come to us with this infection. They'll infect other animals, and then we have to bear the cost. And your, your budget's limited. So
Right.
I'm just hoping you can come up with other, maybe ideas to get some of the other, you know, outside groups that are, are supportive of the work you're doing. Because I know many have stepped up.
Yes.
But in a way that can be more helpful to you, especially because the medication is so costly. You know, that's something I think is really important. And the other thing is, in terms of trying to push along adoptions, how are we doing with that? Because I really am concerned that we have an abundance of pets, and now we may see more coming in from, you know, the fires. Obviously, we're hearing about that. But how can we really elevate that also by possibly doing more, I don't know, PSAs on our own channel or making sure, I mean, I know our, our board members do a good job. The chairwoman has been doing that for a long time. But just to get more people to really understand that it can really make a difference, not only in the, the pets' life, but also in our families, if they're, if they adopt. So what are your thoughts on that?
Well, that's one of our top priorities, of course, is getting the animals out into good homes. We do leverage a lot with social media and just continue to do that. Our volunteers, we have some wonderful volunteers that do this as well to get the word out. And many board offices advertise and promote the animal adoptions. I will say, during the fires, we were just overwhelmed with support for adoptions because people wanted to make sure there would be room at the animal care centers for displaced animals. And our adoptions just went through the roof, mostly to rescue groups and other animal control or animal sheltering agencies throughout the state and some other states. We put about 45 animals on a plane to Oregon, you know, at one time. So I think continuing with that, I think the fires raised a lot of awareness about this importance. So we'll continue to leverage those relationships.
Right. And just the last question, volunteers. I know sometimes I will get calls into my office about people who want to go in and volunteer, go walk a dog, or go, you know, help out at the animal shelter. How are we handling that? Are we able to really meet, meet that, I want to say, interest? Because it's, I mean, obviously, it's, it's helpful. But if we don't have enough staff to help kind of coordinate that, then that puts us in a, in a
Right.
bad position.
That is one of our challenges. We do have a volunteer coordinator at every animal care center except Agora. And they're critical to be able to recruit and train and assign and then manage the volunteers. And they're pretty much at their workload capacity for bringing in, I mean, we continually do bring in new volunteers, but we can only bring in so many at a time because there's just one person to do the, you know, review the applications and train them and so forth. So volunteers are critical to what we're doing, of course, because it doesn't cost us their time. And, and they're so important. And they played an incredible role in the fires, caring for the animals and, and many other related duties. So we'll, we'll continue to do that with, you know, I, I think what we're also looking at is training up additional volunteers at each care center to assist the volunteer coordinator. So in more of an administrative role. But they have to want to do that if they come because they really want to interact with the animals.
Yeah, they're not going to
We want them to be able to do what they want to do.
Yeah.
But, you know, people are interested in different areas.
Right. Have we thought about maybe utilizing our workforce development program in any way to help staff folks for you?
We looked at that and, and we talked with DEO, and they were very supportive of our, our mission. I don't believe they work on volunteer placements, though.
But not volunteer, I'm saying youth at work. So they would, they would be, be able to work for you or your
Yes.
You know, for 20 hours or 30 hours. And then eventually, some of them get hired up.
Yes. And we are
Are you utilizing that program?
I'm sorry?
Are you utilizing that program?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I'd like to know what, what, what your results have been, how, how well that's been utilized.
Okay.
Something of interest. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hahn.
I, I, I'm sorry. I think that is a response back coming to the board already. So you should have that soon.
Jan.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Marcia, for your presentation and the work you do. So apparently, is it, is it more of a problem as some of these other infectious diseases, rodents? Have you seen an increase in that? Is that a huge part of what you're dealing with in our shelters?
An increase in rodents?
Yeah.
Actually, we have a very successful program. It uses birth control for rodents, and it's very effective. There's no poison or anything like that used. They just eat the bait and they don't reproduce. And the lifespan of rodents is only a few years. And it's been incredibly successful at Baldwin Park. I think it reduced the population by about 80%. And we, we've been introducing it at some other care centers. We just need additional funding to keep that going.
Okay. Well, that, that's, that's good. That's, that's a good rodent management system. In, in terms of Downey Shelter, Care Center, I know some of the, the volunteers, the staff, the advocates, they've reached out to my office sometimes in terms of what they're, they've been asking for or needing. Can you discuss some of the things that they're, they're hoping for or advocating for?
The volunteers?
The volunteers, the staff, the advocates,
Sure.
particularly for that care center in Downey.
Sure. The volunteers are most focused on the adoptions. So adoption support, foster supplies for the babies, and funding for behavior enrichment and tools to help with the animals, reduce their stress, and get to know them better. And so for better placements with new families. We do have four requests that are pending, but we do not have yet approval. One is about one and a half million to repairs for kennel building number two at, at Downey. $47,000 to repair a gate, $6,000 to repair some fencing, and $473,000 for protective cover over the outside kennel runs for buildings one and two.
And what, what are your plans to address some of their asks?
We've put in requests, and I think we're waiting for final budget deliberations and see how much money might be available down the road.
And was there something about some of the cages being reconfigured?
I'm sorry, I don't hear very well. So I'm reading the
Oh, I was wondering why you were
Is there something about
Looking past me.
Sorry? The Downey Kennels?
Downey.
So we did, we, we, it was done in two phases. We completed the first one initially. Unfortunately, they We completed the first one initially, unfortunately, they.
And what, and what exactly are they? Are they reconfigured kennels or?
From what I understand, they just had to rebuild them.
Oh, yeah, you need to.
You speak in the mic, please? And introduce yourself.
From my understanding, they just had to. My name is David Korsak with the CEO.
Hi, David.
From my understanding, they just redid, a lot of the kennels needed repairs, like the crates, the crates themselves were actually hazardous. And so, they just kind of rebuilt all the crates in the, but there's two sections. And so, they did the first one and then they came out with a new estimate because that was approved about two years ago. And so, the cost has since about doubled. And so, right now, it's pending with capital projects.
I see. Okay, thank you. And on the bigger issue of, because I know they, they, they come to my office because Downey's in my district. But regularly, how do volunteers, advocates, and staff communicate with you?
How do volunteers and staff communicate? There's several ways. They have their volunteer coordinator there to ask questions. They can talk to the staff there. There's also newsletters that go out to our volunteers from our volunteer director and just updates and information that way.
I think I'm more interested in how they communicate with you, not so much how you communicate with them. How, how are they getting their requests, their asks, their concerns, their advocacy to you as the director of the department?
They usually follow kind of their chain of command to go to their volunteer coordinator who runs it up. They verify that that's a need, that what might be necessary. It might be something that the department can just take care of. So, it, it doesn't need to come to me. But otherwise, they could be brought up to, to me, usually by the manager of that care center or the director of volunteers.
I mean, I'd like to, I mean, I think all department heads should, should have one-on-one with their, with their staff, with their volunteers, with their advocates. I think that goes a long way because, particularly for the volunteers who are priceless. And I, I think it would, would be valuable for them to have interaction with you and to get their, their requests directly to you. So, I, I would encourage you to have a, a formal listening opportunity with, with that group who are very, who love, you know, our care centers, who love the animals and really are passionate about the department.
Right.
But I know the fact that, I guess, they're coming to me makes me wonder if they're not getting to you.
Okay. I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I, I want to echo the comments that Supervisor Horevath made about thanking you. You know, I think one of the most difficult, like, chapters of the fire for me was hearing from people who couldn't get their pets out. And then we find out that in fact, Good Samaritans did take care of them. And I know you contacted the Pasadena Humane Society, who took in a lot of pets. And, and then there were animals that were left behind that are now getting fed through the Pasadena Humane Society. And I'm sure it's happening in the Palisades as well because you all are the only ones that are allowed through the, you were allowed through the barriers in order to feed the, the animals. So, I just want to thank you and your staff. And to that point, how are we doing with, Supervisor Solis brought up the cost of medicine. How are we doing on the veterinarian side?
As far as hiring?
Yeah, just as far as being able to hire and have veterinarians on, available.
Well, we've worked closely with CEO Class Comp and Department of Human Resources to accelerate the hiring and to do more outreach and marketing of the positions. We have had some good response to that. We still have a number of vacancies, though, because we aren't as always competitive with the general labor market for veterinarians and there's still a shortage. But I think we've made a lot of progress since before we started this partnership.
So, because I was talking to my vet and one of the questions came up, there are some that would volunteer to provide their services for free. I mean, because they're in it, they're the passion of animals. So, I would ask that maybe we think outside of the box as well. And because there are veterinarians that may be able to give their time on like a Sunday to come and do a wellness check or some, I mean, something. Because I know that there are a shortage of vets out there and, and that we are competing with many entities that relates to that. But I just think that, you know, when you hear how expensive the medication is and prevention is probably, I don't know if you can prevent kennel cough, but can you prevent kennel cough? It's hard.
It's really difficult. We vaccinate against it when they come in, but vaccines don't take an immediate effect. So, they, they get exposed, but it will reduce the severity of the illness for them.
Okay. Well, appreciate it. And, and I know that I adopted from the Downey Shelter. And your staff, and so, so did you. Your staff there is incredible. And I love my dog. So, thank you. Seeing no other questions? That's it? Thank you. Now, we are going to hear from the Chief Medical Examiner, Dr. Upko. Chief Medical Examiner and staff will make a presentation. Dr. Upko? And while you're sitting down, I'm going to embarrass you again. I have to thank you and I, I so appreciate how responsive you are when we have inquiries. And when there's a high profile, you are always on top of it and use discretion in a way that, that really reinforces and I, I think is refreshing. So, thank you for, and your staff for doing such an amazing job. So, ask for a blank check, I guess, what I'm saying. Go ahead.
Thank you for those comments. It's truly a privilege to be given this opportunity to serve in this capacity. So, thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I am here to present the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 budget requests for the Department of Medical Examiner. Before you, in the left column is our mission statement and our various duties. In the body of this document, you can see that we have six priorities. And I won't go over each one, but rather summarize essentially that the majority of these priorities are to address accreditation issues that we have. Also acknowledging that my staff were growing and they need the support for their success. And so, administrative services has been elevated in this budget request and represented here. The request is for $16 million increase to net county cost. And we are asking for 16 positions there. The next slide is the, our unmet needs. And this is specifically to address disparity in hospital turnaround time cases. I anticipate that this mirrored request and the critical need will be addressed. But I, it's uncertain if we'll need more positions. So, we want to titrate that need rather than overask. And so, that's why we have placed it here in unmet needs. Number two is forensic laboratories to sustain the toxicology turnaround times that we have successfully completed. I want to preserve that and support the staff to keep that up. And so, that's represented here in number two. These are the budget requests pressures, challenges. National Association of Medical Examiners, hereafter referred to as NAME, is the medical legal accrediting body for medical legal death investigations for the country. We lost our full accreditation in 2016 and we have since been in provisional accreditation. It's our intent to get back to our full accreditation. We had in 2022, six severe deficiencies. Today, we have only two remaining. The two are going to be addressed by the budget ask that we see here. And it is my intent to regain our accreditation with our first onsite inspection that is coming in August, the first one in five years. So, this one's going to have a little bit of a different flavor to it. Our building infrastructure is aging, is in disrepair, requires seismic retrofitting, which is very costly. Our electrical infrastructure is limited to allow us to expand our technology in various areas. The work that we do has to be done on the department. We can't do it offsite, so it requires people to be at our facility. So, we have a limited workspace as we continue to expand. And we also have challenges with our current CRIP capacity. We have outgrown our capacity to do the work and also to store decedents in a dignified and safe way. This is also endangers our ability to potentially get our full accreditation back. So, it's our intention to address this as well. And also, safety for my staff and again, the dignity of the decedents that are with us. Historically, we've had a structural deficit in services and supplies and capital assets that have been covered by essentially vacancies through salaries and savings. So, we need to have approximately 15 to 20 vacancies in order to do our operational work each year. For hiring challenges, we have a current vacancy rate of 14%. And most notably with physicians. Physicians, previously, it was about 40 to 50 physicians per year in the country are graduating, to give you an idea. However, that new number is now between 20 to 30. So, any sort of expectations to get a large number of physicians to close that gap is not realistic. So, we have to look at more innovative approaches to this issue and leveraging pathologist assistance to help us to do that work. And that's definitely possible. And that's part of this ask as well. And I think that we can be innovators, leaders in the country to show how that's, that's done, especially in a large office. Lastly, I just wanted to briefly talk about the fires. The fires impacted us in our need for overtime, essentially. But also, there was impact to our public information office. We only have one individual, so it's not much of a, an office. So, this person had to work 24/7. And I got to see that. And I think that person, we need support. I think the county, the community needs that support as well. And so, that's why we are also mindful of, of that. And then lastly, I'm intent on also monitoring our response time for phone calls to our department as we collaborate with other offices during such emergencies. Intentionally, I want to explore to see that we're doing well there. If not, that will be subject to another future budget ask. Madam Chair, I will yield the remainder of my time for any questions.
Thank you Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I actually think that you already responded, I, I think, to my, the question I was going to ask, which was focusing on the positions that you're requesting. It's clear to me based on their classification that it's about meeting accreditation. And so, if you don't get those positions, as I've heard you share, it would negatively impact your ability to close the loop on those two outstanding demerits, whatever the term, appropriate term would be, and then impact your ability to get full accreditation again. Am I understanding you correctly?
That's correct. There's two parts to it. The phase two deficiency regarding examining bodies within 72 hours would be addressed by the additional investigators. They do take some time to hire and also train and get them going. And I, my intent is that we had previous gains in positions that we can make significant progress for the August inspection. However, I, I believe that with additional positions, it looks a lot more bright. But it's still possible that we'd be able to address that. The second part is our autopsy or examination report turnaround time. That issue is tied to the physician shortage that we're seeing. And so, that's why we're trying to be proactive and looking at different ways and leveraging those pathologist assistance to help with the workload.
With regard to the physician shortage, are there internships or externships that you offer? Because I'm thinking about the, the new medical school in the second district, Charles Drew University of Medicine and Science, and, and if they need to be aware of this employment opportunity right here in their home county.
Yeah, absolutely. We are intent on being mentors and providing opportunities for folks that haven't had exposure to us in the past. So, myself and others have gone to schools, you know, to try to get them interested early on because we find that people come later when they've already decided what kind of doctor they want to be. And then they just discover us. So, we want to get them sooner. I was privileged to speak to Charles Drew University. That was a great experience. That was their first lecture in forensic pathology in medical school. So, trying to open up that, that's like investing for the future. It's going to take some time for that, that to, to grow. But we certainly do have those opportunities. We also want to screen out good folks who have good intentions. Because there's a lot of things that go on with the work that we do that people just want to kind of be there and see. And we want to make sure that their dignity is preserved and that true inspiration is happening to, leading to future people.
Agreed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Upko, for being here and doing such a great job. You came in, in a very challenging time a couple of years back. And even before then, we were trying to meet our certification and all of that and trying to attract good talent. And it's been hard. And it's, it's like, seems like a drop in the bucket sometimes in terms of if we can come up with someone. And if we do, we're lucky because you're competing nationally and probably internationally. But I want to thank you for working so hard on a motion that was approved to waive the medical examiner's transportation. And I want to thank the CEO for helping us to continue to find funding for that. So critical for our families, it found it a hardship to be able to transport their loved one to your offices. And that's something that is very real. So, I thank you for that. Hopefully, we'll continue to work on that effort. But I did want to ask you, I know at one point in time, this was after and during COVID, there was, there was an issue regarding the department's status with respect to storage availability in the CRIP. Is that still something that needs to be addressed?
Yes, we still face those challenges. We do have a pending capital project to expand the CRIP for some temporary expansion because I'm concerned about the safety of my staff because of the storage containers, they are, they don't have any shelving or anything like that. And, and the dignity of the decedents has always been a concern of mine. So, we pushing forward with that project. And that's, so that's a pending project. And then, in the meantime.
When do you know you'll hear, hear back? Or is that a CEO question? FISA? When do we hear, when do we hope to hear back on that capital project on the CRIP?
Yeah. Supervisor, let me get back to you on that. I don't know, I know you have a conversations with John Cook.
Yes, so we have, there was expectation that construction was supposed to happen last year sometime. It's been delayed, but we need to check in to see where, where it's at.
Yeah, I remember this being a, a big concern of, of the counties. So, just trying to think in the future there so that we don't get in crosshairs. The other thing too is, can you elaborate on, on any issue regarding future operations of your office there? I mean, what are you looking at? I know we've talked before about expansion. The space is so limited there that you're in and it's so old, right? It's over 100 years old. But any, any talk about improving overall operations and services there through a major overhaul?
Yeah, so we are, my staff continue with their sort of courageous innovation to address, you know, old problems. You know, we can't solve old problems with the same thinking. And so, we continue to work on it. And in fact, we are implementing a change right now with hospital cases and how we get to them. Because there was a concern that caused significant delay, but actually may not be an issue that's actually happening or a small minority and therefore driving the large number of the cases. So, we want to do as many of those things. We continue to do those things. And we want to be probably one of the first departments to lose its full accreditation and get it back without a new facility. But those are the challenges that we're up against. But I think that the progress that we've been making, I do believe that we, we can get there. Now, the future operations, I want us to be in a position where we're not at the cusp. We're actually exceeding the expectations. And so, any sort of surge, we can comfortably take over. So, that's my vision for the operations overall for the department, which may be, you know, I don't know, five, 10 years from now, sort of vision.
Right. Any comment from CEO on that?
Supervisor, I would just point out that your board has approved, you know, we have been very mindful.
been very mindful of the name findings. There were initially five deficiencies, and at one point, the department got them reduced, and then they went back up. Your board has approved $8 million in ongoing NCC in 27 positions since '21, '22 to help the department build back its staffing in order to address the name recommendations. And I believe that is in large measure why they're down to two deficiencies now instead of the original five.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, that I think that the support that we've been given in the past couple of years has allowed for the exceptional extensions that we have been receiving. So it's a substantial number of improvement that we've been receiving in the couple of years.
That's good. They have confidence in us, or you, which is great. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all.
Thank you Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Uko, for your strong leadership, your great presentation. My questions are mostly answered related to the fire impacts and the challenges you face with accreditation. I have two questions. One, not budget-related, though I know that's the topic for today. Is there a coroner anymore? I know you changed the name, and everybody keeps saying coroner. And I was like, I don't think we have one of those anymore. I think we just have a medical examiner.
That's correct. There was an issue that was created as a result of that confusion. There was a discussion about a coroner and jurisdiction. So people started to think that there's two people. There's a medical examiner, and then there's a coroner. So that causes some confusion that we had to sort of correct. And I think that part of our name, our previous name, also created that confusion, medical examiner, coroner. That suggested that there's two folks. So that's why it was very important to have that name change put out. So thank you for highlighting that.
So there's only one person?
There's only one, it's us. We have jurisdiction for the entire county. There's no jurisdiction here or there. We are the, we are it.
The coroner in LA County is dead. Okay. And the, the question I did have was related to your work, something that came up during the fire-related impact. We had an issue in our district where you had to move quicker than your normal time because someone needed to be buried due to religious reasons. And I know that that comes up a lot in Los Angeles County, given the diversity of our communities. How does the budget that you have and that kind of a challenge, how often does that come up? Does that constitute some sort of a substantive budget impact? Or how, do you just address that on a case-by-case basis? Or how do you address that?
Equity is of high priority. When people present with a religious need, that's a special need that we want to help them address and to expedite those cases because the burials are often needed in 24 hours. This is shared by the Jewish community, Muslim community as well. So we intently want to do that. And the idea is that the budget will create that doubt issue will no longer be an issue that we will, that they can expect us to examine the body within a certain timeframe, which is the name accreditation is within 72 hours. But again, I'm not interested in just violation level, I'm interested in beyond. And I think that we can get to that point of 24 hours. But that's a, you know, that's a, that's a vision.
Okay, so as of today, we're able to prioritize with the staffing that you have when there's a religious need to, to move at a faster pace?
As best we can.
Okay. Has there ever been a time where we haven't been able to do that?
It depends on when the cases are reported to us. Unfortunately, sometimes the cases are reported to us fairly late. So for example, if there's a 24-hour request, it may be reported to us 72 hours. So we're already outside of it. But, but we still realize there's still a potential to help those people in a unique way, so we will expedite in those cases. However, the ones that do, people who do die at the scene, yeah, we are able to accommodate as soon as, if that's communicated to us early on in the investigation, which it usually is.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Uko, for your work and for this presentation. It is, is amazing. In Los Angeles County, the Office of the Medical Examiner investigates some of the most devastating deaths we see. Suspicious, unexpected, deaths from homicide, suicides, drug overdoses, I mean, celebrity deaths that you investigate and try to stay on top of the news or media frenzy that may surround that. And I will say, you have carried out your duties with incredible grace and dignity for those who have passed on as well as their families. And, you know, I know, I've seen that characteristic in you, that it is not just taking care of those who have died, but it's really taking care of the living, who, you know, also have a lot of needs. And you've been very responsive to that. Most of my questions have been asked. The only thing, when you were talking about the facility and accreditation and all that, you kind of went around it, but didn't actually say. But I see that there is a feasibility study for a new facility. So will that be a new building? Do you have something in mind? What is your, what are your conversations with our CEO about actually a different and new facility?
Yeah, thank you for highlighting that. That's absolutely an important part of that chunk of the presentation there that I didn't speak on. But yes, it is for a new facility. And just towards looking at the examples of other offices in the country that ran into accreditation issues, and inspector says you need a new facility, so sort of following that model of asking for a new facility. Because there's a certain point where we may not be able to address the needs in the current capacity that we have. And so the first step would be a feasibility study and to find out, you know, what do we need? But, and we have potential locations to look at. But I think, of course, the biggest challenge will be the funding for the ultimate facility is where we face challenges.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll be interested in the feasibility study. Did you want to speak on that?
So yes, we are conducting a feasibility study. And we have done some preliminary searches with, with, with the medical examiner. And so it's not that we don't have any idea. We want to make sure that we are comparing like our options so that we get the best building that will suit their needs. The second thing I wanted to follow up on, a prior question on the Crip expansion. So there, my office will be introducing a board letter anticipated in about June of 2025. The total project estimate is about 6.3 million. The funding has already been identified, and it's about a one-year construction with completion anticipated in July of 2026.
Okay, thank you for that update. And then just to follow up on Supervisor Horvath's line of questioning about different religious requirements as it relates to the burial. I know, and by the way, and thank you again, every year, you know, in December, we, you know, bury the unclaimed dead in LA County. And there was a concern this year, which I had not heard before of the Muslim tradition about burying underground. And you were very quick to say you're going to actually take that into consideration.
Yes, so we've engaged leaders in the Muslim community. We've in fact have someone come to speak to my staff for that purpose of creating that kind of relationship. And we want to continue that because it was really eye-opening to hear that. It was kind of like, once the person said it, it was like, well, knowing the religion, it's like, that's pretty obvious that we're, there's a gap there. And so we intentionally want to follow through with that as best we can within our means, jurisdiction and that kind of things, so that we can assist that for those folks.
Right. Because many times, obviously, the unclaimed dead, we, we don't have a sense of sometimes who they are, what their name is, what their religious affiliation. Sometimes we do, but not always so. But I really appreciate the fact that you had, it was a new revelation for you, it was for me too. But you were quick to say, no, let's, let's, let's talk about that. So I appreciate that a lot. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. A lot of the questions that I had have been answered as well. But just out of curiosity, when we have the accreditation, when they come, I mean, the question didn't make any sense to me, that I was, that I was going to ask you, but maybe it does. Can you share more about what achieving full accreditation means, or in reverse, what impact not obtaining it would have?
Thank you. For name accreditation, if we were to lose it, it would cause increased scrutiny for the work that we do. And it's particularly in the justice system, whether it be civil or criminal cases. We already receive questions about, well, how do you know, you know, if you are this? And there are already prosecutors and defend, public defenders are reaching out saying, hey, how's your accreditation going? So they're, they're sort of focusing in on that. It won't shut us down. We will continue to do our work. It's just a shiny star that we sort of lose, and people start to question, things are not going well there. And so there's work that's associated with that as well. Only 16% of offices in the country have accreditation.
Oh, wow.
So we are an elite company, and we intend to stay there. But, you know, once you gain it, it's one of these things that, well, you're, have this opportunity to lose it as well. And so that's the other side.
All right, well, thank you again. I echo everything my colleague said, but I just really appreciate you and your team. And I, and whenever I say that to you, you always talk about people that you work with. And that speaks volumes to you as a leader as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on now to the Director of Arts and Culture. Kristin Sikoda, Director of Arts and Culture, and her staff will make a presentation.
Good afternoon Supervisors, and thank you Chair. As noted, I am Kristin Sikoda, Director of the Department of Arts and Culture, here today to present the Department of Arts and Culture's FY 2526 budget request. I'm joined by Heather Rigby, Chief Deputy, as well as Brandon Turner, Administrative Deputy, and I'm joined by Alexandra Valdez, the Executive Director of the LA City-County Native American Indian Commission, which as you know, by motion of your board, was transitioned to be housed within the Department of Arts and Culture. Thank you. So like my colleagues, my presentation will consist of three slides. And so we'll start with the first one, focusing on priority requests for the department. On the left, of course, we've got our mission and programs, and I won't go through them all, but for the public, I think it may be helpful to understand that in sum, our mission and our aim is to invest in LA County's cultural life. And we do that by investing in our region's arts sector and programs that increase the quality of life for our communities, positively benefiting human, economic, and community development. Our budget request this year is focused on key priorities to support and enhance resources that implement the county cultural policy adopted by your board, strengthen our department's staffing and infrastructure to deliver these programs and services for the arts and culture sector, our diverse communities and underserved populations, and to support the board and county's goals around access, equity, and legacy for our communities, looking ahead to the 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games and the Cultural Olympiad. Recognizing the budget climate, you will also see that we sought to leverage our department's successful fund development efforts, so diversifying funding sources, by utilizing non-NCC funding sources where available for revenue offset positions, and of course, aligning budget requests with board motions, adopted plans, and other priorities. So going through the list on this slide, the first item you will see would partially implement Cultural Policy Strategic Plan Strategy 2 around professional development. This would expand the department's capacity because we play a regional role in convening important networks in the sector. That includes municipalities and their local arts agencies, philanthropy, arts funders, our grantee organizations, art service organizations, and more. It also includes not just professional development, but capacity building for the hundreds of cultural organizations and community-based nonprofits. So we can help them be more effective at what they do, not just in the arts, but nonprofit governance. And as we look ahead, there are key issue areas that are standing out to us in our field, such as disability access, artistry and inclusion, sustainability and climate-related actions and goals, and now with the wildfires, disaster preparedness. So that kind of training and technical assistance is in that first item. The second item you see is reestablishing the Free Concerts in Public Sites program. This would implement Cultural Policy Strategic Plan Strategy Number Three by providing the program that would support up to 200 free public concerts and festivals produced by nonprofits, municipalities, and our county departments and county sites. This was a longstanding program long ago when we were operating as the Arts Commission and previously before there was a separation, before I arrived with the Ford Theaters. But due to the structural separation, it has been paused with that plus the pandemic due to lack of staff capacity, as the staff essentially went to the Ford and others, and a lack of dedicated ongoing funding. Implementing this would be incorporated into access programming for the 2028 Cultural Olympiad and Games for our communities. The third item you see is a request to fund an additional project manager position in the department's Civic Art Division. As you well know, we commission artists to create original site-specific artworks for our county facilities and our civic spaces. And these help welcome our communities and enliven our spaces. And so this additional capacity would allow us to take on additional projects as part of county capital projects and conservation projects as well. You also see on this slide other ministerial changes provided by CEO, including salary and employee benefits. We'll move to the next slide, please. Thank you. On this slide, we have additional unmet needs, including a request to add three staff positions to our department that would be fully funded with external stable revenue sources to support the expansion of arts programming for young people. Two of the positions would be funded using county-controlled state funding from the Juvenile Justice Realignment Block Grant and the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act to support arts programs for youth in probation camps and halls, as well as in community settings. One, the third position, would be funded through philanthropic dollars and assigned to support the launch of a new program, which would be to create and launch a paid teen arts internship program for high school students in arts organizations, which would be funded entirely through a partnership with Bloomberg Philanthropies. You see administrative funding as the next line item. That's to align our administrative budget with the actual costs of operating the department in a shared services model. And then we move to tier three, where you see a request for one-time funding in the amount of 12 million to support grant-making activities, as well as funds for special initiatives and commissions to support the years leading up to and ultimately delivery of arts and culture in 2028 for the Cultural Olympiad and Olympic and Paralympic Games. Finally, on the page, you see the LA NAIC request, which is for, to establish an Office of Tribal Affairs. This would facilitate long-term positive relationships between the County of Los Angeles, not just our department, but all the departments, with local tribes, and advance the well-being of the urban American Indian and Alaska Native community. Again, as noted, this request appears in our budget as the LA NAIC is housed within our department and has been a longtime need. That was recently the subject of motions by Supervisor Solis and Horvath to advance truth, healing, and reconciliation with Native communities. Next slide, please. Okay. Here, I won't go through all of the challenges and pressures faced on the budget, but just want to acknowledge a couple of them. Like many of our colleagues, we experience increased demand for our programs and competing priorities in that regard that then tax and strain our staff capacity as well as funding resources. But I also do want to highlight and speak to the 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games and why they feature in our budget request so prominently. As I know your board knows, the 2028 Games are coming and- know your board knows, the 2028 Games are coming and are going to be a once-in-a-generation opportunity for us to showcase the incredible artistry and culture of Los Angeles. But it is also, importantly, an opportunity to invest in things that will have a lasting positive benefit and legacy for our communities. Access to arts and culture, access to youth workshops, that is really what this, in many ways, is all about, and our role in the county to be able to provide those opportunities, not only within the city of L.A., but for the broader region, and in concert with what might happen on the private sector. As you know, also at the direction of your board, we led 10 convenings and a larger event, so 11 total, to hear from the cultural community. So engaging them, bringing them around the table, and we will be reporting back to your board this April with the data and the findings from all of those convenings and all of that stakeholder input, really telling us even in more stronger terms, what is needed to bring this to fruition. But we do know that now is a critical window, as it's only a few years out. Finally, I'd like to speak to something that I think is not reflected here, but which is just wildfire response and how that adds another layer to what we have been undergoing and what may be needed ahead. One thing a lot of folks may not think about, but is the fact that as we are part of L.A. County, but especially the community's hardest hit in Altadena and in the Palisades, there were many artists, creative workers, cultural organizations, and creative businesses deeply impacted by this fire. Moreover, not only do they need support, and this is evidenced in, for example, the work we're doing, working in coordination with public sector arts agencies, city, county, state, and federal levels, bringing all the information together and delivering that in resource webinars, which was attended by over 400 folks just last week, and providing creative well-being, teaching artists for our young people. But that element, I think, is also something we don't want to get lost. Art heals. And we are seeing that folks are asking us for services to support people in processing what has happened. We are getting calls from the relevant school districts that have been impacted, Pasadena Unified, which includes Altadena, asking us for teaching artists, healing facilitators, and more. And so we also want to ensure the arts are part of the rebuild and the recovery of our communities. But all of this stretches the capacity of the department to convene, to coordinate, and deliver those programs, hence professional development staff requested, and even things like civic art, wherein rebuilding a community, I anticipate that there will be civic art, of course, to be included as we rebuild. So with that, those are some of the needs that I thank you for giving me this time. And that concludes to present, and that concludes the planned remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Three quick questions. First, I didn't see an increase in the organization grant program. I know this is something the board approved. That 1.5 million increase means a lot to those in the field. Why aren't you recommending that?
Yes. Thank you so much, Supervisor. This remains a priority for the department and for the arts sector. As you noted, we fund, at this point, over about 500 organizations. At this time, we know that we are still waiting to hear direction on whether or not there will be curtailment exercises. But the way our department budget is structured, the vast majority of all of our NCC is either staffing, or it's in our grants. And so if curtailment is coming, we know that OGP will be impacted. Given the budget climate, the focus this year was to actually request one-time funding. So that's the one-time funding that would support the Olympic-related themes, knowing that a portion of that could be delivered to the OGP grantees as they begin to prepare for the Games ahead.
And I would say, I don't, I think we don't allocate what isn't asked for. And so I think I'd like to see from your, I understand, I appreciate the answer, very clear about your thinking. And for my part, I'd love to see it included. You can recognize that that's something that, you know, based on the budget environment that we're in, that it may be a stretch. But given the commitment that we've made to organizations and that this board made, I think seeing that represented in your requests means that it's part of the conversation. So I would just offer that.
Thank you.
And then my second question goes back to the, your comment on the Olympics. I know that there's a requested $12 million to support one-time grant-making. How will that work in coordination with LA 28's plans?
Sure. So we have been meeting regularly with LA 28, including their Chair of the Cultural Olympiad and her advisor as well. Based on everything we know, not only our conversations with them, but our learnings from Paris, we just did a shared learning around the evaluation of Paris and other cultural Olympiads, we anticipate fully that to deliver a full Cultural Olympiad with access to the arts for our communities, it's going to be almost like a, almost imagine a pie chart. And it's going to be a pie in terms of collaboration and investment and opportunities coming not only from LA 28, but also from public sector folks like ourselves. Right now, we know that we need to begin to step forward, because the clock is ticking. In terms of our strategies, we have broad shared alignment with LA 28. We also anticipate that some of the work will be done in coordination with LA 28, but that some of our programs will be done our own, led by us, just like City of L.A. will lead, but all leading up to broader shared goals.
I think making sure that coordination happens and we understand what, you know, what they're bringing to the table, so we understand what our piece of it looks like is going to be critically important. I know all of these conversations are in flux, but at this stage, we have to make some sort of commitment. I appreciate understanding that you're carving that out, but having a clearer picture around how we're going to fit in, because I think there have been a lot of questions about the role that the county is or isn't playing. And so that's important for us to fully understand. And then finally, I see that the department is requesting about $1 million for free concerts in public sites. I would say, I know our community organization, you know, the request for organizational grants is 1.5 million. Have there been any efforts to work potentially with private philanthropy or music industry-related organizations to, you know, in terms of a sponsorship? I understand, out of the county's entire budget, $1 million might not seem like a lot, but it might be an opportunity for us to have a public-private partnership to continue that going and have the funding that would otherwise go to this, go to the grant-making that we know is a priority for our organizations.
Thank you for that question, Supervisor. Yes, that is absolutely something we are exploring. It's not something that was done in the past, at least to my knowledge, of the program historically. It was always done with county funding. The one thing I will say in anticipation, I've had one initial conversation with a funder, but is that we would need to still put forward a program, but I do think, so that the county would essentially form the base of a program. But absolutely, we are interested in all opportunities for seeing if we can leverage or have sponsorship that can then enhance or make up the difference if the county was only able to fund this partially.
Yes. I recognize your department is balancing the challenge of providing programming and then also funding programming in other spaces. So the more that we can find opportunities for some of those partners who want to help us, you know, to come into that work, even if there's some sort of match, it helps defray some of the costs otherwise. So I'm glad to hear that you're exploring those opportunities. I think diversifying how we bring funding into the department is always helpful, especially because we want to continue prioritizing the arts throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Han. Supervisor Mitchell, excuse me, Supervisor Mitchell, and then Supervisor Han.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I had the similar question, the first question at Supervisor Horvath. That's who you are, Horvath. What time is it, Supervisor Solis? Is it time for some ordman? That Supervisor Horvath had, and I'm confused by what I heard you to say. And the question is with regard to the organizational grants program. And initially, in your presentation, I thought I heard you say that the professional development line item, a part of that was going to support the organizational program. So I heard that. But then I heard you say that the $12 million asked for the LA 2028 Games was going to be tied to our organizational grants program as well. And so then when I heard Supervisor Horvath say, well, we don't get what you don't ask for. So is the $12 million for the, for Olympics going to be funded through the organizational grants program? Do you expect that they will apply? Help me get clear.
Thank you. Yes. So we do anticipate that a portion of those funds, we could deliver through and to OGP grantees, yes. We also know that there will need to be special initiatives that may not be literally funding hundreds of organizations. They may need to be place-based around games venues or special initiatives. So I don't anticipate it would be the full $12 million. But there could be, and the idea is that there would be additional dollars for these organizations, to support things such as free and low-cost programs for our communities, any work they may need to do operationally to increase their standards for accessibility, given a Paralympic Games is coming, things of that nature.
Okay. And so this is $12 million that we're allocating in the 2526 budget year in preparation for the 28 Games?
I want to just speak briefly to that in terms of the timing. So when we back out from the end goal to deliver something in 2028, means really kind of at the latest, funding would need to go to organizations or to projects in 2027, which means that in 2026, we would need to have opened an application process and design, which means we got to know how much money we have. And then you're talking about between now and '26 calendar year, getting that, getting those dollars.
Given, given all of those opportunities that we have as a county to step up and be active participants in the 2028 Games, in your mind of the $12 million, would half of it, or do you have a sense of what percentage of that $12 million would go to organizational grant programs? Half? Do you have a sense?
I don't have a final number at this moment, so I wouldn't want to necessarily commit, but I have some initial thoughts, but yeah.
Okay. I would just say that I agree with Supervisor Horvath, that, you know, providing those funds to the small and midsize and cultural organizations, particularly in what I refer to as hardly reached communities, is critical. It's been critical for them in terms of maintaining their organizations, maintaining employment within those organizations. So I just, again, would want to echo how important they are for the residents and the organizations in the Second District. Next question for me is, I see that the department is requesting some revenue offset positions for work that's been impacted by the contracting issues within the Arts Education Unit, including contracts for services being performed at Los Pedrinos. I understand that your department is also making internal changes to address some of the critical oversight gaps for the contract. So can you tell us who or what unit will be permanently assigned the responsibility of overseeing the justice work, just so we know that we're making progress towards closing their gaps? And it's housed, actually, somewhere.
Yes. Thank you. This is a team that we are referring to as Youth Development or Youth Development Contracts Unit. And we have updated our reporting structures to place that unit right under the supervision of the Chief Deputy. This provides a higher level of oversight and management. We are also taking additional actions, of course, things like increasing staff training on contracts compliance and any other steps to address any potential gaps. Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for this presentation. Just to follow up a little bit on the 2028 Games and Cultural Olympiad, I do think we're all so focused on how does the rest of L.A. County, besides just the city of L.A., benefit, even though they're naturally the host. We're really trying to focus on economic development and opportunities for all of our unincorporated areas, as well as our cities. So I love it that we're having a Cultural Olympiad. I mean, I think that's fantastic. Listening to how you're engaged, because I was thinking before you said, I'm like, I wonder how we are, how different cultural and arts groups and communities, as well as cities, and even folks on an unincorporated area, how are they making the pitch to you that they too want to be included? And I know you're talking about reaching out to the cultural community. I'm wondering if sometimes our cultural communities are disconnected from the cities that they operate in, because I do know that our cities are also, I mean, there's even a saying, you know, 88 for 28, meaning there's 88 cities in the county for 28. And how do they all play into this? And wondering if there's an opportunity to also reach out to the city, because they may also be interested in if there is an event in their city, might be willing to partner in terms of even funding for something around a Cultural Olympiad.
Yes. Thank you for the question, Supervisor. The first thing I would just mention is that we have historically and continue to convene the municipalities that have a form of a local arts agency. So they've got an Office of Cultural Affairs, or a department, or a staff, and they have some programs and grant programs. That is now about nine or 10 different cities. I don't have them all in front of me, but it's City of L.A., it's West Hollywood, it's Santa Monica, it's Pasadena, it's Culver City, it's Santa Torita, it's a wide range, it's Long Beach. And so we actually, as the county, we convene this group. And it's been historically important for best practices and building as a network. But now the focus is really on these larger regional issues and opportunities. So the Games are one of them. And actually, what we are hearing is that even at their city levels, they are also being asked to start to say, what will be the opportunities? Where are we going to get resources? How do we put resources aside over the next couple of years to support arts and culture? And they want us to connect to say, what is the larger vision we can all and coordination we can all have? So those conversations are underway, in addition to having close coordination with my counterpart at the City of L.A.'s Department of Cultural Affairs. The second piece I do want to extend is that I would be more than happy to also have a conversation with all 88. So if the county's going to convene, and I did express this to other, you know, colleagues, parks or CEO, so that if the county will convene all 88 on the Games, we would love to talk about arts and culture. It's something we had been thinking about doing on our own, but feel we can actually embed that in the county's larger conversations, because it's true. I do think cities, even ones who don't typically have arts or have funding, they might say, we'd love to be part of this. How do we get into that? And there are opportunities there.
Hallelujah. You know, I was thinking, colleagues like Contract Cities or Independent Cities, convene all these cities to talk about regional issues and concerns. And I think it would be really, I think it would probably be a really interesting and well-listened-to forum to have you present at one. I know there's one coming up, Independent Cities, this month. But in the future, I think they would really appreciate it, because sometimes, again, I think our cities need to be more connected to their cultural communities, and sometimes they're not. So as you know...
If I may, we also approved...
You'll lean my time to the...
We also approved, as a board, 88 for 28 to be convened in partnership through our CEO's office. So that's going to be happening through the county.
Right. Thank you.
And Supervisor, may I just add one additional point, just to highlight, the Free Concerts program has actually always, even long ago in our, like, original inception in 1947, we always supported among the recipients, not just nonprofits, think of your favorite cultural festival or concert, but municipalities for any free concert programs that they had. So that could be true again, that would be true again if the Free Concerts was funded as well.
So as you know, there is a whole region that's going to depend on you for the Sela Cultural Center. And you've already taken a very big role and have committed to really playing a huge part in the development of the Sela Cultural Center, the programming, the planning. How do you see that as part of your budget requests going forward? Because it's going to be an ongoing commitment from the county.
Yes. Thank you, Supervisor. So there is nothing in this budget today for the Sela Cultural Center. As the process moves forward, we want to use this Sela Advisory Panel, of which you are one of the chairs that I'm serving on, that will be a vehicle for hearing from the community, the local community, as well as us, the county experts and the state, in terms of finalizing what will be the proposed program and operating plan and phasing. When that starts to come to its conclusion, is when I anticipate we will know what additional requests will be... will be coming to the board. But we need to have those conversations, have those analyses done. And we're talking, of course, with Public Works and all the different agencies that are involved in doing.
Right. Supervisor Solis started this. And it, it, you know, it won't be done by the time I'm termed out, but it is an incredible opportunity for an entire region that has felt underserved, left behind, and neglected as it relates to their, their artists and their, their cultural opportunities. So, we will be looking in the future for, to see budget funding requests in your budget for that center. Ms. Valdez, you know, we, thanks to Supervisor Solis, we now, of course, recite a land acknowledgement at our county Board of Supervisors meeting every time we convene. Many of us talk about the land acknowledgement when we're out there speaking. That's a start. And apparently, it was a long negotiated start. What else should we be focusing on, looking at, showing respect and dignity for our Native American community here in LA County?
I really think it is the creation of an Office of Tribal Affairs. So, as you've seen, it's made the budget request as a tier-three request. It was reflected in a CEO report back on how that could be structured. And we were, as the department, with CEO, named in a motion by Horvath and Solis in the fall to look into the feasibility of that. And I think that that really is the next logical and responsible and respectful step. It is something that has been elevated through many processes that have been directed by your board, including within the harms report. It would really galvanize and solidify our commitment to creating consistent government-to-government relationships throughout this county. I think right now, in the response to the fires, that's being elevated more than ever around, how are we going to do this rebuild? And there's a huge opportunity. So, I've heard in my six and a half years as a county employee, not only from the native community and tribal leaders, but also from my colleagues throughout this county, how imperative it is that we create an office that's really this coordinated body that is supporting the entire county and helping to ensure that we are building mutually beneficial relationships with local tribal communities. So, to me, that's the natural next step. That's why it's highlighted in this budget request. So, I think that would be an incredible commitment on behalf of the board, which has already been so committed to uplifting the native community here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Solis.
Oh, my God, it's just adding more to the budget, right? But you know, these are all really critical items that we've been talking about for years. And I am wholeheartedly supportive of most of what you have in your budget requests, I think are, are really meaningful. And we've already tested them, and they work. And I'm really happy that the concert program is expanding. That was something that I got involved in early on as a board member here, and to see it expand. And I do remember at a point when we were paying for these concerts at different cities. And then, when our, when we went through some budget shrinking exercises, some of those cities came back and called us out. But then, we came back and came out with a better program, I think. And it really, to me, is something that has allowed for local artists to express themselves. Because not, not only are we just going out to the regular folks that cities contract with, but we've actually had to kind of scour and go meet the new talent. And all of this came about, I think, after COVID, where we saw that we had to do something to provide support to those local artists in a way of employment, but also cultural expression. So, to me, that's really important, that we continue on that work. And I'm also excited about the capital projects you're hiring. You're going to be looking at hiring an FTE to help with the project management of that, of the civic art projects. And I probably am one of the few members that have had recent buildings, capital, capital projects developed, where we actually have asked local artists to display their artwork. At some point, I think it'd be wise to share what that looks like. So, everybody on the board and the public knows what they're paying for. And that came out of a motion several years ago where any development, there would be 1% of that funding going into the arts. And I remember carrying that motion, I think, back when Sheila Kuehl was here. But nonetheless, it's paying off. And I think sometimes people forget that, because they think that every city or every county does that. And I have to tell them, no, this is something we did deliberately. And I think it's intentional, and it's important for people to know that, that they can also take that same idea and perhaps take it to their city councils as they build out their housing or whatever it is they're building in their communities. That's, that's really important, I think. The other thing, I'm excited that you're going to be looking at, hopefully, in your tier-two request, getting people out in the probation camps and dealing with our juvenile justice system. That, that is, that helps to augment what our youth development programs are doing and, and our other nonprofits like ARC and others, and people that we're trying to fund. Very important. I'm happy about the Bloomberg philanthropic donation they're giving for a three-year project, which is very important. I hope you'll go after more opportunities like that. That should help you open up more, more doors so you can possibly draw down more, more funding. And with Lannick, I am very much supportive of having our own Office of Tribal Affairs, because we have spent too much time arguing amongst ourselves and with the city. And the county is much larger than the city, and we have many more people who represent Native Americans who live in the county of Los Angeles. And we owe it to them to have something that's done right, correctly, and transparent. So, can't wait to see that happen. And then, lastly, on the Olympic and Paralympic Games, I too want to know what 12 million, it may sound like a lot, but it really isn't. But where is it going to go? How is it going to be utilized? And how fair and transparent can we make that available? And use that as a way to leverage three times-fold what we're, what we're maybe putting in there? So, I think that's going to be very critical for us moving forward. LA 28, in my opinion, right now, doesn't, in my opinion, does not look to give us funds in the way that maybe the public thinks. And that has been very alarming to all of us. So, if we put skin in the Games, we really have to, really have to move forward with it and really ask and enlist some of our, our partners, our corporate partners, and maybe even our contractors that do work on a daily basis with the county, to come up and help us meet, meet that challenge. I see CEO wanting to say something.
Thank you Supervisor. I know that there were at least two motions, I think, one from your office and one from the chair's office, directing the CEO's office to drive the work in our preparation around the Olympics. I agree that we should not wait for LA 28 to identify resources for us to do that. So, my office did convene a large meeting last year, which Arts participated in, including Metro, where we set up and established all of the work groups that we would need to, with the goal of identifying a global plan. In addition to this $12 million request from Arts, you're going to see requests for Olympics funding from your other departments, including libraries and parks. And so, what we want to do is pull all of those requests together and align them with the plan. There was also a request for us to do a more regional convening with all the cities. We were prepared to do that, but we were delayed by the fires. So, we think that meeting is going to happen in March.
And can we have a presentation to the board on, on that? Maybe agendize that, just to talk about what it is collectively, what has already happened? And what is our map forward, moving, strategic plan moving forward?
Yes, so we'll, we'll do the convening so we can report, take down what we've heard from the cities, you know, indicating what their interests are. Part of that convening is also to do some education, because I think people might think that the county is a funder for Olympic activities. So, we want to also do some expectation management. But we will most certainly come back and do a report back on what our planning has been to date, all of the Olympic requests for funding from your departments, and then what the go-forward plan is.
Great, okay. Thank you very much, and thank you to the department and to the staff. I know you guys work really, really hard, and it's not lost on a lot of us and the public. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And really, some of the questions have been asked. But on the organizational grant program for local nonprofits, that's been something that the board has continued to fund. And I know that nonprofits truly are, in my opinion, a critical resource in providing mental health and wellbeing support. And, and I've seen that with the fires even, but they're also called second responders, is what I'm told. And so, I guess my question to you is, you talked about the Olympics, and I, I definitely, we're going to agendize that, and that's a great idea to consolidate it. But you're saying it's investing in the community to highlight arts in LA County? Is that what you said about the 12 million?
Sorry, can you say that again?
That it's going to be used, invested in the community to highlight the arts throughout LA County?
Yes.
So, how does that differ from the grant program where we are investing already?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. For the funding for the program for 2028 Cultural Olympiad, we anticipate, one, that yes, part of it would be supporting the OGP grantees already so that they can provide those free access programs, as well as, as I mentioned earlier, we want to make sure they've also got any funding that they might need to support new ways that perhaps they are not operating, like to support an additional influx of, of athletes and people with disabilities, et cetera. We also anticipate that there might be a need, separate and apart from that, to highlight arts activities in certain areas or hubs. For example, there are sort of games venue areas as well as transit and mobility hubs. And so, there's been a lot of conversation, and even some motions at this board, as well as motions at the Metro Board, around how we can, can support arts activities that are near these hubs, in addition to having a wider array of activities that would be county-wide. Yeah.
Thank you. Holly, Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you very much. And as we talk about the Olympics, to remind you that we also had a, a motion that has a report back due, I think, middle of March or so, that talks about a fiscal impact to the county. So, that's, I think, an additional layer that we're adding on top of this. Two things in terms of the Olympics, you know, watching the Super Bowl last weekend and the news the next day, that there were nationwide fanfests. I mean, that struck me. I don't know if they've ever done that before, but nationwide, and so far, I was here, they had fanfests. As we're thinking about fanfests around the Olympics, it should perhaps not just be LA. It could potentially be nationwide, looking at that model. Just, just a thought. Following up on your comment around the motion years ago with the 1% of new construction, I saw a presentation at Knobco by fellow Commissioner Rodney Ellis from Houston. And I wonder if our motion allows for the same. They are doing incredible murals on existing county buildings. So, all over downtown Houston, every county building, there's this huge mural. And I didn't know if that original motion allowed for the same. I know it's 1% of all new construction, which we've had.
But you don't have to have the artwork on the new building. You can, you can designate it with the agreement of the developer where to place it. So, there could be another area. So, we did do that at LA General. We actually created a space.
A space to look at the sterilization of women. So, through a development, you know, grant, we developed something that maybe wasn't put on a building brick and mortar, but, but the artwork was transformed somewhere else where, where it was accepted. And a local artist convened and did all that. So, you could do that.
So, you can use that, it can be on existing county and new? Okay.
Yeah, yes, I'm happy to speak to this question. So, the county's own 1% for art policy, the civic art policy, it is connected to the capital project. However, sometimes, one of the things that happens is funds get pooled. Sometimes, a smaller project, and it doesn't move forward. And then, those pools are in each district. And then, those projects that come out of those, my understanding is they do not have to relate to that exact capital project. And then additionally, what Supervisor, Solis is speaking to, is that through your board, we were also able to recently pass an ordinance that talks about private developers and some of those eligible projects. And they need to create some sort of a 1%. And if they don't, then a small portion of that comes to a fund that we can then push out. It does need to be, however, within five-mile radius of that private development project, a portion of those funds. So, they each have different rules around it. But absolutely, thinking about ways to continue to leverage the civic art activity is an exciting and important opportunity for us. So, thank you.
And so, just so I'm clear, resources can be used on existing county.
It's not insurmountable, all right? It's not insurmountable. I think that's.
It's not automatic.
Yeah, but it can be done. It can be done.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We will now move on to the last, but certainly not least. We will hear from the Director of Personnel, Lisa Garrett, and staff to make a presentation. Welcome. We'll turn it on there.
Thank you. Lisa Garrett, Director of Personnel. And I have some of my executive team members with me today. To my right, immediate right is Rodney Collins, who is the Chief Deputy Director for HR. To my immediate left is Dr. Johann Yulain, who is an Assistant Director in DHR. And Maggie Martinez is also an Assistant Director within DHR. We have our other team back there that came to join the fun. Yes. So, thank you Supervisors. We are going to be discussing DHR's fiscal year budget requests for fiscal year 2025 and '26. I do want to start off by saying, we have charged ourselves in DHR with driving countywide organizational excellence by designing and delivering innovative talent strategies and HR solutions in all of the areas listed in the blue ribbon to the left of the slide. This year, we are requesting an appropriation of $8.9 million and an additional 16 positions to support the 589 positions we currently have. On the first page, we have listed our critical unmet needs. And we are requesting 12 positions that are broken down into three different functions, critical functions, I might add. Priority one request is for four analyst positions for the Critical HR Support and Shared Services Team. This team has deep, deep HR expertise, and they actually provide direct HR services to the county departments. This team also has a strike or impact team that helps to turn around troubled HR units and assure the units up for success. We've had a significant increase in requests for these services. Most of these services are actually requested by smaller HR teams, new departments that don't necessarily have an experienced HR presence. Our priority two is for, again, for analysts. And these will drive and support, which is all of our number-one priority, countywide emergency and expedited hiring. This branch is charged with innovating and transforming This branch is charged with innovating and transforming countywide hiring. I can tell you that in the emergency, they have facilitated over 250 recruitments and high, over 1,400 hires. And the hires were in half the time that it normally takes. They've also helped departments with on-the-spot hiring at colleges and hiring fairs, and we have seen some great success from that. The services have increased again for this as well. So not only are they doing the emergency hires, they're also doing expedited hiring, and departments are clamoring for this work, and we want to assist them. And I think we can do that with the four additional positions that we are requesting. Our priority three is a request for four analyst positions to provide another critical area, and that is for direct handling, oversight, and monitoring of disability and leave management for departments. Now, probation, we already are aware of that. The DHR is working there. They're not our primary focus, but they are, they do have one of the greatest needs at this point. DHR has assigned three staff there, and we will be assigning these positions to assist in that effort. Just so we'll know, the, this team has audited over 510 leave requests, processed over 1,800 accommodations, and just in the first half of this fiscal year, consultations have increased by 50% because departments need the expertise of this team. So we are requesting the four analysts. Also attached to this priority is a request for SNS funding to procure the services of a third-party administrator who will help open leaves, timely receive paperwork from the employees, review doctor's notes, et cetera. This third-party administrator would help the caseworkers to actually do the casework that leads to significant outcomes for our employees and departments. The next page, please. Our next page includes our DHR's Tier Two Priority Unmet Needs. I won't go spend a long time on that, but the very first one is for Principal Application Developer for IT Data and Development. We are putting forth the SNAB monies to support the full cost of this position. The second is for Admin Services Manager to help our contracts team. We're small, we're mighty, but we really need additional help in our contracts area, and we will be going out to bid for the employee medical plans and the benefits plans, which is going to exponentially increase the work of this tiny team. Lastly, we are requesting Senior Personnel Assistant for help on our employee benefits team, to train and support those folks in the departments that help with employee benefits and to troubleshoot for our own employees. I'm going to skip to our, I'm going to skip the Tier Three Unmet Needs and just go directly to our final page, three. Budget challenges, pressures, and the impact. The demand for HR services really has surged over the last several years, and we welcome the opportunity to support our sister departments and provide the HR expertise that is resident in DHR. However, the increased demands have put a strain on our modest staff. We have, as many of, some of you know, we have launched new and needed initiatives to transform hiring, support board motions, stand-up IT enterprise systems, navigating times of emergency, on all of the emergency, we are a key part of that, supporting new departments, increasing the well-being of our employees, new litigation, changes to civil service rules. All of these are great things, but unfortunately, we cannot sustain our same level of quality service without additional staffing. Our work has increased, but we have not had a corresponding increase in the people that do the work. So the impact will, we may experience, I do believe we will experience delays in hiring, create potential increases in risk and liability, delays in critical and immediate HR support that many of our departments will critically need. So with that, that is going to end my report, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm just going to ask a few questions, and I'll go to Janice, and then Supervisor Horvath, Supervisor Han, and then Supervisor Horvath. When you talk about that, because I looked at the workload increase, and each department has their own Human Resources Department, correct?
Yes.
So who are we hiring in the Human Resources Department that need to come to you to get, seek guidance on how to deal with human resources?
So in the county supervisor, HR is, I'm going to say, it is not all centralized. And so the department, the county departments' HR have a dotted line to me, if you will. Many of them do not have the same subject matter expertise as we have in the central agencies, and we're required to oversee the HR operations, make certain that they're following policies, pushing out policies and needed programs for HR. So yes, the departments do have HR managers, and we actually work closely with the HR managers, but they also need additional HR expertise, and that's what our team provides.
So do you have a model similar to what County Council does, where you bill departments? So in other words, if ABC department comes to you and seeks information, then you can bill against, if it took a day to put together something?
Yes. Yes, we do.
So there is revenue from?
Yes. We have inter-fund transfer monies that we bill for all of our services, with the exception of a small team that does impact or strike team work.
So what part of the increase in staffing to address the workload increase would be offset by that?
I would say all of it.
All of it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, with the exception of, we're saying two positions on impact, but I'm thinking those are going to go to shared services in the end.
Well, overhead too, yeah.
I was just going to provide a little more context. Many of your central services departments are not NCC funded, and so when we have a COLA, if, I'm going to use Dawn as an example, if County Council adds additional attorneys, all of those costs are divided up, and then they're spread out to departments. So one of the things that we have to also watch for in budget is when everyone, when all the departments, central services, when they spread out those costs to those departments, we have to also make sure that the departments, not your larger departments that have the SEVEN funding, but like animal care and control and parks and arts, we also have to make sure that they can include those costs in their budget. So DHR might have costs for shared services, auditor controller is going to come to you and ask for, you know, indicate a need for additional positions, County Council, all those costs are bundled up and then divvied out to the department. So there is an impact on the other side, too, that we just have to, that we, and we do it every year. We monitor what the shared cost is.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Lisa, for your presentation. Thank you for your department and for what you do. It is amazing, all the things that you're involved in. And particularly, I wanted to thank you for that, you know, your first slide with three of your requests were all driven by our board's motions. And just wanted to thank you for being responsive to our vision and our policy issues. Thank you for your dedication to our, and your responsiveness to our homeless crisis as well as our health emergencies and, of course, our recent wildfire emergencies. Your office really leans in so much, and I think about probation and how important your work has been there. I do, you know, you are a lean and mean department. You know, I do think about the morale, particularly of your department, a lot. And, you know, you seem to be always being asked to do more, to respond more, to lean in more. And, you know, how is the morale of your department and those that are really on the ground? Because we keep asking, and other departments keep asking, and you say yes every time.
I would say the morale in our department is very good. And one of the reasons for that is we all believe in public service, and I'm not just saying that. We really do. And they live to support the county employees, and they come up with new ideas and innovations in order to do just that. I will say, we also have clinicians in our department, and we make sure that they come to all of our staff meetings, and we have like five-minute wellness breaks right there for everyone to participate in. And our clinicians talk about various aspects of well-being or what's going on in the real world, even for us. So we, I love our team, and our team loves the work that they do, and I try to recognize them for great work on a regular basis.
Thank you. So, I mean, you talked a lot about it in this presentation and your slides, but where do you think, talk a little bit more about where you think your greatest need is, and maybe where you think your department is stretched the thinnest? And do your, if your budget requests are granted, will that, will that help?
Supervisor, I think all the Priority One requests are probably where our staff is most stretched. When I talked about the team that either embeds HR staff in departments, or they actually provide services, shared services for those departments, the need is continuing to grow as we have new departments coming online or new individuals who are not yet seasoned in HR. So that team really has seen a significant increase in requests. Of course, countywide hiring and for emergency and expedited hiring is critical. And so we have, this is Johann, Dr. Johann Yulene, who is over this particular branch, and we have regular countywide exams, but we are trying to develop new and innovative ways to expedite hiring. We have come up with a lot of those things, but that takes dedication and being able to pay attention to those things, not just the regular county exams or our regular duties. We're trying to go over and beyond where we are, and that requires more people to do that. We have put in a lot of new innovations. For example, interviews can now be done online, and that interview can be sent to the hiring manager. So now people don't have to take off of work to be interviewed. The hiring managers can do that at their leisure. We just signed a contract with Handshake, and Handshake is in almost every college campus. And so our postings go up for that. We're going to be rolling out situational judgment. Some people say, I don't understand how this exam goes with what I'm going to be doing. Well, situational judgment shows them exactly that. I can go on and on about all the new innovations, but that takes a dedicated team to keep rolling those out. The third one is leave management, disability management. It's never anyone's favorite topic, but someone has to do it. And so we do have people in the departments that do this work, but we have found that many of them have less subject matter expertise than is needed. And so this is why we're talking about assisting the departments in that. And we have a very small team with, that does this work, less than 20 people for the entire county, the entire county. We had a consultant come in and help us with the framework for leave and disability management. And we ask, of course, how many people would, should we have in the county of our size? She said, at least 50 people. Well, we don't have 50 people, so we have to be innovative and try to figure out what else we can do. And so the other ask is for the TPA services, and we, I'm going to kick that down for right now, down the curve, but I can say these 12 positions are critical, not only to our department, but for the county departments that rely on our services.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you. I want to follow up on a line of questioning from our chair. I've always been perplexed why there are HR departments within the departments when you exist, especially because they then come to you for additional assistance when they meet their own challenges. So from a budget perspective, what is the benefit of there being HR functions that are department-specific?
That is a good question. I will say this, because HR is decentralized, but in a county with 110 or 16,000 people, HR, I would say even the departments would say they don't have enough HR to do the work. The benefits, I can say the benefits service-wise, the benefits in budget, I might have to call a friend and ask our CEO on that, but I can tell you that both services are needed. Over the years, as you know, the pendulum swings. Should HR be completely centralized or should it be decentralized? And some organizations, HR is centralized, and it's all under one budget. In our county, HR is decentralized because the other side of the pendulum is people are saying, we need boots on the ground in our own department, people that know our business, who can handle our immediate needs right away. And so we can't, we don't always do that, and DHR, although we do provide services to the county. So I think having HR on the ground in the departments is very helpful while we are providing oversight for the HR, the HR activities that go on in the county.
Phoning a friend.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to start with budget, but not in there. Earlier today, or yesterday, you had your Teri Hardy Child Support. She explained how our funding works, that she, for every $1 of local funds, she can draw down too from the federal government. So her HR manager and her entire HR team is heavily subvented, and so the county pays less for salary and employee benefits, office space, computer equipment for those staff. The HR staff that are in DHR, or let's say in arts, is 100% net county costs. So there are budgeting strategies that allow us to grow our county budget pie by taking advantage of subvention funding, federal and state funding. Number two, I would say, not all HR is the same. And so the issues that Chief Maroni might have, the culture with the firefighters and, you know, the firefighting culture, that HR team will work with their employees, and they will become highly specific and adept to the nuances of the types of HR issues that a public safety or first responder would have, that I don't think you would be able to leverage well with a centralized, a totally centralized HR unit. And then the last thing I will say is there, I believe that many years ago, when HR was decentralized, that there were some unfavorable outcomes because there were different decisions being made out in department land. And so there is a need for a centralized entity to do like your countywide policies. Policies should not be written department by department because you're looking at the entire, at the entire enterprise. The last thing I will say is, on the idea of helping out the departments, which I think HR should do, the question becomes, when does the help become somewhat of like learned helplessness? You have to make sure that folks that you're hiring, to the supervisor and the manager positions, are equipped to do the job. And I realize that we have such a dynamic environment, but it's one of those situations sometimes where you do the job by day and you learn it at night, right? Because a lot of it comes with experience. And so we, we're having a lot of turnover, people that are retiring, and people don't sit in seat for a long time and learn the craft like they used to. But what that does is it allows folks, or positions them to lean, I think, more heavily on your central agencies for technical knowledge.
Agreed. You know, I see different models in different departments. You know, County Council, it's centralized. There's been conversation from some departments about wanting to have their own attorney in their respective departments. And I understand from, you know, some of the best practices that you described, there's a reason to have a centralized department. Absolutely understand that because you want to make sure you're treating people fairly across the board. And when it is decentralized, to your point, then you start to lean on this resource, and so it almost is like, well, so what are you actually paying for within the department separate from the, you know, the centralized?
I think one of the things that it does allow is, there are some things that are the day-to-day, like, you know, almost supervisor task completion level type issues that a supervisor should be able to handle onsite. You shouldn't have to go to big, you know, mother DHR to answer those simple questions. And then I think, and I defer to our Personnel Director, there are some higher-level, more nuanced questions, like on disability leave management, which has been an Achilles' heel for the county for many years, that you probably don't want them to try to figure that out on their own, and they should be able to call a help. But I think it comes down to balance, like, when is enough too much such that centralized DHR may appear to be doing the work of the departments?
Can I add something, Supervisor?
Of course.
So as Sevizia said, yes, we create countywide policies so that all the departments can be operating uniformly, even if, we're like the federal government, even if the departments decide to have something that's a little more stringent than what the county, what the county policy is. We also develop and, we rolled out 19 different enterprise-wide systems so that we could keep everyone on the same page when we're dealing with hiring or leaves or performance management. We've rolled that out to make certain that all of our county departments are growing in the same direction. We've also built out a Derm HR Manager Academy. So we are teaching new folks and those who are coming behind them how to be HR manager within the department. We're doing the same for Budget and Finance because we have seen a turnover, and so we are starting now making certain that we build these people up so that they can operate within their own departments. We're trying to teach people to fish, and so we don't have to remain in the department's the entire time.
So given that complexity, which budget requests will be the most impactful towards speeding up the hiring process in the speeding up the hiring process in the county, which is the number-one request we get? Or is that not even a budget question? Is that something else that's slowing down the hiring process?
The budget request that would help speed up would be the priority, the critical priority number, number two, and that is the countywide emergency and expedited hiring. And the reason why I say that is, we're working with, directly with departments to show them, here's some new tools that we have, here's some bottlenecks in your own system. We have built out a dashboard. Each and every department can see exactly what their hiring numbers are and where the bottlenecks are. We are teaching them how to fish in that regard, while teaching them, rolling out some new tools that we may be aware of, rolling out those tools for the department so that they can now reduce their hiring times. Do you mind if I give one minute to Dr. Johan?
Johan Yuline, Assistant Director.
Can you speak right into the mic, so that way everybody can hear you?
I'm short, sorry.
Me too. I understand.
Okay. Yeah, over the years, we've really tried to incrementally introduce various innovations to try to streamline hiring. A few years ago, I'd say four or five years ago, we were up in the hundreds with a plural days range to try to bring someone into county service. So with the various innovations that we've been introducing over the last few years, we're down roughly 45%. From that, of course, we still have a ways to go. We now have, we've stood up a branch that's dedicated specifically to hiring issues, which we haven't had before. So we're optimistic that we can continue to make improvements in innovations and in streamlining hiring. There's been a lot of progress that's been made over the years. I'm originally from private industry, so we've really tried to emulate a lot of the things that are done in the private sector, for example, unproctored testing, where a candidate can simply click on a link to take a test, as an example. The county does still conduct proctored testing, but we now do that remotely, meaning you click on a link and the webcam turns on to watch you essentially take the test and record that session. So there's a lot of things like that in addition to video interviewing, which, which Lisa mentioned, situational judgment testing is coming up. We just introduced lived experience testing, which really puts everyone on the same level playing field. I'd like to thank our partners at J-Cod for helping us with that particular effort. And that, it, it values lived experience in the same way that work experience might be valued to try to bring folks in who don't have that opportunity otherwise. I'm very proud of that particular innovation. So we've got a lot of things in the pipeline that we want to continue. There's increasing demand for hiring, as you all hear every week, and we're, we're very, very cognizant of that, which is, I think, why Lisa was so eager to stand up this separate branch to try to continue that work and sustain it.
Okay. And then finally, I, I know this is something we've focused on in our office. I'm glad to see that there is a request for the County Chief Wellness Officer, though I see it at Tier Three. I understand the budget conditions that we're in, but if I've been taught anything in my first couple of years being here, if, if it doesn't have a staff person, it's not necessarily considered a priority in the county. And so I, I'm concerned if there isn't a staff person dedicated to wellness for our employees, especially given the challenges that they've gone through in the past handful of years, and the recent wildfires among them. You know, I, I want to make sure that we are investing in our employees' wellness, that if this priority indication means that it doesn't get funded, that that doesn't mean we're not prioritizing our employees' wellness and our commitment to that.
I understand, Supervisor, and I would, would say this, we are prioritizing the wellness of our employees. Right now, we have a wellness team that works with our health carriers to sponsor the big events or, well, if you came to one of them, our, our wellness fairs for our employees and their families. We are rolling, constantly rolling out various wellness, not just focused on physical wellness, but also mental wellness, financial wellness, social wellness, emotional wellness. We constantly roll out activities for that. Just recently, we hired a chief clinician who is working with our occupational health group, who also is working with us on some of these. So this wellness is at the top of my list, but when I had to put it down here, I, I had to put it in a lower category, but I do want you to know the work is still being done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you for the work you're doing in our countywide emergency and expedited hiring. Appreciate that. And I'm curious, particularly now, about what you're doing to ensure that our expedited hiring processes continue to result in hiring a diverse and inclusive workforce, one that, you know, is reflective of the county as a whole.
Thank you for that question, Supervisor. For one thing, as you know, we call ourselves Jedi Warriors. We believe in justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and we do everything with that lens. One thing that we are doing that helps to make sure that I, all eyes are on what's happening here, is that these postings are public. And so, and the next thing is that our team also reviews the applications for emergency hiring that are coming in to make sure that people have knowledge and notice that this is open for anyone to apply. And you might recall, some years ago, we also trained all the hiring managers on implicit bias to make certain that the people should be looked at based upon their skill sets and not on other protected characteristics. So we are doing that. When we looked at the numbers for those in exped, I should say, emergency hiring versus the traditional hiring, the numbers are pretty much mirroring, they're, they're following the same pattern. So I feel very confident that the emergency hiring is bringing in diverse slate of candidates, both ethnicity and also gender.
And as we've talked about at length, the decentralized versus decentralized kind of win, which the county does, HR, is that a role you play in terms of oversight for county departments that are doing their direct hiring to? Is that, is that, does that elevate to your level to make sure that even other departments that are doing hiring are following the same kind of protocol and expectation?
I would say in many instances, yes. And like I was mentioning about the dashboards that we rolled out, we're able to see what's going on in each department and bring it to the attention of those in the department who need to make corrections or adjustments.
Got it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, again, thank you, Lisa, thank you. Executive Officer, please call those members of the public who signed up to speak on this item across the board. It says this item, but I think all the items that we've had today, correct? One item, all, okay. Yep.
With the following individuals, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Byron Jose, Zemin Brown, and Yosenia Cux. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address Budget Item 1, if you not have already done so, please press 1, then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Yes, our first participant is Erica Schwert. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Erica Schwert. I am from the Antelope Valley. I'm a community organizer with Strength Based Community Change. We are a countywide organization. And the reason for me calling is that I, I really support all these budgets, but I very much in particular support the, the presentation by Rafael Carvajal for DCBA, in particular the support for the funding for the, for the immigrant community that is going to need a lot. We are a community center in Lake Los Angeles that is seeing an influx of people needing help with access for legal resources. There's a lot of people that are afraid, and if it wasn't for this department's current support, there would be a lot of issues in our community. So I really urge the board to please support and adopt this plan for DCBA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Riley Wang. Oh, I apologize. Riley Wang, your line is open. Please begin.
Hi, my name is Riley Kwong, and I represent Nuevo Monacé, Mujer Integra, a nonprofit working with women and families in East LA. I'm also calling to strongly support DCBA's budget request to continue funding the Represent L.A. program. Immigrant women in LA are deeply embedded in the economy as caregivers, domestic workers, small business owners, and service workers. At Nuevo Monacé, we see how access to immigration lawyers and reliable legal information empowers women to fully participate in their community. We've seen this clearly in the past few weeks. After the devastating fires, women in East LA stepped up, raising money, offering support, and caring for those who lost their homes. They do this because they feel secure in their place here. Without Represent L.A., ensuring access to legal resources and know-your-rights information, many would hesitate to step forward to help. Represent L.A. has been a critical partner, providing legal representation and case management, ensuring immigrants can follow legal pathways, participate in the economy, and create stability for their families. We cannot let this program lapse, particularly when changing federal policy is creating so much uncertainty for the immigrant community. I urge the board to prioritize funding for Represent L.A. for the well-being of Los Angeles people.
Here, and this is from the line of Hector Ramirez. Your line is open. Please begin.
Thank you. My name is Hector Ramirez. I live in Los Angeles County. I'm a person with a disability who's autistic. I have a psychiatric disability. I'm hard of hearing and becoming deaf, and I'm here today to urge you to include a line-item budget allocation for the Los Angeles County Aging and Disability Department, dedicated specifically to serving the needs of people with disabilities. This necessitates a corresponding increase to the department's proposed budget. The urgency of this request cannot be overstated. A recent tragedy in Alzadina just this past January 28th serves as a stark reminder of the vulnerability of our community, seniors, and people with disabilities. As flames rip through the senior living complex, a 100-year-old woman unable to hear the evacuation wearing, due to a malfunction, hearing aids, was tragically left behind. While ultimately rescued, this near fatal incident highlights a systemic failure to adequately address the unique needs of a vulnerable population during emergencies. This is an isolated incident. The recent wildfires, which devastated our communities, impacted nearly 200,000 people.
Eric Previn, your line is open. You may begin.
Thank you. What, how much time do I have?
One minute, it's going.
Okay, okay. One minute? You're kidding. How about 90 seconds like yesterday? Look, the fire department, the big problem is workers' comp, and I appreciate Maroni, and I, I would like to see Maroni and Han have a little talk show. They do such a nice job together now. Consumer and Business Affairs, Rafael's a great guy. He's doing his, his darn best, and I understand the immigrant situation, want to help. But they can't function at the basic level. There have been complaints that don't go anywhere about, about bad conduct by unlicensed, unbonded, uninsured, and they go, oh, well, you could try, you know, mediation. Anyway, aging and disability, they're doing a great job. But watch for LA City and Jamison Group and Herb West, there's a dirty deed there. Animal care control, I like it, she's doing it, Maeda, but $500 for a dose of anything is creepy pricing. And I'm very sad to see the coroner go. And Arts and Culture, the cultural olympiad, this requires heightened public scrutiny. Why is LA 28 not providing all the resources upfront?
Thank you, next speaker, please.
We don't want public dollar.
Jessica Martinez, your line is open. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Jessica Martinez, and I am calling to support DCBA's budget request to continue funding the Represent L.A. program. In LA County, immigrants contribute significantly to nearly all aspects of county life, including significant contributions to the GDP and local, state, and federal governments. Represent L.A. is one of the county's main opportunities to support immigrants in Los Angeles County, providing immigration legal representations and linkage support services, capacity building, and case, case management for immigrant-serving organizations. Since launching in 2022, Represent L.A. has made a significant impact in the immigrant community, providing full scope and limited legal representation to over 5,000 individuals. They've also been a critical partner in, in distribution of the, of know-your-rights information across the county. We cannot let this program lapse at the end of the fiscal year, not during a time of so much uncertainty among the immigrant community. I ask the Board of Supervisors to prioritize funding for Represent L.A.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Jacqueline Lamas, your line is open. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Lamas. I work for Bienestar Human Services, and I'm calling to support DCBA's budget. And this is to request, obviously, to continue funding the Represent L.A. program because the fear is real. Immigrants in the LA County are struggling to move forward. Changing federal policy is creating a deep, very deep sense of instability among immigrant residents. Children, of course, are not going to school. A lot of them are missing school, and parents are afraid even to go to work. They're in panic mode. They're scared of being removed from the community, even from the country. Represent L.A. is one of the country's main opportunities to support immigrants in LA County. Since the launch in 2022, Represent L.A. has made a significant impact in the immigrant community across the LA County, including providing full and legal representation to thousands of individuals. So we cannot let this program lapse at the end of this fiscal year. Please, we really need to continue helping immigrants.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
And on behalf of Bienestar, thank you.
We'll go to the line of Adele Andrade Strater. Your line is open. You may begin.
Thank you. As you'd mentioned, my name is Adele Andrade Strater, Councilmember for the City of Alhambra. Alhambra's residents are a beautiful tapestry of cultures, and Los Angeles County immigrants have contributed significantly to near all aspects of county life. Witness, many immigrants work in partnership with the first responders during the fires in, in the community to save their own neighbors and neighbors' homes. When others left, they cleared, picked up the broom and cleared streets. They fed clothes and cleaned up, and they, because, please continue to support Represent L.A. to help people like them and others navigate a very complex immigration system during a very fearful time in our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Alfonso Jimenez, your line is open. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Dr. Alfonso Jimenez, Superintendent of the Acende de la Puente Unified School District in the East San Gabor Valley, and I'm calling to support DCBA's budget request to continue funding the Represent L.A. program. As you know, immigrants are the backbone of LA County, and I want to thank the board, and especially Supervisor Hilif Saliz, for her leadership in advocating for the immigrant community. In LA County, immigrants contribute significantly to nearly all aspects of county life, including significant contributions to GDP and local, state, and federal taxes. The changing federal policy is creating a deep sense of fear and instability among our immigrant residents. I see it in our school district. Some of our students are missing school due to fear, and this is impacting their education. Further, parents are afraid to go to work for fear of being removed from their community. Represent L.A. is one of the county's main opportunities to support immigrants in LA County, and we need organizations that will support our school district's students and families. Represent L.A. has made significant impact on the immigrant community across LA County, so we cannot let this program lapse at the end of the fiscal year, especially during these times. We ask the CEO to prioritize funding for Represent L.A. Thank you.
Carla Lopez, your line is open. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Dr. Carla Lopez, and I'm with Para los Niños, and I'm calling to support DCBA's budget request to continue funding the Represent L.A. program. For nearly 45 years, Para los Niños has served and partnered with children, youth, and their families through integrated support and wellness programs. Through this work, we serve immigrant communities across the county. We know their contributions to this county are significant and great. This change in federal policy is creating a deep sense of fear and instability among our immigrant communities. We're in, we are witnessing a drop across our schools. Children are missing, and parents are afraid to go into work and go grocery shopping for fear of being deported or removed from their home. We cannot let this program lapse at the end of the fiscal year, not during a time of so much uncertainty among the immigrant community. We urge the board to prioritize funding for Represent L.A. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Amy Zhao, your line is open. You may begin.
Hello, this is Amy Zhao from Toronto Service Center, and I'm also calling to support DCBA's budget request to continue funding for the Represent L.A. program. Like many others said, immigrants are the backbone of LA County, and Represent L.A. is one of the and legal services and other, other services to the immigrants of LA. So I please ask the CEO to prioritize funding for Represent L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to in-person speakers. Please begin.
Let me turn on the mic. Hold on one second. Yeah, it'll start over. The time, can you turn on the mic? I think it's on. I, I heard it click. I, I heard it click. No. There you go. There you go.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Yasenia Kooch. I'm here representing COFEM, the Council of Mexican Federations, and the Immigrants R.L.A. Coalition. I'm here in support of DCBA's budget request to continue funding Represent L.A. Right now, families in their communities are deeply impacted by the current hostile immigration climate. Community members are hesitant to seek even basic resources for fear of being removed from their homes. As community-based organizations, we have worked tirelessly to inform our immigrant communities about their constitutional rights. We have reactivated rapid response networks, but the threats facing our organizations, combined with the lack of funding, have created significant barriers to support all those needs. That is why Represent L.A. is essential to uplift and protect immigrant communities. We cannot allow this program to lapse at the end of this fiscal year, not now at the time when immigrant communities need it the most. I urge the CEO and the Board of Supervisors to prioritize funding for Represent L.A. and ensure that L.A. County continues to stand with immigrants.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Byron Jose with the TransLatina Coalition and Immigrants R.L.A. Thank you to the board and the CBA for working as, for your partnership in providing services for immigrant communities. We want to continue that investment in programs like Represent L.A. Thank you Supervisors Solis in your office for engaging us in this new process of the, uh, of this, of this new step of the budget process. Beyond the federal landscape and the political tax, we want to bring, uh, parallels for immigrants and transgender expansive and intersex communities. So we thank this board as our local government for standing up with our communities and ensuring that we are getting a sustained and, um, investment that affirms the lives of all, that all county residents. CFCI is beyond a board initiative. It is a, as, as measured J, it is a voter's mandate, so we would like for you to direct the CEO to allocate a minimum of 10% and to work with the county department. That work should have been done over the last four years, uh, so that these funds are not being used to supplant some of the budget gaps that we continue to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. We will now go back to remote speakers. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
And Brenda Olivas, your line is open. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Brenda Olivas, and I'm with Spirit Family Services. Last year, Spirit provided mental health services and resources to over 12,000 families, of which many were in Spanish, and I'm calling to support DCBA's budget request to continue funding to represent the L.A. program. Immigrants are the backbone of L.A. County, and Los Angeles County immigrants contribute significantly to nearly all aspects of county life, including significant contributions to the GDP and local, state, and federal taxes. We cannot let this program lapse at the end of this fiscal year. I ask the CEO to prioritize funding, uh, to Represent L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cecilia Ramos, your line is open. You may begin.
Hello, I'm Cecilia Ramos from the Sorry Filipino Town, and I'm calling to support DCBA's budget to continue funding the Represent L.A. program. Immigrants are the backbone of L.A. County, and the board and Specialist Supervisor Solis for our leadership in advocating for the immigrant community. In Los Angeles County, immigrants contribute significantly to all aspects of county life, including contributions to GDP, local, state, and federal taxes. The program provides immigration legal representation and linkage to support services, capacity building, and case management for immigrant-serving organizations. They have also been a critical partner in distributing know your rights information across the county. Since launching in April 2022, Represent L.A. has made a significant impact on the community, on the immigrant community.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Christian Lopez, your line is open. You may begin.
Hello, this is Christian Lopez, um, from SBCC. I'm one of the community organizers there, and I strongly support, uh, funding from Represent L.A. to create and sustain jobs for immigrants. Um, this funding would provide critical resources to ensure that all residents, regardless of background, have a fair chance at success. I urge Represent L.A. to prioritize this initiative, um, to support the hard-working immigrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Christina Cardenas, your line is open. You may begin.
Go ahead. Hello, go to the next caller, please.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Daisy Chavez Mendez, I'm sorry, your line is open. You may begin. We'll go to the next line. Daniel Gonzalez, your line is open.
Hi there. My name is Daniel Gonzalez. I'm with the Los Angeles LGBT Center, and I am proud to stand in support of DCBA's budget request to continue funding Represent L.A. This critical initiative impacts all immigrants, including those within our LGBT community. We really truly believe that Represent L.A. is one of the county's most effective programs to support immigrants by providing immigration legal representation and connecting people to essential services. It also strengthens immigrant-serving organizations with capacity building, case management, ensuring comprehensive approach. It is also a pivotal partner in distributing know your rights information across Los Angeles, ensuring that LGBTQ immigrants are aware of their rights and how to protect themselves in an increasingly uncertain climate. The Los Angeles LGBT Center urges the Board of Supervisors to prioritize funding for Represent L.A. to continue to provide support to those most in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And we'll go to the line of Christina Cardenas. Your line is open. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Christina Cardenas from the Wellness Center, and I'm calling in support of DCBA's budget request to continue funding for Represent L.A. At the Wellness Center, we are a one-stop destination for health and wellness for families in Boyle Heights and surrounding communities. We know that immigrants represent our beautiful community at the Wellness Center, and we do stand by, uh, this community, especially in this challenging time where federal policy is in direct contradiction to due process for immigrants who are currently under attack. We, we support, strongly support, um, Represent L.A. in their efforts to provide due process and to represent our families under attack. Thank you.
Thank you. As a reminder to speakers on the phone, please speak directly into your device to ensure your comments can be heard. Next speaker, please.
We'll go to the line of Daria Zakowski. Your line is open. You may begin.
Yes, hello. My name is Daria Tarkovsky, and I'm from the Ukrainian Art Center here in Los Angeles, and I'm calling to support the DCBA's budget request to continue funding Represent L.A. program. Ukrainian immigrants, there are many of them right now, and they're on every corner. So you see contributions of immigrants from around the world. In Los Angeles County, immigrants contribute significantly to nearly all aspects of life, and changing federal policy is creating a deep sense of fear and instability among our immigrant residents. And children are missing school. Parents are afraid to go to work. Represent L.A. is one of the county's main opportunities to support immigrants in Los Angeles County. The program provides immigration legal representation and linkage to support services.
That is Gabriela Eddy. Your line is open. You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Supervisors. Gabriela Eddy and SBCC community organizer, supporting DCBA's budget. Firstly, I want to thank the board and Supervisor Solis for her leadership in defending the immigrant community. Represent L.A. is one of the county's main opportunities to support immigrants in Los Angeles County. Changing federal policy is creating a deep sense of fear and instability among our immigrant residents. On behalf of SBCC, we please ask you, CEO, to prioritize the funding to Represent L.A. for our immigrant community. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hadir Azab, your line is open. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Hadir Azab, and I'm calling on behalf of the Council on American Islamic Relations Greater L.A. Chapter. Our office supports an immigration rights center that's a recipient of some of the Rep L.A. funds to provide deportation defense counsel. We've helped hundreds of clients to the program in just the past year and have a waitlist long enough to hire a completely other immigration attorney full-time. Had we been given, were we given an increased allocation to do so? We strongly support DCBA's request to continue funding the Represent L.A. program. Represent L.A. is one of the county's main opportunities to support immigrants in L.A. County, and the time is now for our leadership to bolster our defenses against the continual bearage of harassment of our immigrant communities that are enduring under the current federal administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jason Batista, your line is open. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Jason Batista with the Climate Development Center or TICEC, part of the Immigrants R.L.A. Coalition. I'm calling to support DCBA's budget request to continue funding the Represent L.A. program. Immigrants are the backbone of Los Angeles County, contributing significantly to our economy and communities. Yet, the changing federal policy is creating fear and instability. Parents are afraid to go to work, and children are missing school. Represent L.A. provides critical legal representation, case management, and know your rights education supporting over 5,000 immigrants since its launching in April 2022. We cannot let this program lapse at the end of the fiscal year, especially during this time of uncertainty. I ask the CEO to prioritize funding for Represent L.A. to ensure continued support for our immigrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jose Ruiz, your line is open. You may begin.
Hi, yes, uh, this is Jose Miguel Ruiz. I'm the Executive Director for Cultiva L.A. We actively grow and 10 acres of community urban farm. Uh, I'm also the Commissioner for Children and Family Services, and I'm here to support DCBA budget requests for 5.5 million. Uh, let's be clear, immigrants are now being targeted more than ever, and I think we owe it. They have been the backbone for L.A. County, have supported a lot of the safety net programs, and the least we could do is make sure they have, that they have due process, um, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Carrie Che, your line is open. You may begin.
Good morning, Honorable L.A. Board of Supervisors. My name is Carrie Che, son of Khmari refugees, Representative L.A. Supervisor of District Four, and I'm representing, uh, SBCC I Heart. I humbly ask the board to support Supervisor Hillel Solis, uh, 5.5 million budget for Represent L.A., which is a safety net for immigrants. About the safety net, many immigrant families are arrested, being spoken in parts, their children be placed in foster care, and we create federal, judicial drama and economic disparities across L.A. County. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Magdalena Caceres, your line is open. You may begin.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Magdalena Caceres. Soy parte de SBCC de ahí, Javi T. Lee. Llamamos para apoyar la solicitud presupuesto del DSA para continuar financiando el programa representantes de L.A. Los inmigrantes son la columna vertebral del Condado de Los Ángeles. Quiero agradecer a la junta y especialmente a la supervisora Solis por su liderazgo en la defensa de la comunidad inmigrante. Nuestros hijos faltan mucho a la escuela, y los padres tenemos miedo de, de ser expulsados de sus comunidades. Le pido a ese, perdón, CEO que dé prioridad a la iniciación para presentar a Los Ángeles. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. We will now go in person.
Good, um, afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Magdalena Caceres, calling from East Los Angeles. I would like to ask for your support for the immigrant community in the County of Los Angeles. I would like to thank Supervisor Solis for her work, and, um, in our center, we have a lot of concern about parents who have a great deal of fear to send their children to schools. Thank you so much for your support and for being able to, um, do everything possible to support our immigrant community in this time. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go back to remote speakers. Moderator, may we have the next speaker, please?
Jana Wally, your line is open. You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jana Wally, and I'm calling to support increased funding for the Represent L.A. program. I'm a resident of the Third Supervisory District and work as a supervising attorney at Public Counsel, where my team provides representation to individuals and families in immigration court under the Represent L.A. program. Our work under Represent L.A. is more critical now than ever, as immigrant community members are under attack by federal policies designed to sow fear and instability. Immigration laws are extremely complex, and no one in our county should be left to face them alone. In addition to our direct service work under Represent L.A., we are providing know your rights information and trainings across the county. I join the chorus of voices calling on the CEI, CEO, to prioritize robustly funding the Represent L.A. program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Maria Serrano, your line is open. You may begin.
Thank you. My name is Mary Elena Serrano, and I represent Comité Mexicano Civico Patriótico, and I'm calling to support the DCBA budget request to continue funding the Represent Los Angeles program. Immigrants are the backbone of Los Angeles County, and I want to thank the board and Specialist Supervisor Solis for her leadership in advocating for the immigrant community. In Los Angeles County, immigrants contribute significantly to nearly all aspects of county life, including significant contributions to GDP and local, state, and federal taxes. Changing federal policy is creating a deep sense of fear and instability among our immigrants. Children are missing schools, and parents are afraid. The program provides immigrants legal representation and linkage to support services capacities, building a case management for immigrant-serving organizations. Since launching in April 2022, Represent L.A. has made a significant impact.
Rafael Abdo, your line is open. You may begin.
Next speaker, please.
And Mr. Abdo. Yes, Ricky Abalés, your line is open. You may begin.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Supervisors. Thank you for your continued support of the arts and culture. As you know, the wildfires have been devastating for our region, and in addition to lost homes and businesses, the fires have led to job loss, delayed programs, and financial instability. This comes at a time when we're already grappling with pandemic recovery, historic undercapitalization, and strike. During budget cycles, the arts and culture tend to be the first cut and the last restored, and we must resist this trend. Discriminatory federal actions have limited the eligibility of nonprofits for NEA grants, and we're facing significant cuts at the state level, which has resulted in the consolidation of programs and will increase competition. Local arts funding is more important now than ever, and we absolutely must prioritize the OGP and the 2028 Olympics. We have heard from far too many orgs that if they don't get government grants this year, they will close. Artists have shared if they don't get a job, they will leave the sector. We so often lean on the arts to take care of our communities, and we deserve to take care of them as well. The arts are in a state of emergency, and they should be treated as such.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Seda Colatane, your line is open. You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Seda Colatane. I'm from Armenian Relief Society Social Services, and I'm calling to support DCBA's budget request to continue funding the Represent L.A. program. Immigrants are the backbone of L.A. County, and I want to thank the board and Specialist Supervisor Solis for her leadership in advocating for the immigrant community. In Los Angeles County, immigrants contribute significantly to nearly all aspects of county life, including significant contribution to GDP and local, state, and federal taxes. Represent L.A. is one of the county's main opportunities to support immigrants in Los Angeles County. Since launching in April 2022, Represent L.A. has made a significant impact on immigrant community across Los Angeles County, including provide
Vivian English, your line is open. You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Vivian English. I'm from the Wellness Center, L.A., and I am calling in support of DCBA's budget request to continue funding the Represent L.A. program. I'm a child of immigrant, and my parents taught me not just to help myself, but to advocate for others. That's why I'm asking the CEO to prioritize funding Represent L.A. Represent L.A. is one of the county's main opportunities to support immigrants in the Los Angeles County. They have also been a critical partner in distributing know your rights information across the country. We cannot let this program lapse at the end of the fiscal year, not during a time of so much uncertainty among the immigrant community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Socio Cobarrovias, your line is open. You may begin.
Yes, Buenas tardes, Honorable Supervisors. My name is Socio Cobarrovias. I'm from Laclae, L.A., and I'm calling to support I'm from Laclay, L.A., and I'm calling to support the DCA's budget request to continue funding the Represent L.A. program. Immigrants are the backbone of the L.A. County, and I want to thank the Supervisors and Especially Supervisor Hilis Solis for her leadership, for advocating for the immigrant community. We cannot let this program lapse at the end of this fiscal year, not during a time of so much uncertainty among immigrants' community. I ask the CEO to prioritize funding to Represent L.A. I urge, I urge the Board to support the DCA's budget. We, today is for undocumented community, tomorrow can be for us, so we need to unite. They're the backbone, and thank you, and I hope you guys can support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Derek Steele, your line is open. You may begin.
I'm sorry about that. How you all doing today? My name is Derek Steele. I am the Chair of the Care First Community Investment Advisory Committee. I'm giving a call on this because this, you know, the work that we have been doing has come up in a couple of different times in this conversation. What I want to make sure is clear, we want to be supportive and, you know, just as folks who are in the county of making sure we support our people, for sure. But CFCI/Measure J is not a slush fund. It is not an emergency fund, right? You, you know, the Board of Supervisors have put forth guidance of how to make sure that we're taking care and putting the Care First Agenda first, right? And there has been a lot of great work that has gone in, and we're in an evaluation phase right now as well. I think the work that we have been able to do has not been characterized to you all in the best ways for, you know, in the past, and so we're working this year to make sure that that is a different thing. Where we are analyzing funds that have been unspent and recategorizing that into areas of focus,
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
of things that are working in the Care First Agenda and the work that we're doing. So, we just ask that you don't.
We'll go to the line, excuse me, I do apologize. Francisco Moreno, your line is open. Please begin.
Hi, my name is Francisco Moreno, Executive Director of the Council of Mexican Federations, COFEM, and Co-Chair of the Immigrants R.L.A. I'm calling to express strong support for DCA budget request to continue funding the Represent L.A. program. We sincerely thank the Board, Specialist Supervisor Solis, for their leadership in advocating for immigrant communities. In L.A. County, immigrants contribute significantly to every aspect of life, including our economy, workforce, and tax base at the local, state, and federal levels. However, shifting federal policies have created deep fear and instability. Families are struggling, children are missing school, and parents fear going to work due to the risk of being separated from their communities. Thank you.
Thank you. As a reminder, for those on the phone who have not pressed 1 then 0, please do so now. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Christopher Maitish, your line is open. Please begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Christopher Maitish, Executive Director with Celebration Theater. We are Southern California's longest-running LGBTQ+ arts nonprofit. We are DEI. The discriminatory practices underway at the federal level mean that we cannot now apply for funding. And we also know that the state of California will be squeezed further as a result of the federal chaos that's happening. Like many arts organizations, we're fighting for long-term survival, and I wanted to call and urge the county, I believe you have a really important role to play to address the urgent need in our arts communities. I want to end just by sharing a quick patron testimonial from a project we did in December, which was that, they said, "The show was phenomenally moving, holding a mirror to my own experiences, some even unbeknownst to me at the time, portraying ineffable moments only seemingly made possible by living as trans." Both the person with whom I attended and I were in tears by the end, sparking a beautifully deep discussion about the journeys we've endured, the ongoing process of inner healing, and the power of a communal history and experience. This work is really powerful and is needed in our, and we need your support to continue and grow. Thank you so much for listening and appreciate your partnership.
Yvonne Maria Jimenez, your line is open. You may begin.
I'm Yvonne Maria Jimenez. I'm the CEO of Neighborhood Legal Services of Los Angeles County, and I'm speaking in support of the Department of Consumer Business Affairs, 5.5 million dollar budget request to Represent L.A. Represent L.A. is one of the most effective programs that the county is funding. It is making a significant difference in our communities. And just to remind everyone that many of our households are blended households. The work that Represent L.A. is critical and essential and want to, to commend Supervisor Solis for moving this forward, and we really urge the Board to prioritize this funding for Represent L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Kentang, your line is open. You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. First of all, I just want to thank Supervisor Solis for her leadership in this, especially for the immigrant community. My name is Kentang, and I'm a Vice President of the Alhama Unified School Board of Education. And this is, I'm calling in to support DCA's budget funding Represent L.A. As a, as a school, we stand firm in serving all of our students, no matter what their immigration status is, and that we provide a safe haven in our, on our campuses. However, outside of school, we depend on organizations like Represent L.A. to help with our families, with our immigrant families. And this is a critical, critical time when our family needs programs like Represent L.A. Our students are depending on it. They're missing schools. Families are holding their kids back, afraid to send them to school and stuff like that, so this is very critical.
Raymond Andre, your line is open. You may begin.
Hello, this is Dr. Raymond Andre, the Superintendent of the Mountain View School District in Almonte. I'm also a resident of Los Angeles County. I'm here today to show support for DCA's Represent L.A. budget item. Immigrants are the backbone of our community. Here in Mountain View, we have families that are afraid to come to school, afraid to attend meetings, and we know that the federal policy is creating a deep sense of fear and instability amongst our immigrant residents. I strongly urge the CEO to prioritize funding for Represent L.A. and know that it's going to support children learning in the classroom and families being able to access the resources they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
We'll go to the line of Raina Schmitz. Your line is open. Please begin.
Thank you. My name is Raina Schmitz. I'm a Commissioner for Older Adults here in L.A. County, and I'm calling in behalf of supporting and the full board supporting the Department of Consumer and Business Affairs. Our seniors are very concerned. Their families are afraid. Their children and the grandchildren are afraid. So, now is the time for the county to do more, not less, and we need the county to continue supporting the programs that the DCA oversees and supports the immigrant community by providing your support, all of you, and, and get strong message to our families that they are being not left behind, but more supported to, to keep them together and to keep us all safe by continuing the support for, to Represent L.A. The funding that is being requested is an investment in the wealth of our families and the well-being. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in the queue to address the Board.
And I don't see any more speakers in the audience, so the reports that we heard today are received and filed, received and filed, hearing, no objections. That will be the order. That concludes today's meeting. The next regular meeting of the Board will be held Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, at 1:00 P.M. Thank you.